Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you all to the April 11th, 2023 City Council Meeting. In the interest of government transparency with regards to deliberations and decisions made by the City Council and according to open meeting law, since the meeting was posted as a Zoom meeting, this meeting is recorded by video and audio and will be conducted by remote participation. Additionally, all votes taken by the City Council during this and future remote meetings will be by roll call vote. If you're calling in on a phone and you can press star nine to request to speak, if you're watching on a computer or device, there's a raised hand button that you can tap or request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. It's a finding of the City of Gloucester that no individual should be denied equal treatment or opportunity because of their age, ancestry, color, disability, including intellectual and developmental mental disability, family status, immigration status, gender identity or expression, military status, marital status, national origin, race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. I'd like to begin by introducing the City Councils and city staff who are present. My name is Val Gilman. I am the Ward for City Council and the City Council President. Also here is Jason Grow at large, Scott Memmard, Ward one, Tony Gross at large, Sean Nolan, he's hopping around on my screen, Ward five and Council Vice President Jamie O'Hara, who is at large, Tracy O'Neal, who is Ward three, two, sorry, Frank Majota, who is Ward three, and I think that's all for City Councilors. Everyone, oh, Council Worthy is not yet on the call, but he is coming. And so for city staff, we have John Dunn, our CFO, we have Chad Johnson, who's our Assistant Harbor Master, we have Jill Cahill, who is our CAO, Kenny Costa, who is our Auditor, TJ Shimataro, who is our Harbor Master. Let me just look to see if we have any other members of city staff on the call. I do not see anyone. Let me just go through the list. We have 41 attendees right now. And I don't see any members of city staff who is on as an attendee. So that closes our introduction. So I would just like to ask Madam Clark if you would call the First Order of Business.
The First Order of Business is Oral Communications.
Thank you. The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under Oral Communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral Communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the Council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the Office of the Mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the City Council. Persons speaking under Oral Communications shall be limited to three minutes each. Tonight, Council Majota is the person that is first on roll call. So, Councilor Majota, if you could do the three-minute timing and just put your hand up at about 10 minutes before three minutes, that would be 10 seconds before three minutes, that would be great. And those who are asking to speak, if you would introduce yourself and your address, and we look forward to hearing from you for any matters that aren't on the agenda. So, Madam Clark, could you bring in Pam Steele or Jane Fox Dobson, either?
Council Worthy is trying to get sign in, but he's, the link is...
Hello? I will send them again.
Okay. Council Worthy is not... What is wrong with you right now? Why am I echoing?
Anybody who's not muted.
Okay. I was fine until right now. Do you want me to walk off and walk back online until right now?
I don't think it's you, Val. It's Jane Dobson.
It is Dobson.
Okay.
Oh, there's two of us up for talking, so I think that's the problem. I only brought one in.
Okay. Jane, why don't you introduce yourself and your address, and then the rest of us will decide. You have the floor. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I begin, there's actually two of us on this call. There's my husband as well. And so, he would like to, he would like to speak as well, but he has a request to Madam President Gilman.
Thank you, Madam President. Due to my situation with my throat cancer, I would like to relinquish my, my saying that my wife take over my bid.
Thank you so much for calling us. So, Jane, you have four.
Thank you, Madam President. I have a letter that I wrote today to Mayor Berger, which I would like to read. I timed it. I'm exactly six minutes. So I'm going to read it fast. Dear Mayor Berger, we are writing to you about a leak on Becker Circle at the intersection of Becker Lane. There is an orange cone there to mark the spot, and there's obvious water is leaking, flowing downhill, puddling at the corner of Becker Circle and White Mountain Road. We have lived here since 1989. There have been so many water leaks on this private road that we have lost count. In the past, when there was a leak, our two neighbors, Leslie Dennis and Keith Wealthy, as well as William Dobson, would rent heavy equipment, dig holes, assess damages, shut off water mains, purchase supplies, repair water lines, backfill holes, and finally turn back on water mains. There were times we asked neighbors to split the bills, but it always fell on deaf ears. We even had neighbors state that it was not their problem, slammed their doors on us, and tell us to go away. Therefore, after each repair was completed, the three of them would split the costs, since none of the other neighbors pitched in. Each time, the cost would be at least $300 each, plus their labor and time, and even lost wages due to having to take time off from work. Over the course of 34 years, it has cost each of these three households at least $8,000, and that does not include labor nor the expense to take mandatory courses or to maintain licenses for heavy equipment operation. So for years, our neighbors were quite fortunate, but this is no longer the case. Thirty-four years have gone by, and we now have another water leak. However, Leslie passed away in 2021 at age 69 due to cancer, and Keith passed away in 2022 at age 63 due to cancer. William is now retired, age 68, and battling cancer. We wonder now if there is something in our water lines that is causing cancer. It is rather concerning that all three had cancer, and two have succumbed to this illness at such an early age. We were quite amused that some neighbors had reached out to us recently to let us know there is a water leak that needs to be repaired. Therefore, we decided to call the City of Gloucester Department of Public Works. We were told that Bill Gillis was in the neighborhood and would meet us at the site. He was nice and polite and tested the water to decide if it was city water. He confirmed that it was, but he was not sure if this was the city's responsibility or the residents'. We explained the situation to him and told him that William Dobson is no longer physically capable of repairing any leaks, nor are we financially responsible for footing the bill in its entirety. We suggested that the city could repair it and charge all the residents their equal share. Bill Gillis said that he was going to a meeting the following day and that he would discuss the situation and get back to us. We gave him our contact information, including our cell phone numbers, but have not heard back. There was a discussion about the fact that the City of Gloucester could shut the water main off so that residents are forced to make the necessary repairs. We do not recommend this, since it does not resolve the issue. Besides that, most of the current residents in this neighborhood are elderly, some even need health home health aids, and others are disabled American veterans. This would be a disgrace to the City of Gloucester, since it would only cause problems and highlight the fact that our city's infrastructure needs attention and can no longer withstand any more neglect. Mayor Berger, with all due respect, we believe one of your biggest campaign promises was to treat all streets in Gloucester the same, and it was our major reason we voted you into office. There should be no differentiation between blue signs and green signs. It is truly discriminatory, especially since we all pay our fair share of taxes. Besides that, there are two churches in the vicinity on the corner and rear of Concord Street and Thompson Street. The church members use our street to come and go from the parking lot, so it is now a public way. Thomas, Thompson Street was recently paved by the City of Gloucester from the end of Becker Circle towards the Green Bell, which is significantly cost quite a bit, yet only served one resident that lives in the woods. Also, one of our neighbors owns a commercial tree business, and his combination of heavy bucket trucks and wood trappers are constantly traveling up and down our street so that his employees, as well as himself, can park heavy equipment at his residence on White Mountain Road. This constant heavy weight is significant, especially when trucks are fully loaded with tree trunks and wood chips. It should not be our burden to continue to address water leaks and road deterioration, since this activity is illegal in this residential neighborhood, and it has a negative impact on our private road. Yet, the city ignores this activity as well. Again, the issue of water...
Jane, excuse me, pardon. Yes, you're well over the three minutes.
We each have three minutes. So I had six.
She's right. Her husband spoke and asked for relief due to his throat cancer.
Madam President.
I'm almost done. Should I keep going?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Again, the issue of water lines and road pavement needs to be resolved, not only on Becker Circle, but on the citywide basis. We all pay our fair amount of taxes. It should not matter if we reside on a street with a blue or green sign. Since our taxes are currently being used to take care of public roads, then perhaps those residents on a private street should be taxed differently, for example, a tax break. This would allow us to address issues that the city believes are not the city's responsibility. And one of the most recent meetings, the City Council voted to allow, except Tracy O'Neal, an additional 100,000 of taxpayers' hard-earned income to fund the City of Gloucester's 400th birthday. It is a remarkable milestone to celebrate, but in all honesty, that money should be spent on serving the community by addressing our neglected infrastructure, such as water lines and road repairs, as well as much-needed sidewalks and bicycle paths. It's nice to have a once-in-a-lifetime birthday cake, but does it, but it does not taste so delicious when it is at the taxpayers' expense and community needs are not addressed. Our residential taxes increased another whopping $1,200 this year, so at least you can do is fix a leak that continues to leak. We cannot believe that three weeks have passed by and nothing has been done. We recently heard that through the grapevine that Woodman Street, Overlook Avenue, Inglewood Road, and Lake Road are all private roads, yet the City of Gloucester has installed new water lines and paved these roads. We would appreciate confirmation whether this is true or not, so please provide us with your response. We are also both retired and now on a fixed income. Therefore, we are no longer physically capable of taking on this project, nor we will to pay more than our fair share to repair another water leak. So the best we can do at our age is report the leak. In the meantime, it will continue to leak. In closing, we hope our voice is heard and our concerns are addressed. Sincerely, Jane Fox Dobson and William Dobson.
Thank you, Jane and William.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak.
Next person. Pam Steele, would you introduce yourself and your address? And we no longer have interference, so.
Yes, Pam Steele, Ten Pilots Hill, Gloucester. I'm calling to follow up on something I asked over a year and a half ago. At the recent meeting of the City Council, it was brought up that the developer for 116 East Main Street would like to donate to the Affordable Trust instead of an affordable unit, which we were promised, and we still want. What I said at that meeting was that Scott Memmard had a meeting of the neighborhood, which was well-attended a year and a half ago, because some of us noticed that in violation, the developer had tried to put little blasting cones into the the stone, the granite. So, we had the meeting, everything was fine. I asked, what's the status of the Affordable Unit at that time? And I was told that, oh, no, they're giving 400,000. At that time, it wasn't 410, it was 400,000 to the Affordable Trust. Of course, I got on the City Council meeting and questioned that, and was told, and I'm not mentioning names, because I don't want to get cut off, said, oh, no, that is perfectly legal. A year and a half later, I'm on the City Council. I wouldn't have known if I hadn't faithfully tried to help make my city great. And here we are again. I never get letters. I have maybe two or three. If I had had a letter at that time, I would have been able to review what the council has said at that meeting about it's okay to get the Affordable Trust without really knowing the history of the project, because I don't think he was on at that time. So I would like a letter. I would like a clarification. I'd like to be public about this. We need an affordable unit. The end. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it. Now, Lynda McCaristin. Lynda, would you introduce yourself and your address? And you have up to three minutes to talk to us about matters not on the agenda.
That was an accident. I think, I didn't really raise my hand. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, so you don't, you can...
I wasn't prepared to speak, and I must have... Anyway, it was an accident. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And we now have 62 people for attendees on the call. So I think that's all for public comments. Oh, we have Mary Ann Boucher is on the call. Mary Ann, welcome. And you have three minutes to talk to us about matters not on the agenda. Name and address.
Mary Ann Albert Boucher, update on the creek? Anyone? Anyone?
Okay, we, we can't respond to you for, for these matters. This is a public comment. And we will...
I understand that. What I'm, my point I'm trying to make is, it's time. It's time for the people of this city to have an update on the creek, on the water. I know it's May 1st is, is basically the start date for testing again, according to mass.gov, but it's time. Our children are now in that creek. I'm watching kids again in that creek, dogs in that creek, people in that creek. Seventy-four, 72 degrees today, people in the creek. If the sign isn't doing it, have a bigger sign. Tell them why they can't be in that creek. What's wrong with that creek? We're doing a big disservice again to the city, to the people of the city, by not letting them know what is wrong with that creek. Somebody's going to end up suing the City of Gloucester, because nothing's being done. And I know people say, well, they're working on it. They're working on it. They're finding a pipe, and they're fixing that pipe. But the people, the people of the city deserve it. Front-page article, and it needs to say what is there, why it's been so long, and why we haven't fixed it yet. I'll just keep going with it. Every week, it's, it's, it's an economic engine for the city. You're going to lose people. You're going to lose people, because it's not being taken care of. I don't, I don't know what it is, but I can tell you right now, I am, I hear it every single day from people in this city. They know I come to these meetings every week. Mary Ann, why aren't they doing anything? I don't know. I can't give you an answer. There's like so many things in the city. It's, it's so beyond time. It's dangerous. It's dangerous. I mean, people with immune system, a cut, a cut on a child can cause them to end up in a, in a real serious situation. So I'm not going to bother you anymore. I feel, and I'm at the point, very frustrated. I feel like you may hear me, but nobody's listening. And that's time and time again, week after week, month after month, year after year. Board of Health, City of, City Council, everybody. I mean, I know you say that we're going to give updates, but I, but we depend on every one of you to get that work done for us. You're our elected officials. We depend on each and every one of you. I am pleading with you for the, especially for the children of this city. I don't care. I don't want to put a blame on any, I just want, I just want to see it fixed. People just want to see it fixed. We want to identify the problem. We want the transparency that our mayor promised, the transparency, transparency in the city, and we want to see it fixed for the good of everybody. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Anyone else like to speak to the Council for matters not on the agenda? Seeing none. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Councilors, would anyone like to pull any matter off the consent agenda? Council O'Neal?
Yes, I would like to pull off my council order 2023-027.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Council Grow?
If no one else is going to do it, we need to do the O and A minutes from whatever last week, and...
It was April 3rd. We have to remove the...
Confirmation of reappointment, Mike Luster.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to remove anything? So, let's, let's approve the consent agenda with the, without the matters that have been pulled off. Is there a motion to approve that?
Still moved.
There's a motion by Council Memmard. Is it your second? Council Gross seconds it. Let's do a roll call vote. Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neal?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
The unanimous consent agenda passes as amended. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Now let's go to the matters that were removed. Council O'Neal, if you could explain why you've removed it? You are muted.
Thank you. There is a typo, but I will be taking this up at a different time.
So do you want to, without objection, withdraw it?
Yes, please.
Okay, without objection. We don't have to take a vote on that.
All right, thank you.
And Council Grow, you removed the O and A minutes of April 3rd, as well as the reappointment of Mike Luster.
Yeah, I was only acting on behalf, because nobody else was pulling it, but we haven't got the O and A minutes and, and from that meeting to cover two issues that are on the agenda tonight, Mike Luster and the rules of procedure.
Thank you. So we will, we, Council Nolan, do you wish to add to that?
I actually, we did not receive the minutes from the O and A meeting. It wasn't approved. There's some things that may be affected in tonight's agenda on some of the hearings as well for rules of procedure. So without the minutes being, could I join?
No, it's just the Council rules of procedure. It's not any of the other public hearings. So I just want to make that clear.
Excellent. So there is a, something missing from the agenda. Jason, thank you for getting to the mic before I could.
So, so I, I would move to to refer those matters to our next meeting, which is August, April 25th, 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote. Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neal?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yes.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clark?
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee report of April 6th.
And I would like to ask our BNF Chair, Council Scott Memmard, moves us through that section of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. We're going to do this as a consent agenda, so I'll highlight each of the five motions that Budget and Finance referred to the City Council as a whole at our last Thursday's meeting. If anyone, anyone wishes to pull one off for more detail, please do so. Otherwise, we'll just accept all five as described. The first is a memorandum from Gloucester Schools Chief Financial Officer requesting to increase the food services revolving loan fund to $1,750,000. That's up from currently $1,236,000, and it reflects an increase in that program's volume. The second item is memorandum from Lee Snigello and Doug Kerr on behalf of the Gloucester Fisheries Athletic Association, the Class of 1988 Tennis Courts Project Team Regarding the Gloucester High School Tennis Project Court Project Update, and the request to accept additional donations in the amount of $85,000, for which we thank them greatly. The third item is memorandum from our Chief Financial Officer, and 2023 SA 23 in the amount of $330,000 for the purchase of three school buses. These are actually buses we currently own, and we're buying them out of lease. Fourth item from the CFO, 2023 SA 24 in the amount of $250,000 for repairs to the city and schools' buildings during calendar year 2023. This is a budget for the DPW to perform seasonal maintenance during the, during the summer season, when some of these buildings are closed primarily. And the fifth and final item from Budget and Finance was memorandum from our beloved Veteran Services Director, Adam Kukuru, requesting our acceptance of donations in the total amount of $935 for our veteran services. And this includes from Heather Hennessy, St. Peter's Fiesta, Tina and David Bowling, Christopher Seinstra, Suzanne Slavera, Edward Camo, Sal, and Janet Lucido, Thelma Parks, and Karen Mitchell, for a total of $935. And unless there are any questions on any single item, I'd actually accept that consent agenda.
Councilors, would anyone like to remove any of these five matters on the consent agenda? Go ahead, Madam Clark. Your hand is raised.
Okay. I believe Scott said three school buses, and it's six school buses. Did I hear that incorrectly?
It should, I should have said, if I did not, six school buses, correct.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction, Madam Clark. Anyone like to remove any of these five matters for further discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda for B and F as noted?
Still moved.
Council Worthy has moved the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Council Memmard, I heard you. So, roll call vote. Council Majota?
Yes.
Council Memmard?
Yes.
Council Nolan?
Yes.
Council O'Hara?
Yes.
Council O'Neal?
Yes.
Council Worthy?
Yes.
Council Gilman? Yes. Council Gross?
Yeah.
Council Grow?
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clark?
So the next order of business, we won't be able to do the ordinance administration committee report, because we don't have the minutes, would be the Planning and Development Standing Committee report of April 5th.
Council Grow?
Nothing to vote on tonight, but we are having a site visit for a special counsel permit on Follypoint Road. It'll be April 13th at 3:30 PM at One Follypoint Road, and that's for a height exception. Again, April 13th, 3:30 PM, One Follypoint Road. This is a site visit. You're welcome to attend. Ask, you can send questions to the chair. Then that's it. We'll see you then.
And the abutters have been duly notified, so.
They have been duly notified.
Thank you, Council Grow.
Okay.
I'm next order of business, Madam Clark.
This is the first public hearing, public hearing 2023-11, whether the City of Gloucester shall opt out and vote by mail in accordance with Section 10 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 22, Chapter 54, Section 25B, parentheses, A, parentheses, 1, for the September 19th, 2023 preliminary municipal election, and the November 7th, 2023 municipal election.
I'd like to open the public hearing and continue it to April 25th, 2023. Next order of business, Madam Clark.
Public hearing 2023-012 to amend Gloucester Court of Ordinance's Chapter 5 Building and Building Regulations by adding Article 5 Short-Term Rentals.
I would like to open the public hearing and ask Council Grow to, to present his order. Oh, where did I?
It's also Gross, not Grow.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Tony, sorry about that. Sorry about that, Counsel Gross. Your name sounds so much alike and you're next.
You should be apologizing to Jason, not me.
Okay, you have the floor and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
Okay, so, you know, this has been banded around since November, where first one is a zoning ordinance, but then, according to Mass General Law, sixty-four, Section fourteen, it is actually a code of ordinance, not a zoning ordinance. So it got bounced back and then it came to us and it's been publicly noticed four times since then. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware that this has had multiple public notices, opportunities to be seen. Go to the next slide, please, thank you. So this is what's in the ordinance as the purpose. But there's a Cliff Note version on the second slide. Could you please go to that, Joanne? So, as you can see, right now, there's currently no regulations on short-term rentals. And that's leaves neighborhoods, local residents in those neighborhoods, and the people who are renting them at risk. So, you know, much of this, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, one provision in this, but there's a whole lot more to this that makes it safer for everyone involved and it's past due time to have this done. So I'm not going to read this to you, but it just, you know, that's the purpose of this is to make sure that the health and safety of all involved is looked after. Next slide. So, you know, people are asking, why now? Now, I cited some things and there's been some comments that we need data-driven. I'd like to point out that these, all of these examples, some of them come from very reputable data mining groups. You can see on, on this first one, it's from the Business Insider, which has been around since, oh, two thousand and seven. And and so it just, it talks about a lot of things and I just left it all, the whole quote there, but the important part about this is in bold, where cities can no longer afford to take a hands-off approach to the short-term rental industry. And that's great news for everyone involved. Now, this is the business side. This is not me. I didn't make this stuff up. I did not, you know. This occurred to me as I continued with growing concern, reading about situations that, that we need to be prepared for. The next article is a little bit concerning because it says, just last October, short-term rental listings were up twenty-three point three percent. If anybody tells you that this is not a growing concern, that's just, and then if you look further, eighty to eighty-eight thousand short-term rentals are being added per month. It's, this is, this is something that's, you know, coming our way. So, you know, we need to be, we need to be prepared for it and we need to be ready for it. Next slide, please. So as you can see, you know, Wired Magazine talks about, you know, Airbnb has likely played an outsized role in several markets. Researchers at the Carnegie Mellon Institute, that's not, you know, some anecdotal information here, this is hard data, found that Airbnb mildly cannibalizes the long-term rental supplies. And in cities they studied, that they studied, this is data by the Carnegie Mellon Institute, University, where Airbnb was pop, popular. Residents faced a more severe reduction in housing stock. And then again, Wall Street Journal cites CoreLogic, which is a data provides financial, property, and consumer information analytics and business intelligence. That's what CoreLogic does. These are data machines that come up with this stuff. And they have, they say that it's accounted for twenty percent of home sales. Twenty percent of home sales are for investment. And then our own Gloucester Times, you know, had a thing from Ken Johnson from the real estate, who's a real estate economist at the Florida Atlantic University. And, you know, the takeaway here is that they are taking properties off the market that could be used for longer-term rentals. That's, you know, why now? That's a concern. The other concern was that we were not protecting the people who were renting it or the neighborhood. So the majority of that, of this ordinance is about making sure that people are safe and the neighborhood's safe and the city's safe. Okay, next slide, please. So here's, here's a summary of what is in it. The annual permits are, I talked to the administration and when this went before O and A, we didn't have a number yet, but the administration, and I would like to present, if we vote on this, they had requested a two hundred dollar annual permit. So that's, that's what that would be. After talking with Atlantic Vacation Homes, I changed the number of occupants to go from which most communities around the country and in Massachusetts have limits of ten people per, per house, per unit. And two per bedroom or ten, whichever is, you know, the least. And and so this allows you for some of the bigger homes that we have and also allows for some, you know, people have young kids and things that may stay in the same bedroom. So this allows you two per bedroom plus an additional two total. So that offers a considerable amount of flexibility. Short-term rentals within their primary, which an awful, quite a few of our senior citizens are relying upon that. They have some extra space in their home that has a private bathroom and they're renting out rooms per year. They, they are, they can do that three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Now, they do have to comply with the rest of it, which is an awful lot is under the state regulation anyway. The proposal of short-term rentals in non-primary rental units may be rented for a total of hundred, hundred and twenty-five days. And that's to kind of help possibly slow down this movement that I took out some of the Wall Street Journal stuff in here that, that was talking about how that was a great place to invest. And I just want to have, have everyone think about Halyard. Now, there are major companies, and I think one, I forget the names of them and I didn't pull up the Wall Street Journal article. It had, it had it about the major real estate companies that are buying up multiple large apartment buildings and turning them into short-term rental. I want you to think about Halyard becoming all short-term rentals other than the thirty that are income regulated. That's a distinct possibility. There, we have no safeguards against that. So I just, you know, just want, want you to think about that one. So again, the people who are, who are currently registered with the, have a certificate of registration from the D O R, Department of Revenue, they are considered legacy and will not be subject to the hundred and twenty-day provision. Now, that's the only provision that they are exempt from. And again, without these regulations, we can have bachelor parties, we can have weddings, we can have, you know, corporate functions every weekend and, you know, next door, basically in your backyard. So that's one of the things that this, that this does address. Next, please. The state requires them, you know, by being registered with the state, they have to have a million dollars worth of liability insurance. Again, the trash, you know, we're in this ordinance, you are asked to have current trash schedule out there so that people know when to put the trash out, so it's not sitting out there for days. Parking regulations so that they're, they understand what the deal is, particularly if they're, you know, let's say they're here for, you know, visiting family and at Christmas time or something and there's a snow, snow emergency. Noise ordinance, big one. They got to know what the noise ordinance is. And then also, the state requires that they have the location of the fire extinguishers and gas valves. Also, this ordinance would require a twenty-four hour contact person so that, you know, anybody who's renting these and something happens, you know, toilet backs up, the step system alarm goes off, anything that happens, they will be able to have a twenty-four hour contact to be able to help, help them remedy whatever emergency they arise, that arises. The operators, just like any, any rental unit in the state, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or in the city of Gloucester, all rental units, all the apartments, everything have to comply with state, local health, sanitary fire and building codes. Now, that's not to say that in older buildings, they have to be brought up to code. That's just not true. They, you know, just like any, an apartment building, it, it all gets triggered by renovations and things, but as long as you're, you know, you, you have a bathroom in your unit and you have, you know, there's not dangling wires and things like that. Now, currently, this is supposed to be happening. So this is not like something that's new. This is a current regulation that short-term rentals are under. So this is, this just codifies it in writing so that people understand that this is a responsibility they have. Also, there's smoke and carbon monoxide detectors. And, and then there's nothing in this ordinance that stops anyone from renting, you know, long-term, which is thirty days or more. So just want to make sure people understand that there's nothing at all. And, you know, we, we have heard, we've gotten, you know, some communications that said, you know, families own, own these homes and they come and they stay for, you know, a while and then they, and so they use up the time, that time that they are there in that unit, if they're there for, you know, thirty days, that's not counted against the hundred and twenty days. So now they have, you know, the hundred and twenty days for people who actually have their second homes here is not a huge stretch for them as far as I'm concerned. Now, people will probably disagree with me, but if, if the premise that we've been led to believe is that an awful lot of these units are owned by families who do come use them, they're stretching that into a hundred and fifty, a hundred and eighty days by staying there, you know, one or two months. Okay, next. So economic impact, I don't know if this is actually named correctly, but I just wanted to be sure that people understood that all short-term rentals that are registered with the state will be grandfathered in under Section five dash sixty-five H. And, and that, so that, me, by, so what that means is I'm also going to propose an effective date of January one, two thousand and twenty-four because the city needs to have time to get the permitting up. It would not be fair to anybody, the, the clients, the customers, or the renters or the homeowners to put this forward and have an effective date and we don't have the infrastructure to process the permit. So it gives the city, gives the city time to process the permits. And it also gives people who have not been so diligent about signing up with the D O R an opportunity. I mean, if this, if this passes tonight, they're going to have, what, eight months to, to, to sign up? So this, this gives people an awful lot of, you know, a big opportunity to sort of an amnesty period, but, you know, not really an amnesty period, but it does give an awful lot of people a chance to, to get caught up. You know, and again, like I said, homeowners who wish to have their, so that, that, that will not harm any of the people who have today, that, that particular provision that allows for legacies will not harm the people who set up their own finances, their personal finances and the way they thought about their mortgages. It will not upset that apple cart. It's not fair to retroactively punish them. So that's the purpose of that is so the people who are, who are set up with that income, dependent upon that income, they are not. But here going forward, people will understand what, what they are, what they, you know, the, the roadmap that is ahead. So. And then again, people who, who live in the home and have a separate room, particularly older folks who have, you know, their kids, you know, two bedrooms and bath, they'll, they'll, they'll be able to rent six hundred, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. You know, because of the legacy, immediately there will be no loss, no reduction in revenue. And so there will be, but I, I have a feeling that we are going to see a large increase in the amount of short-term rentals that are registered with the state if this passes. So it has room for growth for persons that, that are in their primary residence. And it does provoke, promote some affordability and availability of long-term residents for, by not losing that long-term inventory that, believe me, when Airbnb went public, they're in a hard push to make profits and grow their business model, V R B O. They're, they're in a big push, they're, you know, to grow their business model and they are going to be making it quite attractive. And we really need to have people, you know, invest in our community. And it, it also may help with, if we don't lose, you know, those houses. There's, there's been a, a domino effect I've watched for, you know, decades now where secondary homes that were bought along the coast, you know, that weren't necessarily affordable homes. But as that, as those houses got bid up, the whole rest of the housing market followed suit. So it, it's a driver. And not that that's the purpose of this, that's just a, a benefit, a side benefit that I would just like to point out. That maybe it'll keep a little bit more inventory here and we won't have the cash buyers coming in because they can afford to buy with cash because they're going to get a huge return on investment by being able to rent for, you know, eight, eight months a year at, you know, two thousand dollars a week or, you know, more. So it, that, that, it may be help, it may not. That's just, you know, a thought that, that's out there and hopefully that is a side effect that we have. It's not going to be, it's not going to cure any of our affordable housing issues for certain. So, next. And I've taken that one out, but it's a good quote from Jimmy Carter. A lot of people don't look at housing as a human right, but it is. You know, it's, housing is a right, it shouldn't be an investment. Jimmy Carter, two thousand and seventeen. And that is my presentation.
Thank you, Counsel Gross. And I just want the public to know that as we continue the public hearing, if you want to see the full council order, it's on page eighty of one thirty-nine in the council packet for tonight's meeting. So if you go on the city website, go to government, hit City Council, hit City Council Meetings and Agendas, and the first packet is on that for tonight's meeting. And you just scroll down and you can see it. Because I think it helps to visualize it as well. And councillors, if any of you want to see this during the course of the public hearing, please ask. Joanne has the, this on her desktop and she can put it up on the screen if you want to refer to the five-page council order. So thank you, Counsel Gross. So who would like to speak? We'll start with in favor. And you have up to three minutes. If you could come in and introduce yourself and you have three minutes to talk to us and I will ask Madam Clerk if you would time people and give them a signal when there's ten seconds left. That would be great. So, Ally O'Brien, you're first to speak on this and welcome. And if you could give us your name and address, that would be great.
Hi, my name is Ally O'Brien of Three Locust Lane, Gloucester. I think you just said that the first people to speak are in favor. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if you decide that you're not, you can. Okay, so not in favor, but go on, you have the floor.
Thank you. I read the Gloucester Times article last week on this matter and while I appreciate and understand the issue of affordable housing, I did some research of my own specific to Gloucester that seems to suggest that restricting short-term rentals won't help affordable, the affordable housing issue and could potentially negatively impact the economic growth of Gloucester. Here are three important facts. Less than two percent, the number of short-term rentals in Gloucester last year, the number of short-term rentals in Gloucester last year is less than two percent of the overall housing units in Gloucester. Negative twenty-two percent. The number of short-term rentals in Gloucester has decreased by twenty-two percent since two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two. Decreased twenty-two percent. I found this very surprising and clearly indicates that there is no relationship between rising house prices and short-term rentals in Gloucester. And finally, twelve million dollars, the amount of revenue generated from short-term rentals last year, of which a significant portion, portion is recycled back into the economy through local cleaning services, local maintenance workers, local taxes. Local cleaning services, local maintenance workers, local taxes. And that twelve million dollars does not include the millions of dollars spent by visitors on local restaurants, experiences. Shopping and all of the great things Gloucester has to offer. Given the fact that short-term rentals are a very small and shrinking component of Gloucester's housing stock. I believe it is an unnecessary distraction to further restrict short-term rentals. And will likely have a negative consequence for the local economy. Thank you.
Thank you, Ally. Um, anyone like to speak, we'll, we'll be general, we'll say either in favor or in opposition. Um, next, um. Um, Alexandra Stella, welcome and introduce yourself and your address. You have three minutes to talk to us about this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexandra and I'm at fourteen Sawyer out in Lanesville. Um, now, I don't know if anyone on the council is a renter or who trying to buy property. Um, I've been a renter and I, and looking at properties. So for. Two point five years, I, when my last house got sold by the owners. I looked for rentals. I went to a winter rental. I went to the campground, okay? I, I, I've lived, there are other people who've done part of the state. I want to meet that, need to be in a group. Two and a half years, I looked every day. Also, I've been looking at real estate listings for over a day. To say that the number of short-term housing is shrinking is, is wrong. They may not be on any kind of thing that you can see, but I mean, drive around. Sold and show you, look, that one, then I saw it on Verbo. Okay, and I saw it on Nextdoor as a short-term rental. People from the s, wealthy suburbs of Boston are parking their money here to get short-term rentals. I feel. That I don't really agree with the. This, what do you call it, thing that you're proposing because it isn't enough. It's not enough. How does that promote affordability? How does it slow? Good to allow owner-occupied. I've always rented out rooms my entire life, been a property manager, rented them out at my house in Boston, rented them out at any place I rent here. I manage the building that I'm in. So it's good to allow owner-occupied. To say, okay, it's better if they would give a long-term, much better. But allowing people a hundred and twenty days, I mean, to think that nine months of the year, talk to some of the people that have these. Units, not a lot of people are coming there in the middle of the, dead of the winter. I find it very romantic and evocative. It's not everybody's greatest dream, but oh, let's go up to Gloucester, especially Lanesville where like the wind is blowing and it's. No, not coming up here like that. So I don't, at a hundred, I don't think that this is. Um, I don't think that it, I don't, I would like to know how it promotes affordability. How does it slow prices? I, I, I don't think it's, I don't. So I guess that really, we make it. We have, have to make people think twice about parking their money up here.
Thank you, Alexandra. You have um, five seconds to wrap up.
All right, we need the housing for us. This is a peninsula and there's just not enough room to allow this to go on. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking and public comments. Next person with their hand raised. Roseanne Vidal, welcome and your address, please, and you have three minutes to chat with us. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Roseanne Vidal, twenty-four Rowley Shore in Lanesville. Uh, I. We have it uh, an Airbnb that we rent out. It's an apartment ta, attached to our house. We've been doing this for a few years. Uh, it's safe, it's up to code, we pay taxes, it's two people at a time. They're lovely, they love Gloucester, it's great, it's injecting money into the economy. I pay insurance for it. In the end, it's not even enough money to pay the taxes on our house because it's so expensive. Uh, and I, I think the, I don't agree with the hundred and twenty-day limit. Because uh, you know, we have, it's mostly in the summer, we have some people in the winter. If it wasn't, Airbnb covers a lot of the safety issues. I think most of the ones addressed. Also, um, I, I want to say that I agree, uh, I, I liked Ally's. Research that she did and if it weren't for short-term rentals. I would not rent out this little one-bedroom apartment because it's not worth the hassle. It's not gonna increase. Affordable housing, you know, think about all the people that have homes here that are just here in the winter. They're not even here all year. It's, it, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna solve the problem. It, 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 I, I feel like it's, it's an undue burden. Where's that money gonna go anyway with an additional file that I have to. Fill out for, you know, everything bureaucracy. Where's that money gonna go? I just, I, I don't know. I, I feel like it's just another headache, it's another obstacle and it's not really addressing the problem, which as Ally stated. You know, the, the data doesn't show that this is a huge problem in Gloucester. I mean, I would like to know how many people are only here all year long like us, you know? And that have houses sitting around and talking about noise. Can we talk about leaf blowers, okay? I, I, nobody in my neighborhood is complaining about my Airbnb rental, I can tell you. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Roseanne. Next person for, to speak in either in favor or opposition. Deanna Fay, welcome and if you would introduce yourself and your dress, you have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Um, my name's Deanna Fay and I live at Three Barbary Lane in East Gloucester. Um, I want to thank you all for taking this on and thank you Tony Gross for all of your work here. Um, I am not sure um, how I feel about this um, proposal altogether. I have some questions and is it possible for me to just ask a few questions and get answers?
You can ask questions and counselors can take note of them and ask them on your behalf.
Perfect, thank you. So my first question is just some clarification around the objective of the grandfathering. Um, of the existing three hundred and fifty or so current short-term rentals. I'm not quite sure I understand what the exemption, what the benefit is to both the um. The owners of the units and to the city. Um, if I'm reading it correctly, the exemption is saying that they're exempt from the. Hundred and twenty-day um, rule. Um. So I'm not sure if that's what I'm reading correctly or not. And if, if it is correct. So the exemption is that it doesn't matter if it's owner-occupied or non-owner-occupied. Um, so I guess that's one question. Um. I'm, I'm curious about the hundred and eighty-day um, period for people to register, which puts us at June twenty-ninth. Two thousand twenty-four. And if I'm not mistaken, most short-term rentals are gonna be fully booked for the summer by that date. So if they can um, organize themselves to book themselves for a full summer season. They should be able to get themselves to city hall to register a young kid ahead of time. That's, um. So I, some, I'm not sure how that date came about. Um, I'm also curious about that, the two hundred dollar fee. Is that per rental unit or per owner? Um, so some clarification on that would be great. And my last question is around sort of policing of all of this. And um, and whether the city actually has the staff and resource capacity um, for monitoring and enforcing um. This and what any, what you perceive violation consequences would be. So that's a whole list of questions for you. I'm sorry, um, I, I wasn't able to find it within the, you know, the documentation. So I'm hoping that somewhere I can get some clarification tonight. Thanks again.
Thank you, Deanna. Next person that'd like to speak in favor and or in opposition. We now have about fourteen people with their hands raised. Michelle Williams, would you introduce yourself and your address and you have up to three minutes to talk to the council?
Hi, thank you. Yes, I'm Michelle Williams. I live at fifty-three Concord Street in West Gloucester. Um, I'm also the general manager at Atlantic Vacation Homes. So thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, so just to put it out there, Atlantic Vacation Homes definitely takes the position that, you know, fair and sensible regulations. Are in the best interest of everybody and we agree that the safety of the community and our guests is paramount. Um, do you know that all Gloucester rentals, including short-term rentals. Are already mandated to have a certificate of rental dwelling from the building inspector's office? So just, so that everyone is aware of that, we do do that already. We're asking that the city does undertake an economic impact study. Um, we've been talking to Councilor Gross about this for a while. Um, we know that having data that is very specific to Gloucester is going to help us a lot. And even on this call tonight, there's been a lot of questions about the data. And really looking at what's happening in Boston or other parts of the country is not gonna help us understand what's happening specifically here in Gloucester. One of the other issues, tourism, as everyone knows, is a major economic driver here. Uh, so from that standpoint, I'm also the chair of the Discover Gloucester Board. And we've been working very hard for a number of years to extend the season and market Gloucester as an attractive year-round destination. And I can tell you, people do come here in the winter. They've been coming. Uh, so limiting the rentals to a hundred and twenty days, which is essentially the summer, uh, really undercuts that goal. And it also potentially puts a huge cap on tax revenue. And a lot of our Gloucester properties are already subject to that three percent community impact fee. And a hundred percent of that is already earmarked for supporting affordable housing. And that three percent also puts those properties at a fourteen point seven percent lodging tax. As opposed to the eleven point seven percent that hotels have. So we really are hoping for, you know, to have some real data. And a, a study done specifically around Cape Ann and the city of Gloucester. Uh, and that will just help us immensely to really understand the landscape here and not just guess. And not make assumptions based on what's happening in other parts of the country. So lastly, I just want to say that there's all kinds of reasons that people do rent their properties. Uh, we represent a lot of different types of homeowners, including those who have an inherited home. That they use and they need income to maintain and pay the taxes. There are couples who, you know, buy a vacation home that they want to move into when they retire. There's families who rely on rental income to pay for things like college tuition, weddings, medical expenses or other family needs. There's a lot of personal stories around this and it's much less about the sort of nameless, faceless corporate investors. Coming in and swooping up all the real estate.
Michelle, you have about five more seconds to wrap up. Thank you.
All done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clark, for doing the timing. We appreciate it. Um, next person to um. To speak to us in either in favor or in opposition. We now have about twelve hands raised. Um, Barnaby, would you introduce yourself and your address? Thank you.
Certainly, I hope you can hear me. I'm in the woods. Um, I'm Barnaby Prendergast. I live on uh, sixty-one Furnell Street in Wild West Gloucester. Um, I am another data-driven person. Um, we really, I feel, need. Specific data to Gloucester. Otherwise, what we're in effect saying is if you're rich enough to own a second home. And not rent it out, that's fine. But if you need to rent it out to own that second home, that's not fine. And I think that's kind of um, a bit skewish, if you like. Um, when something like ten to fifteen percent of Gloucester property is currently vacant. Um, going by the um, housing production plan report in uh, twenty seventeen, there were two thousand vacant. Um, properties in Gloucester, but vacant residential properties. Um, going by the MBTA communities data, that appears to have come down to something around seventeen or eighteen hundred. But those properties are gonna be fine, but the three hundred and, I think it's three hundred and seventy currently. Licensed short-term rental properties are not gonna be fine. It, it just seems um, like we're picking the wrong. Bit of the problem to address if we're really interested in freeing up homes for. Um, people to live in as opposed to people to um, holiday in. Anyway, that's all I really wanted to add. I, I've sent a message earlier, which you may or may not have time to read. And uh, thank you for your hard work. I recognize it's a difficult problem. Bye.
Thank you, Barnaby. Next person with their hand raised, Madam Clerk. Joel Favazza, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have up to three minutes to talk to us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joel Favazza, twenty-eight Middle Street. Um, I've been contacted by a flurry of clients, but I am here in my personal capacity due to time constraints. At the outset, I just want to say that I agree with the vast majority of the ordinance. And I hope that a modified version of what has been proposed will come back not too long from now and get a positive vote from this council. However, I urge you to please send this current draft back to O N A for additional research and refinement. Otherwise, sadly, I would ask that you vote against this ordinance change. It's currently uh, stated. I bring up research because I heard a lot tonight um, about interesting data and not a lot about necessary data. Uh, by that, I mean, I'm curious if this goes forward tonight. Um, will broad and general conclusions stated in national publications now be recognized by the council as the only guides we should be looking at? And deciding how we should govern the use of real estate in our city. If so, I look forward to the same deference being given to the national publications I'm happy to bring in regarding multi-family housing, waterfront development. And height limits for future projects I might come through with. I'm being intentionally snarky, but seriously, even the Gloucester Times article mentioned data pulled from a Florida expert. It's my understanding that there's been no input solicited from the local chamber of commerce, no input solicited from the Discover Gloucester Group. Uh, no input solicited from local real estate rental companies, companies that might have Gloucester specific, uh, specific data. Rather than what's just generally available in national magazines. It's also my understanding that there has been no input solicited from local short-term rental unit owners. I think frankly, you need to hear from these stakeholders before you vote on ordinance that is going to impact interest to all of them. My main objection tonight is with a hundred and twenty-day limitation on new units. I believe it'll solve none of the issues that have been suggested it will solve. Investors will still outbid working-class purchasers who would own or occupy houses because a hundred and twenty days is still lucrative enough to justify it. Property owners will still elect to rent units on a short-term basis rather than rent to year-round tenants because a hundred and twenty days is still more lucrative. And carries less risk and liability in the running to a full-time tenant. The only change will be that new short-term rental units will be underperforming and contribute less in room tax to the city. And less in tourist spending at local retail and restaurant establishments because they're gonna be empty two-thirds of the year. Because I'm, I know you all know better than I, we have schools, police stations, fire stations and a sewer plant to build. And we cannot be cutting off sources of revenue like this. I believe if you want more housing units, affordable and market rate alike, you could resurrect the zoning ordinance amendments that the planning board worked on for four years. That you voted down last summer. If you're worried about how you're becoming a quasi-hotel, make it easier and more appealing for real hotels to be permitted and built. Again, I think you're really close on most of this. I just hope you'll pump the brakes, send it back to O N A, reach out to local stakeholders. And then using local data, come back with a more refined draft. I really thank you for all the hard work. I'm not trying to give you guys a hard time. I just hope you'll do a little more before you take a vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joel. We now have nine hands raised. Um, Madam Clerk, if you could bring in another person, that would be great. Um, Mr. Noel, um, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Well, Mr. Noel is actually a neuroplatter. Um, and uh, I'm Scott, a neighbor with Scott Memhard. Uh, living at four or at the address on the, sorry, I am nervous, always fucking sticky in front of crap.
So what is your address? For?
Four Beach Road, Four Beach Road in Gloucester.
Great.
And um, you know, we have owned this, um, this property for a long time. We have, uh. It's. It's a, it's a family treasure and uh, and we rent it over the summer and that's it. We're registered with the state and. And I see that we're paying almost fifteen percent in taxes. Um, I'm speaking a, against this, uh, this proposal and it's, in its current form, not because it impacts me, but actually. I've spent um, a, a lot of time, fifteen years I was involved with um. With affordable housing in the state of California, specifically in Los Angeles and Holly, West Hollywood area. Um, and one of the things that I saw there is that if you're trying to address housing needs. You have to look really specifically at those kinds of issues and, you know, if you're, if you're looking for affordable housing for seniors. Or for people who are low-income, people who work in the, in the community but find that they're having trouble affording the houses there. Um, each of those sort of needs to be addressed individually. And so I think the idea of trying to limit. Uh, rental housing with the idea that that's gonna somehow take care of other housing problems. I, I, I don't think that they're as connected as that, uh, not in my experience. And um, and I've heard a couple of others talk about the need for um. For additional income in the area. And one of the things that we see is we've got families that come back year after year after year. We actually have a family that is on their thirtieth. We actually have a family that is on their thirtieth year. Uh, they come for two weeks at the end of the summer every year. It's the thirty years they've had their kids grow up. And now the kids have kids that are coming to Gloucester. It's really special to see. And I think that people love the town. The thing is, once they're here, you want them to stay and you want to, want them to spend their money. If you have people just coming in, using the beaches and leaving at the end of the day, miss a huge opportunity for people who are going to be buying groceries and uh, and, you know, getting their haircut and uh, buying clothes locally so that they can be ready for a dinner with, you know, with family and friends, that kind of thing. So um, so I think the two issues are uh, are tend to be very separate. Um, and I'll just leave it that. I, it sounds like there's some good thought that's gone into it, but it, it really um, doesn't sound like a finished work here. It's current form.
Thank you. Next person that'd like to speak in favor or in opposition. Frank McCormick, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have three minutes to talk to us.
Yes, um, I am Frank McCormick. I live on fifteen Title Cove Way in beautiful Gloucester. Um, and um, I am in opposition. Not the whole thing, but um, definitely the one twenty days. And um, I think um, Ali O'Brien made some great, great facts. Um, Deanna had a lot of questions and, and everything Joel said um, is, I'm a hundred percent behind. We can't base everything off pulling information off magazines in data machines. That doesn't even make sense to me. What facts can you provide that Airbnb is detrimental to the city of Gloucester, Gloucester? What negative impact would they cause to the city of Gloucester? I think um, we deserve, I deserve, because I am one of the persons that I do rent. Um, I do own, and I do sell in the city of Gloucester. Um, I, I think we need a, a study that's going to be done um, for the city of Gloucester. Um, it just, for me, i- it just doesn't make sense. And then I do have questions, like the January first, two thousand twenty-four. If I slide in under that, the, the poor guy that comes in in two thousand and twenty-five can't do an Airbnb? It just, I don't understand it. Um, I feel like you're taking certain rights away. Um, for, for, for what reasons? What's the basis of the reasoning? Um, so council gross, I, I really, in, in the council, I really think you guys should really think this over and, and get a feasible study. I think, I think as a renter, I think I'm old that. Um, and I think um, I think um, I think we need to um, put this on hold. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Frank.
Have a good night.
Thank you. We now have eight hands raised. Anyone like to speak in favor or in opposition? Patricia Ives, would you introduce yourself and your address? Can you unmute yourself, please? Can you? Thank you. We can.
Okay, thank you. My name is Patricia Ives. I live at Eight Lewis Court in Gloucester. Um, I have a number of questions. I'll make them kind of brief. Um, Airbnb and vacation rental by owners, they're really separate website sites, although they offer the same services. Um, Vacation Rental by Owner offers standalone homes only, and Airbnb offers standalone homes and shared spaces. So they're a little bit different. Uh, my first question becomes, how does one identify a vacation rental by owner or Airbnb that's not registered with the state? I think I read there was three hundred and fifty that are registered. Is that Airbnb or vacation rental by owners? So how does one uncover the ones that are under the radar? Um, the second question I have is, how are their certificates of rental dwelling tie into this? You know, vacation rental by owners and Airbnb? Um, I, I don't know how that fits in. And the third question I have is one of enforcement. How is, how are all these enforced details or how are all these new details going to be enforced? Those are kind of my questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're all a lot of writing, so um, we appreciate the questions. Thank you. We now have seven hands raised. Um, so Sunny Robinson, would you introduce yourself? And you have three minutes to talk to us.
Uh, thank you very much. This is Sunny Robinson at twenty Harvard Street. Uh, and first of all, I want to thank you all for starting to tackle this very difficult problem. Um, in general, I support the direction in which you're going. Let me start by sharing a couple of thoughts and then express my reservations. When I look at statistics, I see that we have fifteen thousand plus housing units in Gloucester, but we have thirteen thousand plus full-time occupied uh, households. So somewhere in there, there are two thousand units we're talking about. Now, obviously, some of those are seasonal at, for the people who own them and not rental properties, whether short-term or long. But I think that helps illustrate some of the concerns from people like myself who are very afraid that we are losing rental property that is affordable within the market. I'm not talking affordable within the deed-restricted sense, but affordable within the market to people who work here and want to live here. One of the prior speakers was pointing out that tourism is driving our economy. It's true. Um, that's an asset on one hand, but tourism is also driving out the very workers who need to live here to service the tourist industry. So we have a big problem to figure out how we retain the highest percentage of housing that is affordable within the sense of the market. And I think your proposals in front of you tonight are, are a very good step in that direction. One of my concerns, given that we don't really know how many short-term rental units there are, because it's clear that not everybody is appropriately registered and paying their fees as they should. One of my concerns is how do we find out how many short-term rental units we really have? And if we are, we, are we grandfathering in only those who are appropriately registered and certified? Or everybody who was in existence? And how many of the sub-rosy units zip forward between now and January first, twenty twenty-four to get registered so they're grandfathered? So the problem for me that I'd like to hear you all discuss is, do we really need to grandfather all of those units? How many units have we taken off? And I see Joanne is telling me my time is up, so I'll leave it with that question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunny. I was taking notes and not looking at Joanne's prompts, so my, my apologies. Um, we now have six hands raised and um, if you would bring in the next person, Madam Clerk, that would be great. William Rochford, if you would introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to us. Would you unmute yourself, please? You're almost doing it. You're hitting the, the right button and then it's disappearing on you. Keep trying.
He's no longer on the screen, so do you want me to bring the next person in?
Okay, bring the next one in, and if you would keep trying, um, that would be great. Um, Liz Russell, would you introduce yourself and your address? You have three minutes to talk to us.
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, Liz Russell, one forty-one Mount Pleasant Street, East Gloucester. Um, I just want to echo what some other folks have said. I'm sort of neutral. Um, there's a lot that's unsensible to me, but it, it does, I just want to echo what other folks have said about just really being interested in more data. Um, because a lot of those facts and figures um, are from like national publications and, and other places that aren't Gloucester. And I just think it would be really helpful to get a better understanding of the data. I mean, when you think of the history of the town, like, there have always been short-term rentals. Um, a lot of the art in the museum was made by artists who were there for short periods of time in the summer, so it, it's not necessarily a negative. You know, it does contribute to tourism. It is a positive. Um, I mean, the internet has really changed things, obviously, and people are concerned about it. But yeah, it just feels to me like we need more kind of facts. Um, and, you know, sometimes like we, we bought a home. I grew up on Cape Anne. Um, we finally bought a home in the fall. It's been my dream to come home. You know, some of these stories are so personal, like I, my husband and I are going to retire in our house. We have two daughters. Like, there's nothing I love more than bringing them back there in the summer. But I want to be able to rent it. Um, we're going to be doing our rental through Atlantic Vacation Rentals because I like the way they operate. I like that it's a local company. Like, I just feel really good about all those pieces. Um, so, you know, that's just my story, but it's going to help us to be able to rent it, you know, for s- some, maybe eight or ten, or I don't know how lo- how long we'll rent it every year, but it's going to help us to be able to rent it to other families when we're not there. Um, so, yeah, that's just kind of our story. Um, and I think it just would be really helpful to have more, more local data. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Liz. Um, we now have five people with their hands raised, and we have eighty-eight attendees. Um, so the next person is Marcia Hart. Marcia, if you would introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to us.
Hi, Marcia Hart, two Fremont Street in Gloucester. I'm sorry, I'm not better prepared. Um, I tried to read through the information in the packet and saw the newspaper article. Um, uh, it's really hard to keep up with uh, all the issues that there are to, that you think may be easy to keep up with because they've been brought up a few times, but it is really difficult to be a, a citizen. Um, I, I really appreciate um, that this effort's being made and am in agreement with uh, all of the provisions that are related to safety and the responsibilities of people providing rentals and all the liability issues, trash and parking and noise and fire extinguishers. Those are, if we don't have an ordinance that addresses that, those are all really good ideas and uh, seem very well thought out. Um, I was a little confused about um, if anyone's signing up um, between the, the present and the, the date that it might go into effect, if um, they would be exempted and then the exemption for um, the one hundred and twenty days would end um, so that everybody would get grandfathered in if they applied to the state by the January date. Um, but then everyone else after it would not have that opportunity. Um, so I, that's a clarification that I think is needed. I found the newspaper article confusing in that regard. Um, I'm also concerned about some of the things that have been brought up in the one hundred and twenty days. Um, I think Airbnbs are a, a, a benefit in some ways and a liability in others. And I think that requires more conversation in the community because uh, there are obviously competing interests. We do have a tourism uh, economy or a portion of our economy. We also have a serious housing problem. So um, I, and I'm wondering about the oversight also. I know the building inspector is the involved person, but um, policing this. Um, uh, often we have things that get put into effect and then they really aren't um, followed up on adequately to uh, make sure that people are following. How do you really keep it to a hundred and twenty days? Um, and I, I think the one hundred and twenty days may be excessive for the state of our housing uh, rather than too little. Um, and I uh, from personal, uh, a personal example, my son in, in the past seven, eight years has um, lived in three different places where he was appreciated by the person renting to him, but he moved out because their family needed to move in. So it's
I hate to interrupt you, but you have about five seconds to wrap up. I'm sorry.
Um, just it, for permanent residents who are involved in Gloucester, contribute to the city. It's really, really difficult to live here anymore unless you have a stable housing, and it's very important that we create that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We now have six hands raised and ninety attendees. Um, we now have Leah Johnson. Would you introduce yourself, Leah, and your address? You have three minutes to talk to us.
Yes, I'm actually Doug Johnson. My wife is Leah Johnson. And uh, yeah, so uh, thank you, councillors, for letting me speak. Um, my wife and I are public school teachers and we own a house at two Arlington Street. We're both against the proposed ordinance as it's currently written. Um, we have a little cottage connected to our house that we rent out seasonally for supplemental income that we depend on. And a couple of questions I had was, so Airbnb covers a million-dollar liability. So are you requiring us to get another million-dollar liability insurance policy? And then on a separate note, a- as a taxpayer, um, I'm just wondering if uh, the town requires inspections, that, does that open them up to potential lawsuits? So if a, a property owner gets sued and there's a safety issue, the town will be standing with the property owner and we as taxpayers would be paying for that. So I'm wondering if the town lawyer has looked into this. That's it.
Thank you very much, Doug.
Thanks.
Uh, we now have six hands raised. Our next person. Um, Beverly Palmachi, if you would introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to us. Thanks.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Eight Commonwealth Avenue in Gloucester. Uh, I am for, uh, definitely for tightening regulations. I would like to see this tightened even more. Uh, I don't see that uh, short-term rentals really add anything to the community. It just makes it more of a, a transient community. And what is at stake here are the people who want to call and do call Gloucester their home. There are only so many homes in Gloucester. And this uh, short-term rental business has certainly grown from what it used to be. I think a lot of the short-term rentals used to be summer buildings, not winterized. Now every cottage in Gloucester has been made into a, a winter rental. There just is not enough year-round rentals to satisfy the people who want to live here, and that really includes people who would like to work here. It, it's just, it's uh, I, I see nothing beneficial about this. I've lived other places, including Hawaii. And when you live someplace that is centered around a tourist economy, you can see that it just cannibalizes the community. And there just has to be a strict uh, control of these. I live across from a building that was, used to be a three-family building that became uh, short-term rental. Uh, in terms of policing this, I realize this is very difficult. Uh, owners will say they're doing a certain thing, and unless neighbors uh, make the authorities aware that other things are happening, no one has any way of knowing. Uh, owners can blatantly lie. I mean, this is what I encountered. I had to send her Airbnb rentals into the city to prove what she was doing. So, you know, it, it takes away parking spaces, one of my obsessions, but more than it moves year-round rentals from the market. You end up with a lot of winter rentals. People move into winter rentals. Where are they going to move when summer comes? People, it's a slapdash. Where do I go? How do I afford this? People are being squeezed. It causes tremendous pressure to people. And this is one of those things that's uh, a negative influence. You have to protect your community. You have to see that people who call Gloucester their home have a half a chance to live there, not just in the winter, but year-round. Make it their home, work there, and, and add something to the community. Um, I think there may have been a couple of other things, notes here that, as people were talking. But I think this is pretty much it. I'm, I'm really in favor of long-term rentals, I'm not in favor of short-term rentals, there's not enough said about it. And I was at the first meeting at the library when this whole thing was proposed. Meredith Fine was, seemed to be in charge of having written up these regulations. I thought we were there to discuss regulations, but we weren't, we were there to be told what regulations have been decided upon, and I thought, and it was sort of a let's wait and see basis.
Speaking to us, next person. We now have four hands raised. Lucy Pear, would you introduce yourself and state your address and you have three minutes to talk to us, thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Lucy Pear, my address here is seventeen Rockcomb Road, and I just wanted to thank you all for your time this evening, I know a lot of hard work and preparation has gone into this meeting and the topic. I am a fourth generation here in Gloucester and I do have a rental property here without which I wouldn't be able to be here in the community, and what I wanted to say is, you know, my stance is against the proposal in its current form, just because it sounds like, and especially through this meeting and with what everyone has shared, that there might need to be a deeper dive in the research that we're looking at here as far as locally what's concerned. But one thing that I have seen time and time again in the neighborhood that I'm in is that many people are purchasing second homes or third homes, they're not here in the winter and they certainly don't need to rent their properties out in the summer. But the people who own rental units that are working very hard to have supplemental income to allow them to be in this community, a lot of time and energy goes in, the people that live nearby that are managing their own properties and helping to bring, you know, life into the city of Gloucester, that, that's, you know, a very big deal for us, so maybe something could be looking into the further impact of absentee owners or how far away are the people who are living with second and third homes and renting them out through management companies? That's, I think, sometimes where a little bit of the position gets lost as far as oversight. I live, you know, right down the street and I'm there every day available for my renters and working hard to ensure that the impact on the neighborhood and the community is of value. I couldn't rent the property if I didn't live nearby because so much time and energy goes into it. So perhaps that's something we could look at further that just came to me during this meeting, but a lot of, a lot of different positions are involved and I, I appreciate thus far having the opportunity to have that income, again, without it, myself and many friends that I have around the island wouldn't be able to be here, and so, you know, that's something that I would love a little bit more information in, and I thank you all again for your time this evening.
Thank you, Lucy. We have two more hands raised. Right now we have a phone number, if you would introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to us.
That was an error on my part, the next one is William Marchford.
William, would you introduce yourself and your address and you have three minutes to talk to us?
Hi, can you hear me now this time?
We can hear you well.
Wonderful, thank you, and thanks for listening to me and thank you all for your time. My name is William Rochford Jr., I've owned property in Gloucester for many years, I currently even live in Marblehead at the time, although my, my love is Gloucester and I'm also a realtor, I sell a lot of properties throughout the North Shore. And so I have a little bit of a different perspective on things, maybe than some people here, I joined the meeting without much thought and I didn't have any statistics in front of me. But my thought is more just from my, my vision of what I've seen and what I have seen going on. First of all, I'd like to say I'm, I'm against it as it's written. I think that having a limitation on the amount of days people can rent, although I do not have any short-term rentals myself, they are all long-term rentals. I believe in general that in speaking about money and affordability, I think water, I always use this term, water kind of finds its own level. Meaning if people continue to buy properties for short-term rentals that over time those prices will come down and people find it then, then it's in fact not a viable reason to buy properties for short-term rentals. So things kind of fluctuate and move in waves that way, and I've always seen that in real estate. Also, I'm going to go back and forth a little bit. Also, in talking about what we're experiencing in Gloucester, it's really nothing different than what the whole country is, is experiencing as far as cost of real estate, shortage of rental property, it's, it's, it's nationwide. So, so I really think we're looking at two different issues. One is, you know, affordability living in Gloucester, the other thing is, is the rental situation. And the, and I think as far as the real estate goes, it's really, you know, we've been through a number of recessions, I've probably been through three myself. And we see things relax after we go through a recession, after things change. And I hate to say that someday we're going to be coming into that, but that's what happens, the things comes up, they go back down and it releases the pressure on properties. So I do believe in the future, we will see lower prices, we'll see more availability and I believe we'll be seeing more rentals, long-term rentals available. A little funny story, I also have, like I mentioned, long-term rentals. Right now I have
I am, sorry, you have about ten seconds if you could
I have a current renter that's actually renting full, that they only come once in a while, but they're taking up an apartment because they want to be able to come and visit Gloucester. So if we had more affordable short-term rentals, they would actually be using a short-term rental versus using a full-time rental property, if I'm making any sense right there to you. But I see a lot of that happening lately and again, I'm against it as it's written and I appreciate your time. But I think things will find its own way, like they always do. And we're not in a different position than any other state in, in our country right now, thank you.
Thank you. We now have five hands raised, Ruth Pino, would you introduce yourself and your address and you have three minutes to speak to us, welcome.
Hello, everyone, I'm Ruth Pino, I live at eighty-two Wheeler Street in Gloucester. You all know I am a housing advocate and a zoning reform advocate. And you all need to get on board with zoning reform. Regulations like you're proposing tonight with too little data isn't the way to help us out of this housing crisis which has been coming for thirty years. Short-term rentals have existed in Gloucester for over one hundred years. You need more data and supportive zoning reform before regulating this industry any further than what you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth. We have four hands raised, next person. Carl Saccolo, would you introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes to talk to the council, thanks.
Sure, good evening, council, my name's Carl Saccolo, I live in central Pennsylvania. And Valerie, I see you looking quizzical, are you able to hear me?
I, I am, I'm just wondering what your local address is.
I, I will get to that in a second.
Okay.
I was born in Boston, my brothers and I own a house at twenty-six Salt Island Road.
Okay.
It's my late parents' house. We set up a real estate trust as a means of ensuring ownership and and for estate planning purposes. Are you, we rent the house in the summer. That enables us to, and let me just say, I have summered in Gloucester just about every year of my life. My parents built the house in the mid-seventies and upon their passing, of course, we inherited it. We still use it personally, but not in the, in the peak season. That peak season enables us to have the revenue to be by profit, and let me just say, I have two brothers who live within twenty and forty miles of Gloucester, so the three of us, they use it more frequently, but we do use it at non-peak season, I get up several times a year. I feel a part of the community, I stay abreast of these current issues. I speak in opposition to your proposed ordinance. I, I think it's a solution in, in search of a problem. And I would, would encourage us, have many others, that valid local data and research be done in order to, if going forward, you know, so that you can decide what you want to do. I'm looking at Joanne for her waving her hand, I don't see it yet. And I, I believe that's it, but and, and as others have said, just real briefly, there are issues that need to be addressed, I don't think we want to have, you know, anybody doing short-term rentals, I've been pleased with the agency we use, Atlantic Vacation Homes, because they vet their clients. Anyway, thank you, take care.
Thank you, Carl. We now have three hands raised, next person. Jenny Dillon, introduce yourself and your dress, you have three minutes to talk to us.
Hi, Val, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Excellent, so I'm at one-five-six Wheeler Street. And my family's been in Gloucester summering since before the nineteen forties. And so, we have enjoyed keeping this little cottage in our family since then. I was raised on the beaches of Gloucester, both of my kids were now launched from college. Were raised on the same beaches and hopefully if everything works out for us, we will be raising my grandchildren on those beaches and my great-grandchildren. So, I just want to make a couple of points. I've been in the healthcare field for thirty years and I would ask, and I'm going to echo several other people in this call, that if we're, if we're really going to make some decisions about short-term rentals, that we at least really dig into Gloucester data. And I mean, Business Insider is a great publication, I love Wired, of course, Wall Street Journal is reputable, but it doesn't, it addresses things high level and it doesn't get down to the nitty-gritty of Cape Anne in any way, shape or form. It might hint at a trend, but we really need to look at our own city. I've heard there's three hundred-ish short-term rentals between three and four hundred in Gloucester that are at least on record. I'm registered with the, the state. And, and we do Airbnb for some time in the summer, we also use it, and then in the fall. And that allows us to help with the taxes which continue to escalate with the, you know, the real estate values, and then, of course, we also have to maintain the property. And that's costly, so that's what we do with that revenue. And there are different reasons that people use Airbnb or do short-term rentals and they range. So you really have to dig into, of those that do, that are on record, why? Are those summer rentals, like for example, my, my place isn't even winterized, we have it for eight months of the year. It wouldn't, it doesn't take away from the stock of year-round rentals. And I think there are a lot of people out there like that, because we are a summer community. There's also a lot of people that own second homes, they use it in the summer and then they rent it out for the rest of the year, well, that doesn't really address the need of long-term either, and I think there are a lot of those. Okay, and then there are, of course, people that own houses, they use it in the summer and then they don't rent it, they don't have to. So we've got a lot of data that we need to dig in, in our city to figure out because with the escalating real estate prices, I think there is a misperception in Gloucester that it's because of the short-term rentals, and I, I think until we really get that hard data so that we can address that issue, a lot of our citizens are still going to continue, like Beverly who just spoke, they're going to continue to talk about how it's the short-term rentals that are driving the lack of housing and rentals in Gloucester, and that's not the case, it's our lack of development and I refuse to do it. And then every time that we do try to have a project, everyone tries to squelch it. So I think those are two different
Hand raised by Madam Clark, so if you could give us a wrap-up in five seconds, that would be great.
All right, that's it, I just wanted to say thanks for your time. And, yeah, I will keep my eye on this, if there's anything else that you need from me, input-wise, Val, give me a call.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, bye-bye.
Last hand raised is Alexandra Stella.
I, I just want to say, she spoke in the beginning, I don't know if you want her to speak again.
I think she spoke and I think we should be ready to get to the next stage of the public hearing. No additional hand raises, Councilor Nolan.
Oh, we just have Olympia Palazola just raised her hand.
Okay, Olympia Palazola, thank you. If you would introduce yourself and your dress, you have three minutes, three minutes to speak to us.
Hi, it's Olympia Palazola, fifty-seven Western Avenue. I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to say we used our house, we had an apartment and a private room with a bath that we did for probably seven or eight years till all the family had to come back home and raise their families with us. It was the most wonderful time that we had. And it was a great opportunity, we met people from all over the, all over the country, all over the world, it was great. But I will tell you, to start up, it was not a fun thing to do because all of a sudden, and we were in a time when there was only a few bed and breakfasts around. And the arguments within the city were just unbelievable, we were, we thought we were doing something good and like twelve of us got together, formed our own coalition because things got so bad within the city. It all calmed down after a while and everyone went on to do their thing. But hopefully, it's a good thing to do for people that really love Gloucester and who, really, in some respects, a lot of people kind of would to come to Gloucester and stay at the hotels. So it was, it was good and I'm not trying to stop you from what you're trying to do, but in the same respect, I, I listened to all that was said and I thought, oh my goodness, they have so many rules and regulations, I, I, you lost me, you lost me in your presentation, that was, it was quite it wasn't offensive or anything, it was just quite a representation that you had to put through, I guess, and I'm not saying it has to be easier to rent out property or less easier, I mean, we had to have fire inspections, we had the border health come, we had the building inspector come to make sure we were doing the right things. So I, I don't know what you need to have to do it today, but like I said, it was, it was a great time for us, it wasn't bad and hopefully we will have rentals here that are short-term that people love, thank you.
Thank you, Olympia. So the next state, Councilor Nolan, your hand is raised.
I'd like to request that we send this back to committee for further vetting. There are some questions that aren't answered and some things that we'd like to bring up. And I think that it'd be best if we could send it back to committee to vet this.
Is there a second on Councilor Nolan's request to send this back to O N A?
Second.
Councilor O'Neil. Is there a discussion, councilors? Council Gross. Council Gross, you are muted.
We have people here who have asked an awful lot of questions. And if we just send it back without answering those questions, we're not only doing the, the ordinance a disservice, we're doing them a disservice, so I think we need to answer those questions.
Councilor Nolan, do you wish to remove your motion and continue with the public hearing? Just to get the questions answered and then we can decide what the next step is at that point, or do you want to do the vote on this? You are the motion maker.
I believe that we should bring back more questions to be answered at O N A for open, for discussion. We can answer questions tonight, I just don't think that the information we're going to have at this meeting is going to meet the questions that people are asking with a request on local and residential rules and what's going on. and residential rules and what's going on at Cape Anne versus other national articles or things that are happening. I I do believe that most of this is is something that's needed, but I I do think that due diligence um ahead of time to try to find out some more facts based on Gloucester um would give us more truthful knowledge as opposed to just looking at articles that are give a general ideal of what's happening around the country. I think that Gloucester deserves to have it be heard for what, how it represents them and the answers they're looking for. And whether it be at O N A or some other forum, this this definitely needs to be taken up before we go to a public hearing where we may not be able to hear the answers that we're looking for.
So the motion has been made by Councilor Nolan. It was seconded by Councilor O'Neil. Um so we're we're in the discussion before we vote on the motion to return it to O N A. Um Council Worthy, I think your hand was raised first.
You have the floor. Thank you. So I do have questions. Um and I think that there were a lot of really good questions raised today. I uh do agree that Council Gross, when he says that the people who ask questions deserve the answers, but if we can ask those questions at O N A, and I wrote down every question and well, we can watch this video again to make sure we have those. Can we make sure that those questions get answered and included into the next public hearing on this? And my second question to this would be if we send it to committee before we close the uh people in favor and against, will we be allowed to allow, will they be allowed to speak again or other people who would like to speak in favor or against this later?
Um let's con- let's continue with the vote um right now. I'm I'm not sure if I if um so you're looking for answers on this. I would, I would say that um we 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 could collect all of the questions. That's part of the minutes. And my feeling is that we have not closed the public hearing. So the public hearing remains open. Um and um and and I would, I would say that um because the public hearing remains open, if additional people would like to speak when it comes back, that that would be open for them to speak. Um
Thank you. One more question, sorry.
Um, okay.
Uh as Chair of O N A, Councilor Nolan, will you allow discussion from the public at the committee level for those questions that have been asked and answered and and some give and take there as well?
Councilor Nolan.
Hey, um the reason why we brought, I brought this question up before we close the public hearing is to keep the public hearing open. So this would be continued to the next meeting if it does. So go back to O N A. And then at O N A, um we if we bring it back, it'll be open for all discussion for councilors and also for uh the people of the city. Um but that would not only be only for this, this one particular item. Whatever is on the agenda for O N A that night will be open for public discussion and counselor participation during that meeting.
Do I think you mean questions, Councilor Nolan? Not Councilor.
Yes, that would be questions. It won't be deliberation or discussion. It would be questions.
Okay, um thank you. And and I and I would say that if this were to come back after that, um we would not be able to to put this back on the agenda to um until May ninth for continuation because we have a complete booked meeting coming up on the twenty-fifth. So it would have to wait until May ninth. Um so on the motion, okay, we've got a motion. Um any other further discussion on the motion? Um Council Gross.
As I understand it, the data they're looking for will take an R F P to go out to get a company. We don't know who is going to be on the selection committee for this R F P, which um will then um determine what your results are. And you're not, you're not gonna have any of this information in, you know, before O N A next time. I mean, that's just not even remotely possible. So I I don't know where we're headed with this. And I don't think that half these people will be um available to have or, you know, they're here tonight and they've asked many good questions. And I just thought it might be an opportunity, whether we continue it or not, um to give them an opportunity to have their questions answered. But, you know, what they're looking for as far as I know, is a full report um that requires um a considerable amount of time and money that we don't have. The the administration would have to um pony up for the, for the dollars on this. So um it just, there's a lot to consider there if we're, if we're continuing it out, what we're looking for. If we're looking for more data on Gloucester specifically, although Bill Roachford put it beautifully saying, you know, that uh it's really a national issue. It's not just a Gloucester issue. And um in fact, he repeated it twice. I mean, and someone else, I think it was Lucy, who said, you know, the internet has stopped us from being isolationist. And now we're, we're, we're part of the rest of the world. And um and so we, you know, so that, those are just some things you have to consider. If we're gonna do a Gloucester-specific um impact study, then it has to go, you know, it has to be bid. It has to, you know, people have to, the R F P has to be done. It it's, it's not as simple as, you know, just I don't know where we'd get the information. Um none of us are qualified, I don't think, to go out and get it other than the sources that I, which are very the data and analytical companies, which would be used to form, um you know, because you do have to consider the national trends also. But anyway, um that's just, I just wanted to be aware that we'll take more time than just the next meeting. That's all.
Um anyone that has not spoken? Um Council O'Hara.
Thank you. I I believe that this certainly um has raised a lot of eyebrows of our constituents. Uh and I I thank in in fairness to to everyone, every citizen in the city of Gloucester that we owe the greatest detail of evaluation to give a proper answer. And if that requires funding, we need, as a council, we need to address that. We just can't shoot from the hip and create create rules and regulations without knowing as close to exact as we can. So I I am, I'm a firm believer that we need to do far more research. I I applaud Council Gross for bringing this forward. Um and and I I think that uh the research is is needed to uh realistically answer the questions. Thank you.
Um, anyone else that has not spoken? Um seeing none, uh Councilor Nolan, you have the floor.
Um I I do believe there's a lot more information that we need to obtain. I understand what Tony's trying to say. And I I believe in ninety percent of what he's putting forward. Um we have listened to the people tonight um without an R F P and without other issues and doing studies and and surveys. Uh we still can't answer the questions tonight versus at the next O N A, we may have some time to gather some more facts and find out what's going on and then decide from committee again where this is gonna go. Um so that's why I I I'm not against what Tony's saying. I I I I appreciate it. We need something to happen here. But I I I do think with the amount of outreach that we've listened to tonight and the questions that I'm not able to answer or define any information on on part of it, I I would feel more comfortable sending it back to committee than verifying what's going on and then go from there. Um so this is definitely what I recommend. That's what, that's why, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Um Council Grow.
Um I'm, I'm always willing to uh to support going back to subcommittee if if necessary, if it's been requested. I I don't, I don't have an issue with this going back to to um uh O N A for a further review. I will say, I will note from a lot of the conversation that we've heard tonight amidst the questions, is this sort of seeming impression that we're doing away with Airbnbs and and short-term rentals? And the truth is, is that the vast majority of the season that most of these rentals are are in use of is included in, will will continue. And if if the grandfathering legacy clause continues, most of those units won't be subject to any, any restriction whatsoever. I personally don't agree with that, but but I think that we're, you know, this idea that we have to launch a national, you know, a big integrated Gloucester study. You know, I I I say this again and again with with some trepidation. We are not that different than Cape Cod or Paris or San Francisco or any of these other kind uh communities and cities that have found a detrimental effect to Airbnbs. We're not talking about getting rid of them. We're talking about adding some common sense regulation to them. And I don't know that we need to do a study to say that a business operating in Gloucester needs to have some rules. And I think that the questions can be asked at O N A. There can be a little bit more vigorous discussion there and it brought, be brought back to the uh to the committee as a whole. And we can vote on it without having to go into a a a full-on research analysis because I don't think frankly that that serves us.
All right. So on on the motion, the motion right now is to bring it back to subcommittee. Um Council Memard.
Uh I would agree to send it back to um subcommittee if if only to better uh follow-up on the questions that have been asked this evening. I I agree with what, most of what Council Gross Gross has done and what Council Grow just said. Uh in my, in Ward One, uh there are a lot of long-term family seasonal rentals. And as people have described, whether they're on Briar Neck or on Good Harbor Beach, uh the, these are family legacy traditions and it's part of the uh equation for what makes it work um and allows the family to maintain their foothold and enjoying a tradition uh for the family in Gloucester and at our beaches. Uh I don't think that we're gonna um do more uh uh R F P for research, but I I do think we have the opportunity to reach out to our own database, which is readily available to us and would like to participate in our information gathering process. And that includes the Airbnb and V N, the V M B, the uh and our our friends at they uh Atlantic Vacation Homes. We have a lot of very qualified resources to make a contribution towards our understanding of how this works and how it could work better. I I I agree with Councilor Gross's intention here. And I agree that as Councilor uh Grow has just said, th- this isn't gonna break this basket. It's a part of the economy. This is just gonna try and assure that there's this quality standard that we're all comfortable with and proud to carry on.
So um so I'm the last to speak on this. So I'm gonna support the motion to return this to O N A. However, I just want, I want to say one thing, and I don't know if I could convince you otherwise. Um I would not mind spending one minute each for each of us to ask a question or two to either um our attorney Suzanne Egan or Jill Cahill, whether it be on matters such as enforcement or why this um um you know, a little bit more about s- some of the, the issues that are easily answered um before then going back to O N A. Would anyone um be willing to do that? Or do you just want to end this part of the, not close it, but end the 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 discussion right now? Would anybody object to what I just said? Councilor Nolan, you have the floor.
Um I think that it might be better if we reached out to Jill or Suzanne on the side. And as Scott said, we have our, our own constituents and our own people legacies that we have to talk to and get them to participate into the upcoming meeting if if the the motion passes. Um but I I think that the questions to Suzanne, which is fine, anybody who's willing to ask them more to Jill, I I just think that um that's something we could also do after we talk to our our constituents about how they feel and what we need to actually ask.
Okay, um so that's fine. So there is objection with my suggestion. So um so there's a motion to return this to O N A. Um and um it was made by Councilor Nolan. It was seconded by Councilor O'Neil. I think we've um we've had our discussion to do that in that we realize that this won't be coming back here any sooner than May ninth, at which time we would re- continue the public hearing. So I won't close the public hearing. Council Gross and then the, then the um, the vote.
Um I I really don't see the um advantage of sending it back. And I really am leery of um you know, having just the industry speak to us. There's, you know, we also have to have independent people also speak to us. Having just the industry and the people who are benefiting from this speak to us is not going to give us a a well-rounded, we need to have, we need to have representation from everyone. Um not just from one, one particular sector that's benefiting from this. And I'd be happy to withdraw this um because I think if that's the route it's going, certainly we got the conversation started. Um but I'd be happy to withdraw it because I think that thi- this needs a discussion with the administration. And um, you know, I was given a report um by Atlantic Vacation Homes on what an economic impact study is. And I'd just like to share what it talks about local workforce. And it just says, most workers in Big Bear Lake do not live in the city. So that's that constituency that was um not necessarily dealt with. Almost twenty-seven percent of them live greater than fifty miles away. So that's what an impact study is like that's, that's done by industry. I think we need to have more people um involved in this. And uh and so I don't think that we can just do that by asking um people who are currently renting and uh and the Atlantic Vacation Homes or Airbnb or V B R O. Um because they they just, they definitely are, um that's their business model and, you know, God bless them. But I think we need to have other, there's other constituents that we have too that we should, that we should hear from. So I'm I'm willing to withdraw this uh without objection. So it could be brought forward again.
Um so your withdrawal is without prejudice, Council Gross, and we don't need to vote that if, because it's your order. Um councilors, I don't think that there's anything else that we need to um need to discuss if Council Gross has asked to withdraw his motion without prejudice.
Is that without objection too? I mean.
Um well, we we discussed that if it's your order, you can, you can withdraw it without prejudice, without a vote. Um um so I mean, Madam Clerk, am I incorrect with that?
He can ask this to be withdrawn, but you had a motion on the floor to send it back to O N A. So wouldn't you vote on that first? For to send it back and then vote to withdraw?
Okay, um so let's um, let's vote first to go back to O N A and then we'll open up the um conversation to Council Gross. Um this is to bring it back to O N A. Co- um Council Majota.
All right, if Tony withdrew, or why are we? Okay. Uh no, I'll just vote no, I guess, to go back to O N A. Get a withdraw.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthy.
Yes.
Council Nolan, yes. Council Gross.
No.
Council Grow.
Yes.
So um the yeses have it seven in favor to oppose. However, Council Gross has the floor.
Well, I would like to withdraw without president, without prejudice so that this can come forward again. Um and like I said, it's a conversation that needed to be started. We obviously started this conversation. Many questions were asked. Um and uh and there's uh some things to consider. And it'll probably come back again in a very similar form, but it will have more, more data from Gloucester um at that time if the administration is willing to uh to be able, because we don't, w- we don't have any money to be able to fund the study. So um but there has been an offer to uh split the cost. So we'll see what happens.
So without prejudice, I I just want to comment that Council Gross has done a phenomenally um a lot of work on this and it's very much appreciated. And I think we got a really good start with the conversation. And we've learned that there's more opinions out there and more things that we need to research. So um thank you, Council Gross, for your hard work and pulling this together. And um I think we're ready to uh move to the next order of business. Um however, Madam Clerk would like to say something.
I would suggest that you vote on the withdrawal without prejudice. Just to clean things up and also to make sure that there is no issue on whether someone feels that we shouldn't have voted or should have voted. So I think to make it cleaner, I would vote to accept the withdrawal without prejudice.
Okay.
We'll move.
So so without prejudice, um Council Memard made the motion, Council Worthy seconded it. So without prejudice, um, Counsel Memard made the motion, Counsel Worthley seconded it. Um. Any discussion?
Just a question, what happens to the vote we just took sending it to O N A? Does that, does this make that null and void now?
I I believe it does, because Counsel Gross has asked to withdraw his motion without prejudice, so that's what we're voting on right now. And we learned earlier in the year that we didn't need to vote that, but we will vote it, so that's okay, because there was a request that we voted, so. Um, there's a motion, a second to accept Counsel Gross's withdrawal without prejudice. Roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes, thank you, Tony.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
With um. With some regret, yes.
So the yeses have it nine in favor, zero opposed. Um, again, Tony, thank you, and um, appreciate your hard work. Um, next order of business, Madam Clerk, um, Counsel Grow, go ahead.
I I would, I would give a a a future child for a three minute break.
Okay, well, I will allow someone to to um, call that, and um, so Counsel Grow has proposed a. Three minute break. Um, is seconded by Counsel O'Neil, and um, let's do a roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes, I think we need to consult with Sarah though about the next child.
Co- Counsel Grow.
Well, I thought that was a fairly safe bet. Um, yes.
Alright, nine, nine in favor, zero opposed. We're going to take a three minute recess, so we'll be back in three minutes, so let's mute ourselves. And um, take a quick break. Okay, Counsel Worthley is back, so we are ready to get to the next order of business. Madam Clerk.
Public hearing twenty twenty-three dash zero thirteen to amend the Gloucester Code of Ordnance's Chapter Ten Waterways Administration regarding Regulation of Moorings. Use of public landing, use of public ramps, increase fees for commercial marinas. Limit use of Solomon Jacobs Landing to recreational boaters, create fixed vendor site for water. Taxi shuttle and increase fees, fines and penalties under Gloucester Code of Ordnance's Chapter One, Chapter Ten and Chapter Eleven.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'd like to open the public hearing. And um, note that there are nine sections of the code. That are before the council for consideration of possible amendments. They are as follows, Section ten dash fifty definitions. Section ten dash fifty-one Regulation of Moorings. Section ten dash fifty-two Use of Public Landings. Section ten dash fifty-three Use of Public Ramp at Don Fudgeon. Section ten dash fifty-four Use of City-Owned Commercial Mariners Reserved, amend. By adding new, uh, I'm sorry, this is the next section. Amend by adding new Section ten dash fifty-five Use of City-owned Commercial Marinas and amend reserved sections. Next, amend by adding new Section ten dash eighty-eight Commercial Pump Out. And then Section one dash fifteen Penalty for Violation of Certain Specified Sections of Code. And Section eleven dash five Mixed Vending Site-Specific Locations Six. And I'd just like to tell members of the public. That if you want to look at the entire ordinance, it begins on page ninety in our packets. From our O N A meeting on March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. So. Ninety in tonight's packet, which can be found in government slash, then you go to city council, then you go to full council documents. Um, and you will see, I'm sorry, it will be standing committee documents, and it will be March sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, so that's where we stand right now, and um. So I'd like to begin by asking our harbor master if you um, are able to present to council. Your um, that you are speaking in favor of this, so um. TJ, you have the floor.
Uh, good evening. Can you guys hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Alright.
Nolan has his hand raised. Hold on.
Uh, I'm sorry, I may have missed it, but I didn't know if you opened the public hearing or not.
I did. I I absolutely hit the gavel and I opened the public hearing. I swear. Okay, thank you for for making sure that I did. Um, TJ, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm here um, tonight on behalf of uh, the Harbor Master Department and the Waterways Board. Uh, everything you guys have in front of you tonight um, that you've reviewed, of cour- I am in favor of. Um, it's been. A tremendous amount of work over the last probably six months. Uh, all of these ordinance changes and fee recommendations have been. Uh, vetted between the Waterways Board and the subcommittees, some back and forth multiple times before it finally um. Went through legal and to O N A, and now in front of all of you. Uh, we've had a positive and rec- positive recommendations from all committees so far that have looked at this. Um, there's a lot here, but it's been, you know, a long time coming, some of these. Um, there are some fees uh, and ordinances that were outdated, um, some, some fees and liabilities that were. Have never been um, looked at or increased since inception. Um, as you all know, but for the public uh, general knowledge, the Waterways uh, is on an enterprise fund. It is not funded. Through the general fund. Um, we are a revenue in, uh, expenditures out, um, business, if you will. Um, so we need to, in order to, you know, maintain uh, the legacy of the Waterways Enterprise Fund and continue to do. The great work that the men and women who work for the Waterways and Harbor Masters Office have done, we need to make sure that um. We're, 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 we're paying our bills and we're appropriating money accordingly to maintain. Our our waterfront, our public landings, our equipment, and our um, and our personnel. So um, I gave a pretty full and detailed presentation at O N A on all of these specifically. I'm sure you guys will have some questions pertaining to certain aspects of this tonight, but I am in favor of all that is um, brought before you. Uh, this evening, sorry about that, and um. That's, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it. I'm sure there'll be some uh, other, other uh, people speaking in favor or maybe against tonight, so. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Anyone else like to speak in favor? Um, anyone like to speak in opposition? Hands raised? Anyone in either favor or opposition? Um, I see Bill Muniz. Um, Bill, would you um, come in and um. Introduce yourself in your dress, and you have three minutes to speak to our council.
Hi, thank you. I'm Bill Muniz. Eleven Rona Road, Gloucester, Mass. Been a commercial fisherman and boat owner since nineteen eighty-seven. I uh, would like to oppose the hundred percent raise. On the Saint Peters and the IC four rent. I uh, do realize it has to go up to something, some point, somewhere, but I oppose the hundred percent. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Bill. Um, next is Doug Germain. Doug, would you um. Introduce yourself in your dress, and you have up to three minutes.
Hi, Doug Germain here, fourteen Lindell Avenue, Gloucester. I have the fishing vessel Labor in Vane, it's that I foresee two. And I've only been uh, a tenant there for two years. And to increase the fees there. Seemed unjustifiable. The uh, floats are shaking apart. I have to move my boat in rough weather. And uh, the hoist is probably fifty percent of the time doesn't work. And I just don't see the increase there when the, there's no work being done to maintain the place. I have uh. I'm really opposed to this at this point. Uh, any kind of increase I wouldn't be against, but the, say a hundred percent doubling the dockage fee. I am opposed to. It's the time of the uh, the fisherman's life here, where we're only allowed to fish six months of the year, and now we're going to be increased. In the fees, and it really is, it's going to hurt us some more. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Um, now we have somebody with a long, lots of numbers and. If you could um, introduce yourself and. Your dress, and you have up to three minutes to speak to us.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
My name is Forrest. I'm a captain on the Freaky Tiki. Um.
Could you tell me your last name, Forrest?
My Forrest Turner.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, so we saw that they are limiting. The um, access to Solomon Jacobs Landing to recreational boats only. Uh, that is going to negatively impact our business quite a bit. Um. We do not have another location. We can pick up passengers while still having parking for them. Uh, we have, we have sixty plus passengers a day, often, more often than not from out of town. Coming in to go on our boat. They uh, they immediately go off of the boat looking for food. They they put money back into the economy getting off of our boat. Um. We don't have other options for landing, for picking up passengers right now and still having parking. Um. There, a lot of, there's locations like Cripple Cove, but that has seasonal parking all around it, so we don't have anywhere that people can park there. Saint Peters, we can't get into. If there's wind, uh, the boat has a lot of wind surface, so we would be pushed right into the corner there. We can't get in and out. Reliably. Um. There's only two commercial charters that I know of that use the landing. It's us and.
Steve Douglas.
Steve Douglas. Um. So I don't see uh, why that's having a huge impact and why they would have to limit us uh. So I'm just speaking in opposition to limiting uh, that to recreational boaters only.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chad, we are not in the question part yet, so um, are you, are you, um, is your hand raised to speak in favor? Of um, this? Okay, um. Chad, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just have a question for Captain Forrest.
Oh, okay, so.
What does, hi- his vessel has a, can I ask a question?
You can ask it, but the councils have to ask it when it's the question time, so you can ask the question of what you want us to ask. Go ahead.
Oh, I would like to know what his certificate of inspection has for where he picks up and drops off his passengers.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition? I see four hands raised. Um, Joanne, would you bring the next person in?
They're already in. It's the D D P Z R E one Q one one U seven, so he has to.
That was four. Wasn't that?
No, that wasn't four, no.
Okay, so D D P Z R E, if you could um, tell us your name and address. You have up to three minutes to talk to us.
Are they clinging on?
Um, D D P Z R E one.
He's on mute.
Um, if you could unmute yourself. That would be great. Okay, you're unmuted. You have up to three minutes. Introduce yourself in your dress.
Uh, I guess that that must be me.
If that is, yes, go ahead.
Uh, my name is uh, Phil Cusomano. I live at uh, sixty-seven Bond Street in Gloucester. I'm on the Waterways Board. And uh, also on that subcommittee that did some of the research for this, and uh. I am uh, in favor of these price increases, and even at the the hundred percent increase. That's still well below the next person, the next uh, marina uh, up. Uh, that's charging what they charge. Uh, so, and to do some of the repairs and some of the uh. Updates and some of the uh, fixes that have to happen to some of these marinas. Uh, there, there's no way that that we can do any of that stuff without, without some sort of price increase. And like I said, even at the hundred percent that. This particular marina has to pay. That doesn't come anywhere near what the next person up, the next marina up is paying. Uh, for their boats to be at their marinas. Um. Uh. And they haven't had a price increase in twenty years, over twenty years. So I'm very much in favor of what's going on. We we do, we did an awful lot of research and an awful lot of uh. Uh, going out and and trying to find out in the neighboring communities, uh, what they're paying. Um, and real well within, well below, in fact, what's going on with what what they're paying, and uh. Like I said, I'm well in favor of it. Thank you.
Great, thank, and Phil, would would you just repeat your um, your address? I know you're on.
Sixty-seven Bond Street in Gloucester.
Great, thank you so much. Um, next person, we have three hands raised. Um, Bob Elves, would you introduce yourself, your address, and you have three minutes to address us?
Yes, uh, Bob Elves, fifty-five Perkins Street, um, a member of the Waterways Board. I'm in favor of the increases. Um. We did our homework, uh, just locally. Uh, I mean, we did our homework in terms of all the fee increases. Um, throughout New England. We compared our prices and our fees uh, with other harbors throughout New England, but in regards to I four C two. You know, just to compare apples to apples, um, the state fish prepared charges somewhere close to twelve dollars a foot, roses. Uh, twelve dollars a foot, but the quid pro quo is, you know, they, Frankie expects you to haul there, expects you to fuel there. Expect you to use and buy parts there. Um, Rocky Neck, um, Donnie King over there, it's twelve dollars a foot. Uh, Beacon Marine, I think it's twenty dollars a foot, and as Phil noted. And the last, there's never been a a a fee increase, uh, so we're asking to go from four to eight, but at eight, we're still basically subsidizing. Um. The point about the docks and the ill repair, absolutely, these docks need to be repaired, but we, there's no money. Uh, the crane alone is going to cost somewhere between ten and twenty thousand dollars to repair the crane or to buy a brand new crane. Who's going to pay for that? Do we, do we, do we assess? The fishermen at I four C two? No, um, but. I'm absolutely in favor. I think it's a win-win-win situation. The docks need to be repaired. The the crane needs to be repaired and going from four to eight dollars compared to what everyone else's charges, charges is more than fair. And I think it's a win-win-win. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next, we have Steve Douglas. Steve, welcome, and if you would introduce yourself in your address, you have three minutes. Talk to us. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Steve Douglas, one Daniel Roy Road. I am uh, against um, the recommendations. By the Waterways Board and Harbor Master of uh, limiting the uh, space. Uh, for vessels to pick up and drop off at Solomon Jacobs Town Landing. Um. I just want to state real quickly, uh, what I've gotten written out here. Uh, my father started this uh, harbor touring business back in uh, nineteen sixty-nine from Rocky Neck. That business grew to its infancy to what it is today and more. He connected more modern day transportation for residents and tourists alike to downtown. Gloucester, as you know, is the oldest seaport in America, a designated fishing port. Present day tourism has grown and fishing is a way of life. These industries make the town special. When this discussion of changing up the uses of various precious town landings in our fair port. The harbor master addressed this proposal by me and stated, Steve, I'm going to do my best to save the water shuttle service at Solomon Jacobs Park and our. Uh, landing. I said, okay, a month later, planning with the Waterways Board in their direction for future usage. He approached me again and said, Steve, I'm sorry, the board has decided to restrict usage at the Harvard. Loop facility. I said, okay, I paused, retreated, and then did some research. My discovery found. That the Department of Marine Fisheries funded the uh, facility down there. Uh, by percentages for recreational and transient boaters, but not all of the funding. Um, is limited to that. Uh, there was additional fundings. Um. Uh, excuse me, there. For rec. Funded dockage was for transient and recreational boaters. But there was additional funding for other uses. But there was additional funding for other uses, drop off, pickup, harbor masters' boats, uh, police vessels, now the Waterways Board wants to eliminate any usage by others. The board is proposing to create uh, for the water shuttle, a Harkes permit for the uh, uh, service, and I applaud that, but it's really not the uh, ultimate solution. Um, uh, with others uh, be, uh, being concerned. Um, one of the solutions to this situation, um, is the, a bigger picture. Uh, once this facility is eliminated, uh, by the public, usage is gone forever. If they take it away, it's gone forever. It'll never come back, the ish, I'm sorry.
You have about ten more seconds, cause we.
Okay, so, real quickly, um. The uh, Solomon Jacobs Park is the best navigable, safest, um, and deep water um, uh, town landing that's most appropriate for uh, their uh, all uses of, of uh, mariners in, in Gloucester and from out of town. So I just oppose to uh, the regulations that um, that they're citing for the usage at Solomon Jacobs, thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Jesse Amaro, would you introduce yourself and your address, and you have three minutes to talk to us?
Yeah, hi, my name is Jesse Amaro, I'm at fourteen Leroy's Ave. I did just wanna come out in opposition uh, to the recommendation that the uh, town landing become uh, no commercial use. Uh, I, I don't think it's good for business in Gloucester, I think it could uh, hurt small businesses. Uh, really, you know, they tie up there for very short amounts of time, uh, just picking up and dropping off. Um, I, I, I feel like this issue has been conflated with the issue of uh, the, the increase in um, uh, dock parking, uh, you, you know, and it, it just feels like two separate issues to me, so I don't know if uh, y- y- you know, the, the conflation here is, is caused some issues with me and maybe some other people uh, that these have all kind of been tied together. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Um, final hand is Alana Williamson Doyle. Alana, would you um, introduce yourself and your address, you have three minutes?
Hi, it's Mark Ring from Three Prospect Street on her computer. I've, uh, I've spoken to a few of you, but I just wanna um, follow up with Billy Manese and, and Doug Jermaine, um. I've been a tenant at Saint Peter since nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. And it's in pretty good shape down there, but there hasn't been any repairs done in the, in the time that I've been there. It's a whole different story at I four C two, mostly because of weather and, and neglect, and um, to follow up on the point that the Waterways Board was making there as far as um, what our length is and what it should go up to, we would never, ever. Um, those facilities were put aside so we would not have to compete with these private marinas. It, it's, you said apples and apples, but this is apples and oranges, we were not, we were not ever supposed to be competing with, with private recreational marinas, so. Um, I just took one year, two thousand eighteen, and uh, the rent from the two places, if you extrapolate that out, um, we paid eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars roughly, and we don't know where that money went, but it's money that we paid in rent, and, and um, it's not just our rent, it's the um, the income that we make that goes back into the city, whether it be repairs, fuel, bait, wages. Um, that all has to be factored into the whole equation, so. Um, I can see a raise, but I can't see a hundred percent increase, and um, um, I'd like to see a little more transparency in the whole process, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, and now we have is it Ginger had her hand up? Joanne? You are muted.
It went up and then, oh, she's up again, it went up and down, hold on.
Thank you, Ginger, would you introduce yourself and you state your address, you have three minutes to talk to us, thanks. You are unmuted, so you can speak. Do you have your volume up? Do you have your volume up, Ginger, cause we can't hear you? Um, if you are, um, okay, can you try now? Name and address?
She just took her hand down.
Okay, um, Forrest has a hand up again. Um. I don't know if that is to speak, uh, to allow Ginger to speak, so um, Forrest, you have, um, you've already spoken, but um, is this to allow Ginger to speak?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Ginger, you have the floor.
Sorry about that, I'm Ginger Utea, I live at eighty-six Rocky Neck Avenue, I'm the proud owner of the Freaky Tiki of Gloucester. Last year, we did over ninety trips, twenty people on each trip, pretty much roughly, and we brought in a lot of tourism uh, to Gloucester. The uh, Solomon Jacobs Landing is really the only place we can pick up and draw people off. Uh, the Cripple Cove wouldn't work, the Saint Peters area could not work for my boat. We've really developed a lot of tourism in the city, and we've getting bookings now for repeat people to come back. And I don't understand how I can just kind of let this business die as a result of my not being able to pick people up and drop them off at the Solomon Jacobs Landing, cause there's no other place we can do it. I've made several calls to restaurants, I was willing to, to try to rent more um, boat slips from different places, and I can't get anybody to accommodate the boat, and it would really kill my business. And we brought in a lot of tourism, tourism last year, and we've got a lot of people calling to repeat and come back this year. So I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ginger. Um, I think that, oh, I think that's all for hands, if I'm not mistaken. Um, we currently have forty-one attendees, and I don't see any more hands. Um, so the next part of the public hearing is um, to call for communications, Madam Clark.
Okay, so um, I received one communication from the Chairman of the Waterways Board. Um, Steve LeBlanc, um, he liked me to read this in the record, "Councillors, I support all ordinance changes put forth by the Waterways Board." "I spoke at the last meeting, and as I said, without the rate increase, we will not be able to update and maintain services." "The rate has not been increased for almost thirty years. As for the other ordinance changes, I support it one hundred percent." Steve LeBlanc. And that's the only.
You just um, muted yourself.
Sorry, that's the only communication that I have on file.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Um, next part of the public hearing is questions from the council, so we're gonna start with Councilor Majota. And I'm gonna ask um, Madam Clark, if you would do the timing, we're gonna do two minutes each for questions, and um, just once again, as a reminder, you're only um, you're only charged for the time that you make your question, and you're not charged for the time that there's an answer. So um, Councilor Majota, you're first to ask questions.
Okay, I guess my question is regarding the um, the size of the bow where, with the pair where the, um, the tiki people are talking about, if they're unable to sort of um, use that dock, um, and not anything else, would they just be out of business, so? Um, what are the ramifications of them actually using that dock, like, for daily use, with, how does that affect the dock itself?
Um, TJ, would you like to address that?
Yeah, so, um, it's not just the Freaky Tiki, it's um, the Freaky Tiki, it's water taxis, it's uh, dayboat charter boats, it's day sail boats, it's uh, fifteen to eighteen, uh, you know, user-based commercial entities that are now using this facility. We're only talking about one hundred and eighty feet of dockage here, we're not talking about a two hundred slip marina. We're talking about a small one runway of, of area that is designated, um, inside the designated port area, the only place designated inside our entire DPA where this kind of activity is authorized. The rest of the entire harbor on this side of town is, is designated commercial. Um, so we're talking about a very small entity here, um. There's multiple people using it, if it was just a Freaky Tiki, if it was just a water taxi, if it was just a, a day sail charter boat, that wouldn't be an issue, but it's been completely overrun by people running businesses out of a city facility. Um, I had a hot wash with my, my uh, folks that work for me. Uh, we do have an end of the season meeting every year, the number one thing that they challenged me to remediate, uh, uh, to fix was the usage of Solomon Jacobs uh, dockage. Uh, this facility didn't even exist in uh, prior to twenty sixteen. Um, so it's not like this is something that's been going on for a hundred years and is all of a sudden being kind of stripped. Uh, and again, it was never a huge issue, cause there was only a few uh, commercial users using it. Uh, now that there's, there's numerous users using it to the point where people are coming to our office and discover Gloucester, asking where so-and-so charters is, because they're listing nineteen Harbor Loop as their business address. Um, we even have some mail showing up for charter boats, because how Google does their business stuff and where people are picking up and dropping off, now we have mail coming to the office for private businesses, so. Um, you know, it's, it's, it's an over-usage of the facility, and it's not the intended uses of the facility, and the intended uses of the facility was a grant that was inspired through the Boating Infrastructure Grant that was awarded, and as Mr. Douglas stated earlier, he's correct that the, the facility was funded for transient recreational use. Um, other uses authorized on a small portion of the float, so long as it doesn't interfere with its intended use. The intended use was for transient recreational purposes only, again, this is the only spot in the whole harbor where this can happen. Um, and it's very, very busy with the attendees that use it. Um, and has gained more and more uh, popularity by locals as, as well as transits, I mean, a lot of people that live all over town, this is an access point, it's the only place you can tie up a recreational boat anywhere in Gloucester downtown for uh, an extended period of time and go to enjoy restaurants and, 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 and uh, get drinks and, and shop, or whatever you, you may want to do uh, by tying up in town, so unfortunately, it's not just one business, if it was, we probably wouldn't be sitting here, it's just a plethora of businesses that have overrun it, and it's not being used as an intended use. Not to mention, this is a very small area we're talking about, we're running two uh, commercial, uh, we're running two launch boats out of there this year, we have uh, multiple Harbor Master boats out of there, we have a police boat out of there, we have Maritime Gloucester right next door, running pump-out services, this is all happening on a very small little footprint. So to add just a, a, a tremendous amount of commercial pressure on this facility, trash, public bathrooms, so on and so forth, with, a- again, we're a user-based, uh, we're a user-based program here, and that, that's not what the facility was intended for, so unfortunately, as the manager of this facility and as the Harbor Master, uh, you know, be it as it may, I have to come up with a management scheme for this facility, and um, and, and you know, we have the grant, the grant was applied for and uh, awarded based on its intended use, and that's not what's happening, so, uh, I do wanna clear up one thing about it, since we are on the landing itself, um. A water taxi, water shuttle business, as Steve spoke about earlier, is not, is, is what the administration, the Waterways Board, and myself have come up with as, as the other use, along it does, as it doesn't interfere uh, with intended use, and that's the language you have before you tonight, that a water taxi shuttle business, not Steve Douglas's specific business, um, but a water taxi shuttle business will have the opportunity to bid on an RFP and use the facility. So we are not, um, we are not uh, disallowing that use, in our, in our little bit of leeway that the city actually has, uh, we, we've decided that that's the most beneficial to the most people, so hopefully that clears it up.
Uh, yes, and that is my only question, so um, I don't need the rest of my one minute and fifty-five seconds.
All right, you, thank you, Counselor. Next up for question is Councilor Memard.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up a little bit on Councilor Majota's question and, and uh, what Ginger and Forrest Turner raised, and also what Steve Douglas has talked about. Um. Uh, you know, TJ, I think you're, you're managing a, 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 a a great facility within the limitations that we have, and, and this is part of the price of success for all of us with coping with these kinds of constraints and demands. Um, it's not necessarily within the city's jurisdiction and your bailiwick, but what other alternatives are available for uh, the other vessels, the other commercial enterprises that you're talking about having to turn away to accommodate the uh, the, the uses that you believe are legally um, included in what, what you need to offer there?
So this does not affect um, any other public landings in town, um. Uh, uh, the captain spoke earlier that he can't navigate the boat into certain public landings or other places, don't have parking, so on and so forth, I can't speak to his skills or, or, or the, of the boat, I've never driven it, I just don't know. I do know that there's other boats that use our other landings and have for a long time, much before I got here, um. It's not, we don't have any parking at our office, people are parking on Harbor Loop or parking over at I four C two perhaps, or walking over. Uh, but there, we're not limiting any other, um, we're not limiting, it's, it's already in the ordinance that these um, um, types of activities are authorized at other public landings. Be, believe it or not, Solomon Jacobs actually isn't even listed as a public landing on our public landings list, um. And again, this facility didn't even exist before twenty sixteen, so, uh, I don't, and, and there's also the private entity, I mean, I, I'm sympathetic, I, I, I used to run charters myself, I, I, I understand that, but I also understand that, you know, I don't think people should be solely running businesses out of city infrastructure, uh, that, especially that isn't its intended use. Um, so, uh, we also did get a legal opinion on this, this went before uh, DMF, Marine Fisheries, who was the warder of the grant. Um, they are in conjunction, they uh, believe that this is the right adaptation, that this ordinance, they've reviewed it, our legal department has reviewed it, and again, as an overall manager of the, of the facility, uh, this is the number one thing I was challenged with fixing, because it gets chaotic down there, to the point where on Saturday morning, there's people yelling and screaming and arguing with each other over who's up next to pick up, you know, fifty or sixty passengers at a time, which some are, you know, are, are have a physical disability, some uh, are, are just a little bit older and slower, it, it takes time, and it's, it's a busy area, it's, i- i- it's also was a giant liability standpoint of people coming off of uh, dayboat charter boats after drinking alcohol, after partying for the day, some of these boats are are pickup, drop-off party boats, we had uh, uh, two insurance claims against our um, marine liability policy last year that ended up coming off of um, commercial type charter boats, so there's a lot going on here, this isn't a willy-nilly, I don't wanna, I don't wanna see, or my people don't wanna see anybody using this, uh, but we have to use it for its intended use, and I have to manage it. Again, this is just such a small little area we're talking about, we're not talking about of two hundred slip marina here, so, um. There's, there's private use, I mean, people run charters, there's, there's dozens and dozens of charter boats uh, in town, and they've all managed to stay alive for a long time um, before this facility was there, so people are using private entities, and I think that the private uh, entities will remain, and those businesses will stay alive. Um, I can't answer it much, um, more outside of that scope, so.
That's great. Now, the second question really goes in the other direction, and that's the needs of the commercial fishermen that we've heard from very clearly. Um, I, I guess the part of the equation that I'm not hearing from you is the, the uh, the route to addressing the maintenance and deferred maintenance and poor condition, safety and unreliability of I four C two, and to a certain extent, uh, Saint Peters. And, and, and your commitment within your budget, which you've managed very closely and tightly, to take the resources that these rents are providing to you to address the issues of the two winches and of the condition of the electrical and of the docks themselves. Uh, I four C two does take a beating because of its exposure, um, rather than Saint Peters, which takes much less, it's but the fisherman, you know, if they're being asked to pay substantially more, whether or not they were getting a discount before, what can you promise to them in terms of what you're gonna give them in return, what, what, what what commitment can you make to up, updating the facilities and keeping them maintained?
Um, okay, great questions, uh, I, I'm not gonna disagree with anything any of the commercial guys said tonight, at all. Um, yes, it's a hundred percent increase, uh, yes, it hasn't been increased since pretty much inception. Um, are the facilities in, in bad shape? Yes, uh, maintenance. Are the facilities in in bad shape? Yes, uh, maintenance as far as. We're all, we're a little beyond these, these facilities are almost thirty years old, uh, general life inspections of of docks. Uh, twenty eighteen to twenty ish years, we're well past that. You add a commercial entity onto that, that's. Commercial entity is much more wear and tear than recreational use, of course, dragging traps, bigger boats, less vendors. You know, so on and so forth. Um. They're past their life expectancy uh for sure. We're on a, we are on a, what I, what I uh call a um. A a a fix as you go. If something is fixed and they let us know, we we we. Address it um to the best of our ability. Right now, the winch is down at. Uh, I foresee two. I've probably had a hundred phone calls and emails. I'm doing everything I can to get this thing fixed. Lead times are are ridiculous. I think I got it. Down to six weeks and we've come up with a an alternative. Um, that's gonna be an eighteen thousand dollar repair ish by itself. That's about the rent for the year for that one facility. Um, you add Marino liability policies on that, a good portion of it is our commercial marinas. Um, it doesn't leave a lot left to do a lot of things. Um, as far as like docks and and we're past the 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 repair. We're at the replace stage. St. Peters is currently under a a a uh. I don't call it a feasibility study, but it's really a design and permitting phase to fix the harbor walk, look at the landing. And look at a possible reconfiguration slash replace uh the infrastructure down there. We also have a a major electrical problem down there. Right now, not on the docks, but going from the street to the docks. Uh, that that the early numbers are coming back at twenty five thousand to replace the electrical services that feeds those. Um, there's just not a lot of meat left on the bone here at the end of the day. Uh, but I don't disagree with anything that they're saying. Um, but we we, if something's broke, we'll fix it. If we don't know about it, um. You need to let us know about it. Uh, we walk the docks from time to time. Uh, we have a steward, if you will, that uh uh helps out with maintenance down at I four C two. He's kind of our boots on the ground guy. That that situation was put in place well before I was here. He's a tenant. Um, and he he does a lot of the maintenance for us. We buy the parts, he does the maintenance um on on certain things. But um, they're they're old, they're old facilities. At some point. Uh, will probably be before you guys with either acceptance of a seaport economic grant or some kind of loan order or some kind of combination of both. And we need to have some revenue to pay uh for that in the future. Um, these these, this can's been kicked down the road for a long, long, long time. Um, they're heavily used and heavily exposed areas and uh they're past the life expectancy, but um. That that's that's, you know. In the interim, if something's broke, let us know and I'll do everything I can to fix it. Uh, most of these guys know me. They have my personal cell phone number. A lot of them call me on that uh and discuss these kinds of things, which is totally fine. Um, and if they wanna see something happen, we'll make it happen. Uh, but as far as, you know, docks being shaken apart and. You know, all the holes where the rods go through are all hollowed out over the years. It's just, they're just old. Um, nothing lasts that long, but uh, nothing stays that price either for that long. So I I I get both sides of it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, Council member? Yeah, okay, next up is uh Council Nolan.
Thank you, madam president. TJ, uh, Scott has asked a lot of the questions I had. Uh, Frank started it off uh as well. Um, I'm a little curious to one of the quotes during the um comments of the eight hundred and seventy four thousand dollars a year. You collect in rent from, I believe, there's twenty four slots between the two. Marines.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know what that number was pertaining to. I thought he said twenty eighteen, but I I wanna say he's probably talking about since inception. But I can't speak to that. I just, um. These were only turned over to the to the waterways department about fifteen ish years ago. Before that, they're a part of uh the um. Community development. Before that, they're a part of uh another entity. I'm drawing a blank on right now Gloucester redevelopment. Um, I don't know what the initial agreements or funding were for these thirty years ago. I don't even think they belonged to the city upon inception, but they were transferred later. Um, I just know what it costs and what it will cost in the future to upgrade. Uh, these facilities and get them back to the working order that they should be in. Again, I don't disagree with with anything that they've said as far as the the condition of them, but that's where we're moving for the for the future. So.
Excellent. And then a- again, you guys are an enterprise fund, correct?
Correct.
Alright, so you get to account for your expenses and your maintenance throughout fees. And if you can't cover your expenses and your maintenance on the fees that you currently have in. The only recourse you have is to raise fees on particular items or to not operate that part of the enterprise fund.
Correct, or ask for a subsidy subsidization from the general fund, but. Uh, we try not to do that because this is a user based fee. You know, I don't think it's fair for people that don't own boats or don't own or do anything on the water that live on whatever street to be paying for. Boaters expenses. So I try to do by due diligence as. The harbor master and as a department head and as an overall manager of a budget to try to keep things in line with that budget. I mean, our our costs are. Absolutely through the roof. Uh, uh, everything in the marine industry is two X what it is on the street, period. Did that's just the way it is. It's the way it's always has been. Barrel of chain was eleven hundred dollars for half finish long leak domestic. It's almost twenty three hundred bucks now. I mean, we're getting killed across the board. Uh, you know, salaries for temp and part time personnel. Uh, health insurance costs, that all comes out of the enterprise fund. So um, it's very challenging. It's it's it's. It's almost like a business, but we don't have to be really for profit. We don't have to pay out dividends to CEOs at the end of the year and I'm not getting bonus out. So all this money that we collect goes back into the waterway. Um, or into some kind of asset or some kind of piece of lifesaving equipment or. Uh, dredging or whatever the case may be. So uh, we do like to have some retained earnings at the end of the year to further um. Uh, expand, you know, what what uh the services that we're providing, you know, we have money left over. I come before you folks. I ask you to use it and we put it right back into infrastructure, waterways or maintenance or keep it for a rainy day fund for an emergency. So um, that's kind of how we're operating down here. I don't think a lot of people from the public understand that, but um. It, that's, that's really what we're up against, so.
Excellent. Uh, thank you for that. And uh, there's a lot of tough decisions you guys made. Um, so basically on an enterprise fund, you you the aquatics like a your water bill, which is also enterprise funded. This this cost associated with proper drinking water and water usage and repairs and maintenance and. Installation of new pipes, that cost is is divvied up upon the water users. Um, so as an enterprise fund, you're also user based, like you said. So if people are using this, it shouldn't burden anybody else that's not using the services. And that's where the fee increases come into play is to operate what you're trying to do, correct?
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
Council Nolan, you all set? So next up is Council O'Hara. Any questions?
Thank you, yes. TJ, um, thank you for being here tonight and thank you for your efforts um.
Yes, sir.
City. Um, how long have you been harbor master?
Uh, since going on my sixth season here.
Sure, thank you.
So five, about five years.
Excellent, excellent, excellent. Um, and it is, I I think Mr. Ring had mentioned. I think he was referring to an aggregate amount of eight hundred forty seven thousand. I think extrapolated using two thousand and eighteen dollars. So obviously the city's collected rentals from from the from the um tenants. Um, and and I'm not disagreeing. I'm a business owner, as many of us here on the board are. And we know that costs have just gone through the roof. Labor has gone through the roof. But in in reality. You know, to hit somebody up with a hundred percent. Increase in anything, you know, you show up at the gas pump, you know, it's four dollars, it's four dollars a gallon. The next day it's eight dollars. It's kind of the sticker shock. Um, that's what we as, we as uh counselors here and. I think, I think um. You know, our our constituents who are the customers are concerned about. Dealing with the down at um Harbor Loop. We're talking two months a year, July, August is your busy time. Is that correct? Would you say?
No, I would say uh Memorial Day weekend or Columbus Day weekend. So end of May to mid October is our busy, busy time.
Sure, thank you. Do you, you have a dock master at all during the busy time?
We have a dock master on on the weekends, correct? We do now. Uh, it's gone, so I I initially didn't. Uh, as things progress, then we have to adapt. That's why I'm here tonight. But uh, yes, I have a dock master on now on weekends and holidays, correct?
Sure. And what what does that person do? What is that person's responsibility?
This person's responsibility is for people, uh, he assists with people, you know, uh, it's a first come, first served facility. We don't take reservations. It's temporary tie up four hours, um, ma- maximum tie up. Um, that person uh helps organize. People coming, people going, assist with people tying up, answers questions, uh, shows people the facilities, uh, bathrooms. Answers radio communications and calls from transit voters, stuff like that.
Sure. So would that dock master move boaters along even the, you know, freaky tiki? Captain Douglas's boats to, you know, keep the dock space open?
He tries to, uh, but that's not always necessarily the case. Uh, you know, they have four hour, they have the right to tie up for four hours at a time. Uh, again, it's not, it's not just freaky tiki and 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 Steve Douglas's uh pickup drop off situation. There's headboat charter boats, numerous ones that tie up there and use up the allotted amount of time for their paying customers and go to restaurants. And go sit at the bar at Declan's and. Do other stuff uh that we end up having to chase them down and and get them out of, get them out of there. Tie up boats where they're not supposed to and and so on and so forth. So it's not that simple as moving people along when you're loading. You know, I think Ginger said that they loaded. They do like eleven, I I don't know what her numbers were, but it was a lot of people. To move that many people per day takes a long time.
How many of your own vessels do you?
Can I just interrupt just for a second? I'm sorry, we'll give you back your time. Um, but for those members of the public that are raising their hands. The public part of this public hearing is over, so I just wanted to. Um, let you know that. So continue, Council O'Hara.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, um, TJ, how many vessels does a harbor master dock at Harbor Loop?
Uh, well, there'll be two launches, a work boat, so that's three, two patrol boats, four, five, a pump out boat, six. And a police, uh, Gloucester police boat, seven, seven boats. Yeah, and uh, and uh, uh. The Shellfish Constable's uh skiff, so eight, eight total.
Terrific. Um, obviously they take up valuable dockage space.
Correct.
Is there any other location that you, during the busy time, that you can dock it for? Obviously, open up dockage space also to possibly help other parts of the of the city?
No. Nope, that's our facility. That's where we're at. There is no other spot for us to go. There's. There's nowhere else.
No other public place to that you can tie to.
No, nope, no. Unfortunately, I I wish the city had a lot more usable space, but we just don't. We're all sharing a very small little area down there. Um, so. That's, that's how it operates.
Sure. So at I foresee two, what what is the immediate? Concerns, obviously they get hit with with winds differently than St. Peters.
Yes. Uh, well, there, this is a much broader conversation of what the uh what the overall use is going to be long term at I foresee two. There's seawall issues, there's um, there's, there's harbor walk issues, there's electrical issues that stem to other parts of the city. But right now, the number one concern is the is the crane and Davit and and that's being addressed. We're gonna, we're gonna get this going temporarily, but you all will see me uh in front of you for some routine earnings expenditures at BNF here. Which the Waterways Board has already voted unanimously on to expend to get this uh repair expedited. But we're gonna take it out of our budget now to get the order process going, because I really want to get that back in place for uh the upcoming lobstering season. It's my number one priority there.
Um, Council O'Hara, um, Madam Clerk has given me the signal that you've exceeded your two minutes, so um. We'd like to um continue with um Counselor O'Neil. You're next.
Thank you. Um, TJ, um, I did, wasn't fast enough to write down how many boats you have. At the um harbor masters dock, two launch boats, two police boats. How many harbor master boats?
Uh, so two launch boats. Uh, two harbor master boats, a pump out boat that conducts pump outs for the clean vessel grant.
Yep.
Gloucester police boat. Shelter constable's skiff, one police boat, there's eight boats total. And a work boat.
Right.
It's like a, it's like a twenty foot Carolina skip.
So is that, that's eight boats?
Total, yeah, correct.
So regarding the increase. Um, presently they're paying four dollars a foot, right, and then. Are they mostly forty foot ramps or um floats? I apologize, I'm not a.
No, that's okay. Don't worry about it. Um, we have tw- we have thirties, uh, thirty fives and forty foot slips. Um, it the commercial rate is a little different. You pay for the slip size, not the boat size. So if you have a.
Right, right.
If you're at a th- thirty foot slip and you have a twenty five foot boat, you do pay for the thirty foot slip.
Right.
Length.
Right.
So that's how that works. Okay, good, sorry.
That's okay. So how much does? How many boats are down there? How many? What do I, what do I bring in? What is the revenue?
There's twelve boats in each, there's twelve boats in each marina. Um. We we roughly run a a right around the forty thousand dollar ish mark a year for rent.
Okay, okay, so.
Uh, yeah, yep, about uh right around forty thousand.
Okay, so I I calculated twenty five boats. I came up with forty eight, but, because I don't know.
So, yeah, sure. Well, there's some boats are different size and some slips are different, so.
So.
We're right around forty.
Right, so we're looking to make forty thousand dollars more from the rentals, right? So we're looking to double the forty to make it eighty, right?
Somewhere in the, somewhere in that vicinity.
Yeah, um. Okay, so transient boats could type for four hours, coming to, so. Okay. Hold on, is there a fe- was there a feasibility study down on St. Peters Park?
No, well, currently, right now, there's a design and permitting slash feasibility study that's being started. It's within its very infancy. Uh, the money was earmarked through community development. Um, and 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 the, and um, is being worked with uh. Jeezy, Mike Hale, the DPW director is is the lead on this and I I guess I'd be his co-partner on the job. It's, it's not just the job, it's not just the commercial docks. That's only part of it. It's the harbor walk, it's the parking wa- lot, it's the seawall. It's a beautification of the area. Um, it's the public landing as well, a potential reconfiguration to expand. It's all of it. Uh, that's that started. I I would expect uh and 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 I don't wanna talk to this. The specifics, because I just don't know, but generally speaking, once we go through design and permitting, then uh I would assume that the city would would. Would apply for a seaport economic grant after we have all our ducks in a row and say, this is what we wanna do and here's how it's gonna benefit. Then we would probably apply for seaport economic money and maybe other pools of money that are out there that I'm not aware of through community development. That's kind of how that goes. I would have to say it's probably. Fifteen to eighteen month process.
Okay, and it's it's in its infancy stages, I I.
Yes, very infancy stages. The 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 um, the uh engineering architect uh firm was was just. Um, hired, if you will.
And who is that?
Uh, GZA Environmental and a gentleman by the name of David Smith, who has done a a tremendous amount of work in Gloucester. And really knows uh our needs, our i- in in our area. Um, and he's, he's um, he's done the Magnolia Pier project. He's on the seawall project uh down the boulevard. He's doing the seawall. Project over at uh, in the Blooming Canal right now. He's working in Cape Town Marina's private project. Uh. He's pretty local to Gloucester or pretty, pretty knowledgeable to Gloucesters and a lot of projects. Also did the facility at Solomon's Jacobs. He was our engineer and architect. He was our engineer and architect designer, uh, uh, on that as well. Um, so he's done a lot of work here, so I'm very confident in his ability. Um, and he has institutional knowledge, which is always nice, because he was probably. Around when some of the stuff was first, uh, in inception.
Okay, um. What is the percentage of payroll increases between last year and this year for your department? Do you know that?
Payroll increases?
Yeah, because you've added personnel, correct?
Yeah, we've added some launch operators, uh, and one assistant harbor master, um. They're all part-time, some are seasonal. I, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I'd probably say. Hmm, maybe around ten grand, maybe fifteen. Um, but don't hold me to that number, because I don't, I don't, none of that's been extrapolated out, and this is our first year. I don't know how. You know, the schedules are going to work and stuff like that quite yet.
So, do you know the percentage of that, what that would be of the, your payroll? So it was just a launch?
Intent salary personnel, probably ten percent.
Right. And how many assistant harbor masters are there?
There's eleven. These are, these are part, these are all part-time personnel, though, uh, besides myself and Chad.
Okay.
And some, some true seasonal, yeah.
All right, eleven part-time, okay, and.
So the, the department generally, you know, during the, you know, the full-time personnel are me and Chad. So if you don't, you gotta take us out of that.
All right, yeah, yeah. Um, yes, so, so another question is. Are the employees paid out of the enterprise fund, or is that?
Yes.
Everybody, you and Chad and all the.
Every single thing we do is paid out of the enterprise fund, including the rent of the building that we sit in. And property taxes for that fact, because we don't own the building. It's a triple net lease. We actually pay. Property tax back to the city of Gloucester out of the enterprise fund. So every single thing. Is paid out of the enterprise fund, down to taxes to the city in which we serve.
All persons, all taxes, okay. And everything, all right. Okay, so. Hold on. How long has the hoist been down at, um, I forcing to?
Uh, I would say about a little over a month now, maybe forty-five days.
Oh, okay, I thought it was longer.
No, no, uh, there might have been some, it, you know, it's broken down a couple of times in the last year, but we fixed it. Pretty much right away, uh, availability of parts and an electrician. I mean, we get right on this. Uh, we have a really good electrician that we use and. I call him, the guy shows up like a half an hour later, most of the time. I mean, we're really fortunate with that. Uh, we use a lot of outside contractors and he's a local, local guy, uh, Cranston Electric, can't say enough good stuff about him.
Good. Uh, we're getting the signal from Madam Clerk that you've exceeded your two minutes.
Can I ask one more question?
Um, can we return to you with the second round? So let's, let's continue to share the floor and then we'll get back for a second round. Um, next is, um, Counsel Worthley.
Thank you. Is it two minutes or three minutes for questions this round?
We start two, because we've got a lot going on tonight.
Um, TJ, first of all, I, I'm sure you feel like there's some criticism or you're coming under attack. That's not, I think, anybody's intention here. Uh, not of all the. What's that?
Job to do, counselor.
Right, it's also, it's a very important department and it's a very important industry. So I don't think that there's any reason to be concerned. We're gonna ask, continue to ask questions. Um, my question, couple of them. Um, do you have a ballpark number as to what the real? Cost would be to bring all these landings and, and docks up to speed to be the, the level that you think that. We should and can have, it's just.
So to replace the dockage, um, without, you know, conducting a piling study to see the percentage of the pilings left. Which requires divers and expensive equipment below the mud line, which is the hot area for pilings without getting into all that stuff, but it. To say you'd have to replace half of the pilings per se and all the docks, electrical service gangway for both facilities. Under a bid process with prevailing wages, millions, in the millions.
Okay, and where would that money come from?
Probably a million dollars, I bet, or more.
Where would that money come from if, if we were to do that?
Well, we could, we could apply for, um, some money from Seaport Economic, um, which I, we've been very successful, City of Gloucester. Uh, prior community development director was now our CAO, myself worked on a project together, which is the Harbor Master Building. Um, a- and she was very successful at, at Seaport. Uh, there's been a variety of other Seaport projects that have been very successful in the city. We have. Uh, we usually do pretty well there. We could get a good amount of money from that. Um, there is a match to that. The match would have to come out of the Waterways Enterprise Fund or a loan order that would have to, the debt would have to be serviced by the Waterways Enterprise Fund.
Does the Waterways Enterprise Fund have any outstanding loans right now that you're paying or that the city's paying through the Waterways Board?
Uh, none that have taken effect yet. We had at one for a new patrol boat, but that was in the interim. I received a, um. A grant from Homeland Security that paid for seventy-five percent of that, and then we repurposed some of that loan order money to buy a new launch. Um, and you guys all know the story with that, um, so.
So I mean, I, I'm very empathetic to the needs and people feel like the docks are, and the landings aren't. They need, and, and I think, I know you are, um, and you're working with a very limited budget, and I think you manage it really well. Um, but if we were to provide the service that, that people want, we can't do it. Just from the fees that are collected from the Waterways Board. It would have to be loan authorizations, um. The Waterways Board can request administrations request loans, right, that then are serviced through your, your department?
Correct.
Okay. So of the fee increases that you're proposing, what amount of that money would go back to servicing some of these docks?
Yeah, I mean, it's not just that we're, don't, I don't want to get just hung up on this one specific commercial entity piece. There's, there's numerous other public landings. In Gloucester, and a lot of them are very old. And we've done throughout the last five years is try to update and, 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 uh, uh, update and replace. A lot of these, um, these landings and, and, and hoop pile guides and chain that hold them and moorings and. Storm damage, I mean, we've, we've been. We've been battered with storm damage on city infrastructure, which has sucked up a good portion of, of, of money. Um, I was just before budget finance for about tw- about sixteen thousand dollars from storm damages that was written before Christmas. Um, so we're not insured for that kind of stuff. We're insured for liability. City's not insured for that, those kind of things. So it all ends up coming. Uh, right out of our, our department and our budget and, um, you know, we're deal, we're talking about millions and millions of dollars and waterfront. Infrastructure here with not a millions and millions of dollars to service it. So it's a lot of money spread thin. Um, and I gotta pick and choose as the, as the manager of these facilities to, to figure out which one it needs the most work and. And is going to impact the most people, and that's kind of how I do it. We've been picking one public landing a year to address. A couple of years ago was Lanes Cove with the boat ramp and, 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 uh, and, um, and a new docking in, 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 uh, uh, gangway. Uh, connections down at Lanes Cove. This year it was Purple Cove. Uh, this spring will probably be Anasquam. Uh, footbridge, um, so this, it's, it's, it's spread out, not to mention equipment. Uh, very, very expensive. Uh, outboards are very, very expensive. Once you start, once you look at our budget and look at personnel. And, 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 and pay and health insurances and all that stuff. There's not a lot of money left to service millions of dollars in infrastructure that just, that just isn't, so.
That's helpful. Um, we talked about the Gloucester redevelopment authority and the, um, different stage of the community development owned some of this property. Why would you suggest prior councils and prior waterways boards haven't done incremental increases over the years? To, um, help sustain these, these, uh, the infrastructure here?
Well, you know, I, I, I think some, some of, I can't speak to what pri- prior people did, administrations, waterways, boards, councils. Um, I, I, incremental increases is always the way to go. I'm the last, I hate increases. I just got my tax bill. I didn't like that increase either, or my water in store bill or any of the other bills that I get that have all been increased substantially over the last year, never mind. Fifteen, um. But, you know, incremental increases are war, you know, sh- should it happen? I think that the commercial entity of this is always. Uh, a politically hot topic, of course. Uh, we are fishing community, it's our roots, I understand it. And again, I, I don't disagree with. Really anything that these guys have said so far. A hundred percent increase is a sticker shock for sure. Um, these are fees are proposed, embedded through the Waterways Board and brought forth, and you get to see my face to present them. So, um, as the Waterways Board doesn't present, the department head does, but, um. You know, I, I'm not really sure why there hasn't been, but I don't think anything should go twenty-five or thirty years without being increased, and then you have a sticker shock. So I, I, I agree with that. But I don't know why it hasn't been done, but I know that I, I've taken a hard look at the stuff. When I started this job in twenty sixteen, I had a deficit. Because they had just signed a rental, uh, agreement for fifty years at our current facility. Um, so we battled out of that and kind of able to have a surplus and increase. Uh, but that's not just from fee increases, that's from user increases and transient moorings and bringing in tourism and a whole bunch of other stuff, so.
It's too bad we couldn't have a way to have a lesser sticker shock and then have an incremental automatic, you know. Cost of living adjustment kind of increase. I know that can't happen through this process. Um, but, you know, the challenge is we want to be supportive of the fishing industry and don't want to hit them with more fees. We also want to provide the infrastructure that costs a lot more money, and just like the city, enterprise funds are run like a business, they are too. And so it's, it's not an easy, um, where does money going to come from? I think that Seaport Bond Bill and Seaport Bond should be the right place, okay?
Continue with questions, because this, we have just.
Sorry, one more question now, um, I, I believe we. The Budget and Finance Committee and the Council voted for some, uh, new hoist at St. Peters, and that was probably about six, eight months ago. Or I think it was a, maybe it was a study.
Some discussion about it, but, uh, uh, we're, we're in the replacement phase now, so you'll, you'll, you're on the Budget Finance Committee, so you'll see me at the next. Uh, next Budget Finance Committee, but we're gonna take care of this in-house now and try to backfill, because. We just, we can't wait. The lead times on this stuff is so long. I mean, I got people telling me eight months to get one of these things, so. Uh, I think I got it down to six to eight weeks, um, and we're gonna try to pull the trigger on that as soon as possible. It is over a ten thousand dollar threshold, so I have to have some conversations about bidding and what is an emergency repair and so on and so forth. It's, it's not as. It's not such an easy process as it is where a private entity and say it's broke, here's the money, go fix it. It just doesn't work like that municipal government, so.
Thanks. One more question on, when I voted for this at the Order Administration Committee, I was sitting in for a counselor, um. I thought we had addressed the provision for a taxi, water service, um, function, so can you just speak to that?
Yes, we did, um, yeah, I, I think Mr. Douglas spoke about that earlier, um. What he is saying, uh, pert- does pertain to his business, um, in a what, we did, we do have a provision through an RFP process. To heavy water taxi continue to use that, uh, area at my designation, uh, through an RFP and a, and a hawkers, in, in vendors. Uh, you know, pet, uh, ordinance that pertains to Solomon Jacobs. So, uh, a water taxi business will be able to. Continue to operate and thrive out of that current location.
Okay, if we have a second round of questions, I may have some more, but thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, next is Counsel Gross.
TJ, was there any damage last year when the, uh, commercial boats were, were using the facility? Damage to the docks?
Yes.
Significant and significant, um.
Uh, pretty significant, pretty significant, in the thousands of dollars, uh, over five thousand dollars.
And, I mean, I think it's, I don't know if everybody's grasping the point that, that. This is a, has an intended use of recreational transient boats that can't be interfered with. And if it does start getting interfered with and, you know, if a lawyer from, you know, uh. Who knows, a state representative comes in and says, hey, you know, I couldn't do this stuff. What are you doing? Go yank the money back. Um, you know, there is that, there is that, uh, exposure that we have. Um, I just want to make sure people understand that.
It can jeopardize future funding as well.
Yes, it can. Yeah, um. Now, if you did, you know, the question came up about dockage elsewhere. Now, if you moved a boat from. Um, Solomon Jacobs, which on your side is completely dedicated to law enforcement, which is allowed in DPA. So it's, it's a completely different use. No grant money was used, uh, as Seaport Bond money, but no other grant, no big grant money was used for that. So the, the, your, 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 the, the enforcement boats, yours, the shellfish and the, um, the police boats. Are not taking away any of the dockage space that's available anywhere else. But if you do, did relocate at another one of the town landings, you'd just be taking up space for boats there too.
Correct. It's robbing Peter to pay Paul situation.
Yeah, and, and the hoist is at I four C two. There is no hoist at St. Peters that.
Correct.
Became, and, and if it does get reconfigured, um, there may be space that a hoist could go in, but. You're so limited in there trying to fit in a public landing along with the commercial. That it's really hard to find a space that's attached to, um, land that that thing could be based on.
Correct.
So it's, it i- it is difficult and, um. You know, there's got to be, um, a certain amount of, when you do spend the money, um, on the facility. Then, then what happens to the, to the fee structure? So, you know, that's got to be a consideration. You did, you did clear up that it was about twenty thousand dollars per, um, marina.
Correct.
So that was, that was good, and that's, um. You know, really all, that's about all I got. Thanks.
Um, thank you. Um, and next is, um, Counsel Grow.
I love almost going last, um, very quickly, um. I want to talk about the, uh, the dedicated vendor space. Can you run through where that's going to be? Will that space be dedicated and open for? The winner of that particular, um, uh, RP and could, if that's the case. Could more than one entity share that with the other? Could they, could they do a joint proposal if the space is going to be open, uh, for use?
So because the space is all one long length of dock, um. They, the, the long and the short is no, and in, in the, there's, there's, um, wording that. It, it could, the, the exact area could change day to day. For instance, if you have a sixty foot boat come in. To the dock and tie up as intended use, he may be taking up that one particular space that a twenty foot boat wouldn't, so. It guarantees a spot, but it doesn't guarantee an exact spot. And there's wording in the language, uh, uh, there's wording in the ordinance that, uh, delineates it down to the harbor master, which I will then. You know, give to the dock master and so on and so forth under the authority of the ordinance. Um, it just guarantees you a spot, doesn't guarantee you a specific spot, because there's too much variable in, in locking down one specific area.
And does that mean that, that the, anytime the water taxi pulls up, they have a dedicated spot? I mean, not a dedicated spot, but a spot they can guarantee themselves a spot to pull in?
Correct.
So if you end up having more recreational boats, then there is space. What happens to the agreement with water taxi?
Well, we have a dedicated area for the launch to pick up and drop off, so that would be shared. With the water taxi in conjunction, because those boats are coming and going all the time in that one area. That's what's intended to have happened in that specific situation.
All right, I'm just wondering if there's a way to kind of find a way to cooperate amongst the various.
I wish, I really wish there was, and this has been, this has been round robin of, of a lot of times by, by my whole staff. There really isn't, uh, oh, there really is no great answer to that, uh, counselor. It's just, we're trying to do the best we can with the very limited area we have. Um, and I did, I just want to point out one other quick thing here. The only reason why we can have this area. Um, for transient or recreational tie up for locals or not locals, uh, and this vicinity is because we take up the majority. Of the requirement of the designated port area. That's why CZM granted us the authority to be able to have this one area for the specific entity. Again, it's the only entity, our only area in our whole, uh, uh, harbor that you're allowed to do this, so.
I, I get it. Okay, um, you want to get over to the docking fees, because I, I, we keep getting the, the number a hundred percent increase, which of course always sounds. Pretty awful, but what we're talking about is four dollars to eight dollars, and that's basically. If, if I'm right, you've got thirty foot, thirty-five foot and forty foot dock spaces slips, correct? So you're talking.
Correct.
One twenty, one forty, one sixty a month currently?
Correct.
And we're talking about raising those to two forty, two eighty and three twenty roughly. As a, as a, as a monthly rental expense. Who, who's determining who gets a slip there? What's, what's the turnover?
So, so, um. The slips are on a waitlist, just like a mooring, but there's a commercial waitlist, and when one. And when one is given up, it goes to the next person on the list so long as their boat will fit. If you have a forty-foot boat and I offer you a twenty-foot spot, obviously that's not going to work, so we'll go to the next person on the list.
And you can have that slip as long as you own the boat and maintain.
You can have that slip as long as you uh conform to the requirements in the lease, which is you have to have um a marino liability. Uh, you have to have your own insurance as well. We have liability insurance. You have to have the city as additionally insured. You have to show proof of landings, um, which shows that you're actually fishing. So you're not just like housing a boat down there and not using it for its intended use, which is commercial fishermen. So you have to show proof of landing, some kind of commercial landings. Um, and um, you have to, you know, maintain, you have to follow the rules. You can't. Uh, there's provisions in there. If you violate state or federal law, could be grounds for termination. Like if you're getting all these fisheries infractions because you're keeping short lobsters, city is not going to allow you to tie up at their facility. So there's provisions for that as well. So as long as you keep those rules, uh, and there is a right of survivorship, we have people that uh pass, pass it down to their kids. You know, we have one family down there that's been there since inception and now their kid's there and he'll probably be there another twenty years. So they don't get turned over too, too often.
So, so if you.
Guys retire or die usually.
Yeah, so if you have a slip essentially and you, you do that and you maintain that for generations, the next guy that wants to, to bring his boat and, and work the harbor. Has to go to another commercial spot, so he's, he's subject to nine to twelve dollars that, that has been referenced. So there's a, there is a sense that there's already a kind of a subsidate subsidizing of the docking space that you get. If you're lucky enough to get a city-owned slot as opposed to a, a commercial spot.
Correct.
And are these almost all lobster boats down there?
Uh, yeah, there's majority of them are lobster boats. There are some charter headboat guys um that do commercially like haddock fish. Like uh Billy Menez who spoke earlier on here, he commercially tuna fishes. Uh, he had a, a, um, and I know he commercially haddock fishes and runs charters as well. Uh, but he, he falls into the categories that they're not all lobster boats. Um, I would say probably seventy-five percent of them are. Um, and there's some guys that, that don't fish too, too much anymore, but they do continue to, to do some fishing uh commercially. So um, it's a kind of a variety. Um, both facilities are uniquely different. Um, I foresee two does have a davit, does have parking, dedicated parking for the slip individuals and trap storage. Um, and, and Saint Peters um doesn't have a davit or dedicated parking, but does have trap storage. Um, both have their challenges, you know, Saint Peters is more protected and I for T C two is more exposed. If you added it all up, they're probably pretty similar for dollar for dollar. Um, but that's, that's kind of how that works.
I'm probably close to running out of time, but do, do you have a sense, and I, I won't blame you if you don't, that what a, what a boat might bring in in terms of income in a year?
I, 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 I have no idea. It depends. I'm, I mean speculatively, I know some years lobster prices are ten bucks a pound. Sometimes they could barely give away. The market is in, if, you know, they've been on, you know. Depends on the fishery. Those guys have kind of been under attack from whales to wind. I totally get that, you know. Lobstering's been a political hot pot nationwide. Some years they do really good, some years they don't. I have no idea what they bring in overall. Um, I, I guess it probably depends on each individual digital, individual fisherman. I know some guys that make hundreds of thousands a year and I know some guys that make thousands a year. It depends on how hard you fish and how many traps and so on and so forth. So I'm not even going to pretend to put a number on it.
Sure, fair enough, fair enough. But and given, given everything, e- e- everything in the cost of fishing and the cost of pots and, and all that. The docking space seems to me one of the relatively smallest expenses that might be carried by.
I hate to interrupt you, but you're starting to.
I understand. I'm finishing the sentence so we can, we can move on. Uh, so that was the, the question is, is that, that seems to be about the smallest expense that one might expense. Uh, uh, in, in that, in that kind of a business, yeah?
I would, I don't want to pretend like I, I know uh the cost of commercially fish because I, I really don't. I, I have speculation on what things cost, but I don't want to put hard numbers on it, so.
Sure.
Are we good? Okay, I'm last for question. My question I think is pretty simple. Um. TJ, are you prepared if these rates get changed tonight? For the delay of thirty-one days in terms of your mailings to all of your clients and customers. Of all these different. Parts of this ordinance.
I mean, of course, for the, for the rest of them, we, we wish to set was sooner because we're in, upon the season. We'll affect budgeting. For all intents and purposes for next year, because as all of you know, but for the public, we're in our budget cycle. The city's fiscal year is July one. Um, but there's a lot of things hanging in the whim here. There's signage, there's all kinds of stuff that's kind of been put on hold. Um, it's not ideal, but we'll work through it, of course. Um, you know, we're already selling boat ramp stickers for the current price. And if it goes up a little bit, then when it takes effect, we'll change all the signing and be ready to go, so. Um, not ideal, but. We'll get it done.
Okay, I just wanted to check. Um, that includes my questions. Um, councils, we have a lot going on um tonight. We still have four other public hearings, including one really important one on water betterments. So um, do you, do you really need to ask an additional question? Um, then please raise your hand and I'll ask that you ask it in about twenty seconds. And we, we really need to keep, keep moving forward. So any, any hands of someone that might need to ask an additional question? Um, Council O'Neil and Council O'Hara. Council O'Neil, you raised your hand first, so go ahead.
I, I have more than one question, so um. I just want to make sure that I understand. I have a couple of questions because I'm not a boater, I'm not a fisherman. I, I don't do that, so. Brizzy and boats are at Solomon Jacobs, right? And commercial boats are at Saint Peters and I foresee two, right? Do I have that right?
Two separate entities. One's temporary tie-up for anyone who wants to use it at Solomon Jacobs. Saint Peters and I foresee two are contract year-to-year tenant slips that only that one person uses.
Okay, so commercial boats can actually tie up at Solomon Jacobs?
No, so the, the amendment tonight is to keep commercial traffic off of Solomon Jacobs. Of, of less otherwise prescribed by the RFP process.
Um, the assistant harbor masters, you have eleven. Do you know what the total cost of those harbor masters are? Those assistants, like?
Yeah, it's um, uh, it's be, it, it differs. Uh, the launch operator, so I have a temp salaries budget. That's launch operators, dock masters, you know, that uh, any other services rendered out of there. At one point it was janitors, uh, that fluctuates between, you know, eighty and a hundred, hundred, ten thousand dollars a year. Um, and it's not just summertime work. Like I had a half a dozen people working today. I mean. There's all the moorings go in, all the no weight buoys, all the boat maintenance, all the painting, all the, everything gets done uh through these guys. Um, repairs, the public landing, so on and so forth. I mean, we, we do a lot of stuff in-house. We don't contract a lot out if we can help it.
And I still have more questions.
I, I hate to put a time limit on this, but we, we have so much business to do right now. And it would be great if you could ask one more question, and we do need to keep this hearing moving forward. We have a lot to do tonight.
Okay, um, I'm looking at section ten fifty-five, still there in, on the increases. Um, ten fifty-five H, the annual fee for the seasonal type of dinghies. Tenders vessels less than twelve feet, um. At designated areas shall be four hundred dollars. That's up from a hundred, right, per year?
Correct. Correct.
And so. That would be Lobster Cove, Cripple Cove, Magnolia Pier. Is that correct?
There's currently no tenders on Magnolia Pier. Uh, that whole thing's still kind of TBD, but that's Cripple Cove and Lobster Cove.
Correct. And, and that's it though, anymore?
That's all we have.
Okay.
There's no effect, there's no uh, a- effect for um kayaks, paddleboards or canoes or, or, or small tenders. Like in Magnolia. Magnolia do, pier doesn't have actual dinghies on it, but the, there is a, a allowable storage of kayaks, small tenders. Uh, and canoes on land, those, those fees are not affected. This is in-water tie-up only.
Right, okay. I think that's.
Okay, anyone else have one last question, short question before we move on? Council O'Hara.
Thank you. Um, TJ, you mentioned Lanes Cove and Magnolia. Can you move a vessel to either one during the prime season to relieve pressure on harbor loop?
So we're not taking up any area that's affected in this ordinance change. As Council Gross said before, all the slips that are on the left side of the runway that's in question here for use. Is its actual use and how it was paid for. And the only reason why we can use part B is because we have boats at part A. We are satisfying the DPA requirement um for um, as enforcement of the DPA. To allow transient recreational tie-ups. Even if I move boats, doesn't alleviate anything on section B. The boats have to be there so section B can happen, if that makes sense. Um, so even by moving boats around, which I'm not moving above Lanes Cove. Uh, because there's no word, there's only a small public landing to tie up there. They would be pretty mad if I block that off with a patrol boat, not to mention it's on the other side of town, so it's, it's just not feasible.
Thank you.
Okay, Council, um, I'd like to close the public hearing. And call for the committee report, Council Nolan. You're muted, Counselor.
On a motion by Council Gross, seconded by Council Worthley. The O and A committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, recommend to the city council amend GCO. Chapter ten, Waterways Administration, Section one dash fifteen. Penalty for violating certain specified sections of code. Section eleven five, fixed vending site-specific location, six. By add new subsection D in the memorandum regarding Dunn Fudgeon's fee increase. Proposal as requested and described in the document attached to the Harbor Masters. February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three memorandum. With the corrections to section ten fifty-two H as noted in section ten fifty-four F. To read fifty feet or less in length.
Madam President.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Um, I wish to modify the committee report as follows.
Continue.
Amend section ten dash fifty definitions by inserting CAO. C O I, sorry. Um, shall mean U S Coast Guard Certificate of Inspection. Disabled veteran shall mean the same as defined in Mass General Law, chapter thirty-one, section one. Insurance shall, shall mean vessel hull and personal general liability insurance policy. Schedule of fees means any fee schedule or list of fees as periodically adopted by the City of Gloucester. On file with the city clerk's office. Transient means travel to single facility for a day use or staying on a mooring for up to fourteen days. Vendor in this section shall mean person or persons. Who for themselves or for another person, firm, corporation or corporation. Provides a service for a fee of transporting passengers on a specified route. With predetermined stops. Water taxi shuttles shall mean a passenger vessel under fifty feet overall. If, if fifty feet length overall, providing point-to-point service on a specified route. For a fee. Amend section ten dash fifty-one, regulation of mooring. By deleting fifty dollars and inserting sixty dollars and deleting a hundred and fifty dollars and inserting three hundred and fifty dollars. Amend section five dash, uh, ten dash fifty-two. Use of public landings, subsection E by inserting. No person shall use or consume alcoholic beverages or cannabis products on any public landing. Amend subsection H by inserting, storage of kayaks and paddleboards as de- in, as designated areas of public landings. Shall be one hundred dollars. Inserting new subsection I, Solomon Jacobs Landing will have a five dollar per hour user fee. Amending section ten dash fifty-three. Use of public ramp at Dunn Fudgeon, subsection A. One, by deleting eight dollars and inserting ten dollars in subsection. A two, by deleting seventy-five dollars and inserting a hundred dollars. Amend section ten dash fifty-four. Use of city-owned commercial marinas reserved by deleting and adding new section ten fifty-four. Use of boating infrastructure grant-funded transient floats at Solomon Jacobs Landing. Um, in parentheses, floats. A, general use, the floats available for the following uses and purposes and under the uh prescribed conditions. One, temporary tie-up of ten, uh, transient recreational vessels. Two, access for transient recreational vessel users to shore facilities. Three, scheduled hours of operation. Four, reasonable and equitable fees for use may be imposed. B, regulations, the Gloucester Waterways Board may promulgate regulations for the use. And maintenance of the floats, including fees. C, special uses, certain uses that do not negatively impact the intended purpose. Of the maintain, uh, of maintaining public access for transient recreational vehicles. May be authorized following approval of the Gloucester Harbor Master, Gloucester Waterways Board. And if need be, the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries. D, permitted uses, the Waterways Board Harbor Master and/or Mass Division of Marine Fisheries. May permit uses that do not interfere with the intended recreational vessel purposes and provide significant public benefit. The permitee shall adhere to the rules and regulations in Gloucester Code of Ordinance, section ten, um, chapter ten. Section ten fifty-two. Failure to follow any of these rules or regulations could be grounds for um suspension or revocation of permit. Water taxi, um, E, water taxi shuttle. The Harbor Master may, on an annual basis, make available use of the floats to one. Water taxi shuttle vendor at a location designated by the Harbor Master or his designee. The water shuttle, water taxi shuttle vendor shall be chosen through the fixed vendor location process. Set out in chapter eleven, section eleven dash fifty. Um, at segue, I don't know what that is, E T S E Q. Um, the location on the float may vary depending on the uses, use of the floats at the time of pickup. And drop off. Only applicants that meet the following criteria will be considered for the fixed vendor. G, location, fifty feet or less in length overall, have a current U S Coast Guard Certificate of Inspection. Are operated by a U S Coast Guard licensed operator. And have evidence of hull and general liability insurance. Pickup and drop-off location, Harbor Master shall determine the water shuttle, shuttles. Pickup, drop-off location on the floats. Harbor Master or Dock Master may from time to time relocate the pickup, drop-off location within the facility. To reduce interference with the intended purpose of the floats. No entitlement, uh, H, no entitlement. Nothing in this section shall be construed to create a legal entitlement. Any and all licenses shall be issued at the side. At the sole discretion of the relevant licensing authority. Use of the floats is a privilege that may be rescinded by the Harbor Master or his designee. The decision of the Harbor Master shall be final. Amend by adding new section ten dash fifty-five. Use of city-owned commercial marinas, subsection A. Commercial marinas known as Saint Peters Commercial Marina and Harbor Cove Commercial Marina. Shall be charged a fee up to eight dollars per foot. Vessels that birth at these locations will be charged according to the slip size, not the actual size of the vessel. Vessels that berth at these locations will be charged according to the slip size, not the actual size of the vessel. Tenant shall sign a one-year lease agreement on or before June first of each year. And strictly adhere to the provisions in the lease. Failure to follow the provisions in the lease will be grounds for termination. Amend reserved sections by striking out ten fifty-five and inserting sections ten fifty-six through. Ten dash seventy-nine reserved. Amend by adding new section ten eighty-eight, commercial pump-out subsection A. Commercial vessels or any other vessels not covered under the Clean Vessel Act. Will be charged one dollar per gallon for pump-out services. Amend section one dash fifteen penalties for violation of certain specified sections of code. By deleting one hundred dollars and inserting one hundred dash two hundred dollars. Amend section eleven dash five, fixed vending. Site-specific location six by inserting subsection Solomon Jacob Landing. Floats in an area to be designated by the Harbor Master shall be included as a fixed vending specified site. Solely for the operation of a water taxi shuttle, which meets the requirements. As outlined in chapter ten, section ten dash fifty-four Waterways of the Code of Ordinances. Only available to applicants which meet those requirements, and I so move.
Second. The committee report has been moved and seconded. In order to more easily discuss each section being amended. I move to divide the question into nine parts as follows. Section ten dash fifty definitions, section ten dash fifty-one, regulation of mooring. Section ten dash fifty-two, use of public landing. Section ten dash fifty-three, use of public ramp at Don- Dunn-Fudgeon. Section ten dash fifty-four, use of city-owned commercial marinas reserved. Amend by adding new section ten dash fifty-four, fifty-five, excuse me, use of city-owned commercial marinas and amend reserve sections. Amend by adding new section ten dash eighty-eight, commercial pump-out. Section one dash fifteen, penalty for violation of certain specified sections of code. Section eleven dash five, fixed vending site-specific location six, and I so move.
Second.
Um, Gilman, um, moved it and, um, Worthley seconded it. Is there a discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I roll up, Council O'Neil.
Thank you. Does that mean we are going to vote on each section individually?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, um, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman. Yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yep.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. So, councilors, now we are ready to, um, to go through each of the proposed amendments, um. Madam Clerk, if you could, um, put those up on the screen, that would be great, and, um, we'll start with. Section ten dash fifty definitions. Awesome. Um, Council Nolan, being Chair of O and A, do you wanna, do you wanna read this, um, each one?
Yep, not a problem at all. We'll start with one, amend by adding the following definitions. Um, for you at home, Tony has read most of this already. We're just gonna recap it and go through the, the changes to make it. Uh, more upfront. Uh, in construing the provisions of this article, the following words shall have the meanings given below unless the contrary. Intention clearly applies. City Waterways means all tidal waters within the boundaries of the city. Its harbors, bays, and covers, coves. And the whole of the Anisquam River and its outlets, coves and bays. In red, COI shall mean United States Coast Guard Certificate of Inspection. Disabled veteran shall mean the same as defined in MGL C thirty-one, section one. Harbor Master means a city official duly appointed in conformance with section ten dash twenty. In red, insurance shall mean vessel hull and personal general liability insurance policy. Morin means a relative permanent arrangement of an anchor chain in a floating buoy. To which a vessel may be tied for extended periods. Permittee means the person to whom a permit has been granted for landing or mooring. Public landing means any area including uplands, ramps, floats, wharfs, piers, parking areas. And water that has been set aside by the city for landing of vessels to discharge or take on passenger. Or supplies, or for the launching of vessels if a public access in recreation is set forth in MGL. Chapter eighty-eight, section fourteen. Public waters means all waters beyond the mean low watermark. Recreational boater means the individual who owns and or operates a recreational vessel. Recreational vessel means a vessel used for personal, non-commercial enjoyment, recreation, or sport. In red. Schedule of fees means any fee scheduled or list of fees as periodically adopted by the city of Gloucester. And filed with the city clerk's office. Transit means travel to a single facility for day use or staying on a moor for up to fourteen days. Vendors in this section shall mean person who for themselves or for another person. Firm or corporation provides a service for a fee. Or transporting passengers on a specified route with a predetermined stops. Water taxi shuttle shall mean a passenger vessel under fifty feet in length. Overall, providing point-to-point service on a specified route for a fee. Vessel includes ships, boats, steamers, barges, or any other type of watercraft powered or under seal or tow. As well as such floating structures as buoys and rafts. Vessel length for the purpose of determining the amount of the mooring fee means the overall LOA, length of vessel. Uh, exclusive of bow spirits, main boom. And boomkins for the purpose of mooring assignments. The term vessel length includes bow spirits, main boom, and boomkins. Two.
Uh, I think you.
All right, that's it, yeah.
To move it, go ahead.
Yeah. And I so move.
Second.
Council Nolan has moved the motion and Council O'Hara seconded it. Um, discussion, councilors. Seeing none, roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil. Council O'Neil, are you there?
You're on mute.
Council O'Neil, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Council Worthley.
Yes, I had my hand raised for questions. I don't know if you can see, but I will be voting yes at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed for section ten dash fifty definitions. Um, next matter, Council Nolan. And, um, I, I would say as long as we can see the, um, the document, we can visualize it. You can just do your adds of the, or deletes of the red document just to save time. So, um, we're now on to amending by deleting and adding section ten dash fifty-one, regulation of mooring. Um, thank you, Council Nolan.
So number two, amend by deleting and adding. Section ten fifty-one, regulation of mooring. So with that being said, we're gonna jump on through and we're gonna strike fifty and add sixty. Then we're gonna strike one fifty and add three fifty, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motion was made by Council Nolan. It was seconded by, sounded like Counselor O'Hara.
Correct.
Is there a discussion, councilors? I can't see all of your faces because I'm, I'm looking at, um. The screen share, so if anybody has something, um, that they'd like to, um, discuss on this motion or amend. Seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
The yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed on section ten dash fifty-one, regulation of mooring. Next order of business, um, Council Nolan.
Would be number three, um, amend by adding section ten fifty-two. Use of public landings as you see in front of us. And we're gonna go into add, no person shall use or consume alcoholic beverages. Or cannabis products on any public landing. Then we're gonna move into H, uh, storage of kayaks and paddle boards as designated areas of public landings. Shall be a hundred dollars. Um. Should we have read the fees, the annual fee for the four hundred as well as a separate one?
I think you should because that's new, so, um, if you were just.
I am gonna, I am gonna read. Uh, fees, the annual fee of a seasonal tie-up of dinghies, tenders, and other auxiliary vessels less than twelve feet in length shall be. Four hundred dollars. Storage of kayaks, paddle boards, designated area of public landings shall be one hundred. I, Solomon Jacobs Landing will have a five dollar per hour user fee, and I so move.
Second.
Um, motion made was by Council Nolan, and I heard someone other than Council Worthley, um, who, who was it?
Council O'Hara.
Okay. Uh, Council O'Hara, um, seconded it. Um, is there a discussion, councilors, on this? Anyone speak up?
Crazy.
Go ahead, um, Council O'Neil.
Thank you, um, on H. I, it was, it went from one hundred to four hundred dollars, I, is that correct?
Um.
Yes.
I just think that's a lot. That's four hundred percent increase, and I, I just think that's. A lot, but does nobody else think that?
Um, Tony, do you have anything to add to that, um, seeing that you're on the Waterways representing the City Council? As an ex.
Um, I didn't, I didn't take part in a lot of these, um, fees, um, purposely, but it, um, cause it was coming to us, but it, uh. It was fifty dollars a few years ago, which was ridiculous, then it went to a hundred dollars, which is kind of ridiculous. This is the recreational boating world. Um, this is still a, a very reasonable, um, amount actually in that world, so. And it helps, helps defray other costs.
It's an annual fee.
Correct, it's an annual fee.
Any other further questions or discussion on this motion? Don't hear anybody, um, seeing none, um, roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neil.
No.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Motion passes, seven in favor, two opposed. Order of business. Council Nolan.
Uh, the next one would be number four. Amend by deleting and adding section ten fifty-three, use of public ramp at Dunn-Fudgeon. Um, on number one, the daily fee, we're gonna strike eight and add ten. And on number two, seasonal pass, we're gonna strike seventy-five and add one hundred. And I so move.
Second, second.
I'm, I'm not seeing your mouth, so it's hard for me to, to hear everybody. I think it was Council Gross, um, seconded, um. Discussion, councilors. Seeing none, um, unless, I, did anybody say something?
No.
See.
It was Council O'Hara and Council Worthley who seconded it.
Okay. Um, so, roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neil.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero opposed, next order. Uh, go ahead, Council Grow.
You can, you can adjust the size of the on-screen stuff on your screen if it makes it easier for you to see the people that are, the rest of the council. You could just slide it to the left. I'm just, as a hint there to help out with the, uh, identification.
Side by side, side by side.
Maybe no, don't worry about it. I just thought it might be easier.
Okay, um, next order of business. Council Nolan.
Is number five, amend by deleting section ten fifty-four. Use of city-owned commercial marinas reserved and add new section. Um. And as you can see, this one's gonna take a little bit of, of reading, but we're here. Uh, section ten fifty-four, use of boden infrastructure. Grant-funded transient floats at Solomon Jacobs Public Landing Floats. A, general use, the floats are available for the following uses and purposes and under the. Prescribed conditions. One, temporary tie-up of transient recreational vehicles. Two, access for transient recre- recreational vehicles uses to shore facilities.
Vessels.
Vessels, vessels. You know what? I got caught up with that because someone said vehicles on the other part of it and I, in my mind, sorry. It's always in my mind.
You're a truck man.
That's correct. Uh, so three, schedule hours of operation. Four, reasonable and equitable fees for use may be imposed. B, regulations, the Gloucester Waterways Board may promulgate. Regulations for the use and maintenance of the floats, including fees. C, special uses, certain uses that do not negatively impact the intended purpose. Of maintaining public access for transient recreational vessels may be authorized. Following approval of the Gloucester Harbor Master, Gloucester Way, Waterways Board. And if need be, the Massachusetts Division of Marine Fisheries, M A D M F. D, permitted uses, the Waterways Board, Harbor Master. And or N A D M F may permit uses that do not interfere with the intended recreational transient vessel. Purpose and provide a significant public benefit. The permittee shall adhere to the rules and regulations in GCO, chapter ten, section ten dash fifty-two. Failure to follow any of these rules or regulations could be grounds for suspension or revocation of a permit. E, water taxi shuttle. The Harbor Master may, on annual basis, make available uses of the floats. To one water taxi shuttle vendor at the location designated by the Harbor Master or his designee. The water taxi shuttle vendor shall be chosen through the fixed vendor location process. Set out in chapter eleven, section eleven dash fifty, E T S E Q. The location on the float may vary. Depending on the use of the floats at the time of pickup and drop off. F. Only applicants that meet the following criteria will be considered for the fixed vendor location. Fifty feet or less in length overall. Have a current United States Coast Guard certification of inspection. Are operated by a United States Coast Guard licensed operator. And have evidence of hull and general liability insurance. G. Pickup, drop off, location. Harbor Master shall determine the water taxi shuttle pickup, drop off, location on the floats. Harbor Master or Dock Master may from time to time relocate the pickup and drop off location. Within the facility to reduce interference with the intended purpose of the floats. H. No entitlement, nothing in this section shall be construed to create a legal entitlement. Any in all licenses shall be issued at the sole discretion of the relevant licensed authority. Use of the floats is a privilege that may be rescinded by the Harbor Master or his designee. The decision of the Harbor Master shall be final. And I so move.
Second.
Um, Council Nolan made the motion. It was seconded by Council O'Hara and I now see you all. Um. So I did shrink it down. So thank you, Council Grow. Um, is there a discussion, councilors? Council O'Neil.
I have two questions, um. On ten fifty-four B regulations, the Waterways Board may promulgate regulations for the use and maintenance of the floats, including fees. Um. Shouldn't fees be discussed at city council like we're doing now? As opposed to the Waterways Board? Just setting the fee structure?
Well, we're approving their rates. That's what we're doing now. So.
Right, but this says the Waterways Board. Will promulgate regulations. Including fees. So in other words. It says that the Waterways Board can raise fees without. Going to the city council.
Yeah, but I'll let Council Gross has his hand raised, so I'll. You answer that, Council Gross.
They recommend.
Council.
They have to come up with fees. They do not. How's that better?
Yeah.
I think so.
All right, they they recommend fees. They can, you know, promulgate the regulations and. Come up with fees, but we have to approve them. City council, it's all subject to city council approval.
Okay, thank you.
They they cannot just act on their own. They have to come here first.
All right, thank you.
Because it because it also has to have a public hearing here.
Okay, good. All right. Um, and E. Um, line one, two, three, four, line five where it says, chapter eleven. Section eleven dash fifty, E T S E Q. Um, I usually minimize my screen so I can look that up. My other computer won't go online. I don't know what E T S E Q means, so I don't want to. Approve something that I don't know what it means.
Um, Council Grow.
I didn't know what it meant either, so I just looked it up and it means and what follows. So section fifty and what follows.
I could have told you that.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, you didn't. I did.
So that's Latin, right?
That is correct.
I know my Latin.
I didn't, I didn't take Latin.
No, I don't know my Latin.
I took French, so. All right. I think. That's all I have. Yep, thank you.
Any further discussion, councilors? Let me just make sure, um, seeing none. Uh, Council. I just.
Yep, thank you. That's okay. Um, so this is discussion, might be slight question if it can't be answered, I understand, but. One thing I I'm reading here and just catching it now. This for the the water taxi. I- is it an annual? Um. Allocation or awarding of that license for that permit? So, and I've worked. I'm seeing yeses. I'm seeing Tony, Council Gross nodding yes annually. You know, one of the challenges, and I don't, I don't want to be put a wrench in the works here, but. If you're in the tourism industry and you're marketing. Your operation. You're making decisions in November and December. For the following year. Um. And then if you don't get the license, you've just spent money in advertisement and things like that. So I wondered when this decision is is determined, what time of year this decision we made?
Um, Council Nolan, um, Chair of O N A has his hand raised. Council Nolan, um. You have the floor.
I I I believe that through the process set in chapter eleven, section eleven fifty. Um, for transient vendors or for. Stuff like that would follow our regular basis of bidding process. It adds another spot to the list. Where people would bid on what they're looking for for their vendor spots. Then the bids are are received and people are notified at the beginning of the year where their spots would be. So that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, Joanne, but that puts it back into a vendor spot location. And that would be how it'd be. So I won't have to bid on that. And it would be awarded and it'd be an annual thing.
Yeah, that's true. The bidding, the bidding is um every year, January second. So they would have to bid on it and then after um purchasing gives them the big document and all the documents. And the ordinance and um it's awarded to the highest bidder supposedly.
Um, Council Gross.
Um, I, this year I believe we're going to go out of out of um. You know, order of rotation on that, aren't we? So that this this year could be served also. Is that going to be um TJ Suzanne? Do you have anything on that?
So let me just ask for um to suspend our rules of procedure right now because we're going to ask somebody that's not a counselor a question. Councils without objections, may we um suspend our rules of procedure and. Um, have Council Gross's question answered by either Suzanne or TJ. Without objection, um. Suzanne, you're you're on the call. It's it's a long line. Um. Can can you answer this or TJ, do you want to take a stab at it?
Um, I I do believe that this is Suzanne. I can put my.
Okay.
Um, I do believe that is correct. That we are going to be doing this out of. Um, sync because of the timing of this. Um, ordinance.
Okay. Any other further questions? Um, Council Worthley.
Yeah, just my question got a little translated and I appreciate Council Gross's input on that. I just want to say, so this year we'll take it out of order. But again, a lot of the businesses that are making tourism marketing decisions are doing it in November and December, maybe even earlier where they're advertising. And I think, uh, was it Joanne? Uh, City Clerk Joanne Stinos who said it's January second. That the. Bids are requested. I didn't hear when they're awarded. And so I don't know. Continue, yes, sorry.
Um. Clerk, you may answer.
Okay, so through the chair. So what happens? Like Suzanne said, this would be out of order because of the timing. But in the under section, um, eleven, five of. Chapter eleven, the bidding process. Starts um, January second that. Someone can put a bid in and I believe they're awarded by the end of January.
And is that by ordinance? If I may continue, is that by ordinance or by policy or just practice? Like, I don't know.
It's the bidding, it's the purchasing. Once it goes out to bid, there's a bid document. That if someone is interested in the spot, what they do is they give them the bid document and what it has all the requirements in that bid document. And I I don't have that document in front of me right now. If they meet the criteria and they make a bid on it, it's a sealed bid until a certain time.
Can you mute yourself? Um. Can you, can you mute yourself, Chad? Can you mute yourself? Chad, can you mute yourself? No. Okay. Can we, can we?
Um.
Okay.
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 Sorry. So, um, I don't know how much you heard, but the bidding documents are available January second. And I believe that by the end of January. Um, purchasing takes all the sealed bids in and they open them up and then they they get awarded. Um. In the or in the order that that they come in. Um, on that and in whatever fixed vendor spot that um they request. Um, that's as far as I know in regard to the big document, to be honest with you. Um. The big document does contain the ordinance and the criteria in order to bid. And I do believe for fixed vendors, which is a little different, um. There are. They, the the bidders can uh request their first preference, second preference, but this would only apply down to the harbor loop, um. Um, fixed vending for the water taxi shuttle.
Okay, any further discussion, councilors?
Um, has raised her hand.
Um, Suzanne, you you um. Will suspend the rules of procedure without objection and allow you to um to respond.
Yes, I I was just going to clarify that chapter eleven sets out this process in detail. About the bidding for the fixed vendor locations, the timing, the the entire process, how um vending sites. Are um. Are awarded. So that's why there's this amendment. That is to amend this chapter eleven to include this as a fixed vending location spot within that procedure that's already established under the code of ordinances.
Thank you for the clarification. Any further discussion, councilors?
Just last question on this, if I may.
Okay.
If we were to. Can we just administratively say? That the clerk's office can try to. Hasten that and do it November first or December first, or we need to do a whole.
We have to. That would have to be a full amendment and that is a process that we've had in place for many, many, many years and it seems to work with a normal fixed vendor. Locations of which we've had six and now we have nine.
This is just a different industry, right? It's it's a different timing and the market is. You know, they're making decisions in October, November, December. For where they're advertising. If they didn't get the bid in January, they just wasted a lot of money and frankly, the person who guessed the bid will wish they had advertised before that. So. That's not something we're going to be able to discuss and finalize today, I'm sure. Maybe it's a future amendment.
That certainly is always an option. Um, any further discussion, councilors? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
No.
Council O'Neil.
No.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor, two opposed. Next order of business, Council Nolan.
We have the number six. Amend by add new section. Section ten fifty-five use of city-owned commercial marinas. A. Commercial marinas known as Saint Peter's Commercial Marina and Harbor Cove Commercial Marina. Shall be charged a fee of eight dollars per foot. Vessels that birth these locations will be charged accordingly. To the slip size, not the actual size of the vessel. Tenants shall sign a one-year lease agreement on or before June first of each year. And strictly adhere to provisions in the lease. Failure to follow the provisions in the lease will be grounds for termination and I so move.
Second.
Second.
A motion made by Council Nolan and um. Help me with who um seconded it.
O'Hara.
O'Hara, um, by Council O'Hara seconded. Um, discussion, councilors?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
Um, I'd like to amend this motion.
You have the floor, Counselor.
I'd like to amend it to six dollars.
Second. Seconded by Council Worthley is the discussion on the amendment to the main motion.
But it's Tony's motion.
Oh, send Counselor, um. Gross, um, you have.
I I just feel that it it does need to be incremental. Um. You know, it did go a long time without it being increased. Uh, but. Again, uh. There is certain drawbacks at Saint Peter's. They don't have any parking. They they leave and um when they come back. If they have doing an oil change or something, when they come back, they have to park basically um. In in spaces that are not intended to be parked in. Um, I four C two does have. At parking, but they also have um the southerly wind. Every day coming in there all summer long and. With the change of weather that we've um come to. Get familiar with, we're we're getting a lot more storms. They're having southerly wind. So I um, it's just, I think that the eight dollars was a little bit much. Um, we can't really compare these two. Um, private marinas and the state fish pier has. Done. You know, millions of dollars worth of um overhaul and they, you know, they they spend. Mass development spends a lot of money down there and keeps that that place um very in very good shape. Plus, it's very sheltered. Um, inside there, so it's um. It's hard to compare this to other places and I think that six dollars is a reasonable um. Increase.
On the amendment, councilors? Anyone like to speak, Council Worthley?
Yes, uh, thank you. And thank you, Council Gross, for making that amendment. Um. You know, there's multiple ways to look at this, right? If we don't go up as much, we won't have as much money to support the industry and and their needs. Uh, and then the other side is they've been hit so hard in every level of government, local, state, federal. And you know, as as um TJ had said, that the cost in the water for the. Harbor Masters Office and Waterways Board are exponential compared on land, but the same thing for the fishing industry. So. It's a small step. Um, I I'm sorry to TJ to say you'll have a little less to work with. I'm confident that you'll. Figure it out. Uh, hopefully you you can come back and ask us in a year or so to. Move this up again, but I'm supporting the lesser increase because of our. We haven't supported the fishing industry as much as as, well, actually take that back. We have done our best to try to support the industry and. They need all the help they can get. So that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you, Counsel, um, Council Grow and then Council O'Hara.
I'm uh, I'm not going to support this amendment. Um, you know, I I I think we've gotten hung up on the percentage and the idea that a hundred percent is an awful lot. Um, at the end of the day. When we look at the actual numbers of what the cost is to rent. The space and the fact that. By keeping the rates substandard to the to the general industry, we're subsidizing these these docking spaces. I mean, if if we're looking at I four C two and we're talking about. You know, currently spending anywhere from a hundred and twenty to a hundred and sixty dollars a month. For docking space, including dedicated parking and lobster trap storage. And that's a pretty darn good deal and even double that at two forty to three hundred and twenty dollars. I mean, when you look at the overall cost of what you're, I I and I get the idea that no business likes to see cost increases. I don't. But if I think about. How this this charge is in relation to. All of the other costs that go along with the business, it's a relatively small amount. And given the fact that it's tax deductible, it's it's. I I just don't see, instead of looking at it as a hundred, a hundred percent increase on. You know, whatever was last year, you got to look at the fact that. You know, some of these boats haven't had an increase in over twenty years and. That is, you know. We're supporting the fishing industry by already keeping it below market rates, but. The next guy that comes in and can't get into a slip has to go and and pay market rates and that's a, that's a, that's a, 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 a business disadvantage to hit that um boat. So we're picking winners and losers here in terms of who gets to be on a city subsidized uh space and who has to go out and fend for themselves on the open market. And I just feel like. We're not talking about tens of thousands of dollars here. We're really talking about hundreds of dollars uh. Over the course of a year and I just, I don't, I don't see the justification. The Waterways Board is an enterprise account. It is by. Design meant to be. Run like a business and if we don't compensate for the cost of of. Running that business by charging appropriate fees, even at this reduced rate, then I don't know how the Waterways Board is able to do their charge.
Thank you, Council, Council O'Hara and then Council Memard and then Council O'Neil.
I'll be supporting this amendment. I disagree with uh Counselor Grow. On his thought process, um. You know, as I asked, uh, the Harbor Master, he's been in office seven years. Um, this is the first time we've talked about a rating. Um, this is the first time we've talked about a rate increase for them that supposedly twenty, thirty years, whatever the period is. Uh, it is reasonable to have increases. It's just the sticker shock of going from, you know, the three seventy-five four dollars a foot to eight uh, with 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 what the claims are that that there has been limited repairs, limited maintenance done. Uh, a- as a, as a landlord, you typically invest into your, into your um, plant. Um, apparently, the city hasn't. So I I think it's 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 a combination of of, you know, the sticker shock and also what has the city done. We we have a a um, hoist which is broken. Um, you know, that, all these things add up to upset constituents, upset customers. So we can revisit this next year. And obviously, if a bump is needed to increase it, you you do things little gradually versus just hammering them in one time. The lobstering industry has been slammed in all directions, as as has been noted, whether it's the whales, uh, restrictions from from windmills going into the ocean. Um, you know, so they they do have it. They've had it difficult. Bay prices through the roof, you know, the cost of of traps, everything. So not that everybody's a lobsterman, as Bill Munez is a, you know, runs a charter business. Um, but I I think, um, you know, the sticker shock, we revisit this next year and and if it warrants another increase, we 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 look at that. Um, but I will be supporting the amendment by Counselor Gross. Thank you.
Counsel O'Neil and then Counsel Nolan. Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Memard, and then Counsel O'Neil. Counsel Memard, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, much as I'd like to support Tony's proposed amendment, uh, I I agree with what Counselor uh, uh, Grow has stated. Um, and I think that the only way for the Harbor Masters Department and the Waterways Enterprise Fund to commit to making the uh, past due improvements and to have any kind of catch up on maintenance and the condition of the wharf, particularly at I four C two, that the the requested eight dollar increase over the past twenty-five or thirty years, whatever it is, but is is certainly appropriate, and it's it's unfortunate in terms of a catch up, but it should have been done earlier, and it needs to be dealt with now so they continue to move ahead and maintain this property as it as the fishermen who are renting on it deserve it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel O'Neil.
Thank you. Um, so this is my ward, and I've heard from the fishermen. And I calculated um, using twenty-five boats, because I wasn't sure how many boats there were. But I think um, TJ said twenty. But at twenty-five, twenty-five boats is forty-eight thousand dollars per year, but it's actually less than that, right? And at six dollars a foot, it's uh, seventy-two thousand dollars per year. So we're talking about twenty-four thousand dollars more for the Waterways Enterprise Fund. We just gave the Gloucester Four Hundred Club a hundred thousand dollars with no oversight, with no strings attached. And these guys are hardworking men. They go out, they literally risk their lives every day. And um, I think it was Bill Munez who said that the last twenty years, they paid out eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in rent, which comes to about forty-three thousand dollars a year, right? Um, so he's, by his calculations, it makes sense. And I foresee too, from what I understand, hasn't had any substantial repairs in all those, all the time Bill Munez has been down there, which I think is like fourteen years or something. Um, I think we brag about being America's oldest fishing port. And I think we're squeezing out the fishermen, and I don't, I I can't, I can't approve any of this. I'd say zero. I don't think they should get a rate increase at all. They've been paying out rent. They haven't had anything fixed. They've been squeezed by the whaling industry, by the, I don't know what else, what other regulations have been thrown at them. Um, and they're just trying to make a living, and I, they haven't gotten substantial repairs for the money they've paid in the last twenty years. So I I would say zero increase, zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, Counsel Nolan and then Counsel Gilman.
So I.
Amendment, six dollars.
Yes, um, I won't be supporting that amendment tonight um, with Counselor Grow and Counsel Memard. Um, there has been a lot of talk about millions of dollars worth of work that needs to be done. Um, it's an enterprise fund. It needs to bill for what it costs to operate. That's how it sustains itself. It's it's not fair to non-fee-based users in the city to supplement it with tax money to make up for it if we're not taking a chance in making a rate that can sustain the work. And I'm I'm gathering at eight dollars, it's still going to be a struggle to replace all those floats at both those places, not to mention that the the ten to twenty thousand for the hoist that has to come from somewhere. It's a tough decision, and I I I believe in our fishermen. But again, it it's, it's, it's twenty-four spots that need to make up for what they need to have done. And as a, as a enterprise fund, it's it's our responsibility to make sure that they charge user-based fees to support themselves, and they're asking for the eight dollars. So I can't support the amendment tonight, sorry.
Hold on a sec. I'm running low on battery. I have to um, plug this in, sorry. Um, so um, okay, I'm good. Not that anybody's worried. Counsel Nolan, you have to take over if I run out of battery, so. Um, so I would like to say that I am going to support Counsel Gross's amendment to the main motion. I think an incremental step is fair at this point, given um, the 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 issues that have been brought up. And um, I'm happy that there is going to be an increase if we approve this. And I I think um, I think an incremental step is satisfactory. So um, if there's no more um, parts of the discussion, I'd like to um, um, call the question. Um, looking to make sure that there are no hands raised. Um, so I think everybody knows what the amendment is. It's instead of eight dollars, it's six dollars. Um, Counsel Majota on the amendment.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
On the amendment, no.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
No.
The yeses have it, five in favor, um, four opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Well, you got to vote.
Go back to the main motion.
Oh, I'm stuck. Thank you. Sorry. Um, so we're back to the main motion. So the main motion is um, now six dollars per foot. Um, any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Counsel Gilman, could you just repeat what we're voting on at this point?
We're voting um, commercial marinas known as Saint Peter's Commercial Marina and Harbor Cove Commercial Marina shall be charged a fee of six dollars per foot.
Terrific, thank you. Uh, yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
No.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
On the yeses have it, eight in favor, one opposed. Next order of business. Um, Counsel Nolan.
Uh, number seven, amend by add new section. Section ten dash eighty-eight, commercial pumpout. A. Commercial vessels or any other vessels not covered under the Clean Vessel Act grant will be charged one dollar per gallon for pumpout services and I so move.
Second.
Um, um, Counsel Nolan made the motion, and I think it was Counselor.
O'Hara.
Oh, hi, O'Hara, I'm sorry, Counsel O'Hara. Um, is there a discussion, Counselor, councilors? Just check down. Seeing none, um, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. We're getting there. Um, next order of business, Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
We're on section eleven dash five, right?
Five, yes. We're back to fixed vending site.
We are.
Yeah, section eleven dash five, fixed vending site, specific location, nine. A. The following are specific locations for vending. Number one, Washington Street, ten feet north from its intersection with Poplar Street. Number two, Washington Street, Waterside at Plum Cove Beach. Number three, Western Avenue, Waterside between the intersection with Middle Street and the public land in east of Middle Street site. Number four is reserved for future. And uh, I'm going to go down to the red because we decided we can do that. So uh, the change would be in section C. Uh, Solomon Jacobs Landing floats in the area to be designated by the Harbor Masters shall be included as effects vending specific site solely for the operation of a water taxi shuttle, which meets the requirements as outlined in chapter ten, section ten fifty-four, waterways of the Code of Ordinances and only available to applicants, which meets those requirements and I so move.
Second.
Counselor, um, Nolan made the motion, and this time I heard Counselor Worthley seconded. Um, is there a discussion, councilors? Um, I'd I'd like to amend the motion. Um, on section eleven dash five, by um, under fixed vending, site-specific location by deleting six and adding nine. And I so move.
I'm not understanding this.
Yeah, there's too many harbor loops.
Um,
Can I explain?
So um, Madam Clerk, if you would explain what happened, that would be great.
Okay, to the Chair, Madam Clerk. So what was in the original packet was the Code of Ordinances that was October of twenty-two. And that didn't reflect the November of twenty-two, twenty twenty-two vote of the City Council to amend the site-specific locations from six to nine. So when Counsel Gross um, in the beginning, modified the O and A committee report by breaking it down, it had said six, okay? I pulled up this new ordinance, and I I know it's confusing to you today, but if you can look back at your packet, the the fixed vending site says six. This is the new one that says nine. So I pulled up the new ordinance that took effect in no, in December of twenty-two. Um, and put this in here so you can see that you, it says nine, but in your original packet, it said six. And the former um, Code of Ordinance, the old one, had a different section B that was deleted. And this new section B is already in effect, and Solomon Jacobs Landing becomes C.
So we're just fixing a a a scrutiny error.
Yes.
Remember when we? Yeah, we we changed it just to nine officially after we had the taco truck meeting. Remember?
Second.
Okay, so it, so I made a motion and I think um, on the amendment, and I got a second by Counsel Worthley. Um, is there a discussion on the amendment to the main motion? Seeing none, um, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow. Okay, the amendment passes, nine in favor, zero oppose. So now we're back to the main motion. Um, so um, is everybody clear on the main motion? Um, is there a discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
Yeses have it, nine in favor, zero oppose.
Point of order.
Go ahead, um, point of order, um, Counsel.
I'd like to make a motion that we extend our meeting to eleven thirty, as much as I don't like the meetings to run to eleven thirty. I think we need to do that, so I'm getting close to that limit.
Um, I believe I heard Counsel Grow made a second um, to extend the meeting to eleven thirty. Um, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neil.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes. Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow. Yes, I'm not, nine, I'm nine in favor, zero oppose. We've extended the meeting to eleven thirty. Um, there are the questions on um, Counsel Gross and Counsel O'Neil. Counsel Gross, your hand was raised for us.
Unmute.
Can you unmute, Tony?
Do we need to reconsider any of these?
Um, well, we haven't finished them yet. We still have, don't we have one more? Um, okay. Um, Counsel O'Neil, you have the floor. You raised your hand.
That was my question. We have uh, section one dash one dash fifteen to to do, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, so Counsel Nolan, you have the floor for the ninth time. It's like the ninth inning. Broadway Park, how's that?
We're, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna need more innings on this. All right, the screen's up again. So we have section one dash fifteen, penalty for violation of certain specified sections of code. Um, again, it's in front of us. Uh, we've discussed it, and we're gonna uh, amend by deleting one hundred dollars and add in one hundred slash two hundred per violation, and I so move.
Second.
Second.
Motion's made by Counsel Nolan, and it was seconded by Counsel Worthley. Is there a discussion, councilors? Did I get something wrong? I'm sorry.
No, I'm only kidding.
I'm sorry.
Don't worry about it.
No, I don't want to argue. This is good.
Forget it. Counsel Worthley, Counsel Worthley.
Okay, um, Counsel Worthley then will give it to you. So um, is there a discussion, councilors? Seeing none, roll call vote, Counsel Majota.
Yes.
Counsel Mem- Council Memard.
Yes.
Counsel Nolan.
Yes.
Counsel O'Hara.
Yes.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
Yes.
Counsel Gilman, yes, Counsel Gross.
Yes.
Counsel Grow.
Yes.
The motion passes nine in favor, zero opposed.
I'd like to motion to reconsider.
Second.
Counsel Nolan made a motion to reconsider and Counsel Worthley seconded it. Roll call vote.
Whoa, 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 what are we reconsidering? This last vote?
We're reconsidering, are we reconsidering all, right?
All nine?
We're reconsidering all nine.
Okay.
All nine, it's, it's all, it's. It's really was the one motion that we had made, but.
I just wanted to make sure that I knew what we were reconsidering.
Okay. So, so roll call vote, Council Majota.
No.
Council Memard.
No.
Counsel Nolan.
No.
Counsel O'Hara.
No.
Counsel O'Neal.
Yes.
Counsel Worthley.
No.
Counsel Gilman, no, Counsel Gross.
No.
Counsel Grow.
No.
Motion fails. One in favor, eight opposed. Next order of business, can we just say thank you TJ and Chad and Suzanne and Jill and. Been a long, long meeting and it's been a lot of work and we thank you, so. Thank you. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
This public hearing twenty twenty-three dash fourteen. Adoption of Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section forty-two G to forty-two K. And amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, ordinances, Chapter twenty-three Utilities, Article three. Water by adding water betterment assessments, section twenty-three dash sixty-five to twenty-three seventy-two.
I'd like to open the public hearing and ask if anyone like to speak in favor. Our CAO or. Suzanne Egan would either.
Certainly, I can, I can address this issue, so this, the water betterment ordinance and the accompanying. Statutory sections of the general law are for your consideration so that what it does is. Once the City Council or the city accepts those provisions of the general law, then it has the authority to adopt. Ordinances which enables the city to assess betterments. Upon extending the water supply to, the public water supply. To private properties that do not have access at this point. So it's a very similar betterment process that we have for our private road betterment and also sewer. For the laying of sewer lines and this is a result of a number of. Resident groups along with inadequate. Private water supply to their homes that have asked for assistance to solve their private water supply issues and. Gain public water supply. So the council first, in order to be able to do this, would have to adopt the general laws. And that sets out the process and the authority and that's chapter forty, sections forty-two G through K. And then what the ordinance is, then the ordinance is come before you and the essentially. Summarizes and captures all of the authority that's laid out in the statute. And puts it into our Code of Ordinances, so it enables the city to undertake that process.
Thank you, Attorney Egan, I appreciate it, anyone else like to speak in favor of this? Hold on a sec, let me, let me just make sure I'm looking at my screen. Looks like we have two people that have their hands raised. One is Tom Robinson Cox, would you introduce yourself and your address and you have up to three minutes to speak to us?
Yes, my name is Tom Robinson Cox. I live at five Haskell Court in Gloucester. Scott Memhardt is my counselor. And I appreciate very much the hard work that he has done and with Suzanne Egan's support. And May Vergis' support as well to address this issue of inadequate water supply. I reluctantly have to be in favor of this because it seems like I have no other. We, the residents of Haskell Court, have no other recourse. We voted unanimously for to, for a paving rebetterment, a repaving betterment. Last May and it took until December to get the paving quote from the DPW. It doesn't make any sense to go with the paving project since we have inadequate water supply. DPW has been over, Bill Gillis evaluated and said we have tuberculosis in our pipes. Mayor is sympathetic because he had the same problem at his house. Which he had to have remedied. If my tenant on the first floor turns their water on. We don't have any water supply upstairs to take a shower. And other, up and down the block, it's the same situation. Not everybody has signed on yet to the water part, the water betterment improvement. I've canvassed people informally, we have not signed a petition because such a petition has not been in existence. I think, I, I still find it hard to wrap my head around how. The original, the original four houses on Haskell Court had municipal water and now they don't. Back in nineteen sixty-two, seven acres of land were developed. In addition to the original four houses, apparently an illegal two-inch water pipe was tapped into our service. Without permit, without authorization, without. Oversight by the city. It certainly has exacerbated the situation, drawing more water through the pipe than had been designed for. Honestly, I think the city really should stand by a part of this and not to put the whole. Hundred twenty thousand dollars of. Water burden on the residents. We have no other, no other option than I reluctantly agree. But I think in its wisdom, the city. I understand from Scott Memhardt that only one percent of the roads in Gloucester. Now, we are one of the forty percent of private roads, but only one percent of the total roads in Gloucester. That's seven roads out of six hundred and seventy roads. Fall under our situation of having no city infrastructure support for our water or sewer. It's unconscionable. I don't know how this happened. And certainly it's been sixty years, you know, since the illegal water pipe was put in here. Water under the dam and all that, but I think. I have to agree with the Dobsons, that here we are. And whose fault is it, is it, and should we not be compensated somehow, we pay the same tax rate, the same water rate. Everyone else in the city does that has adequate supply. If their water supply goes down, the city pays for it. And here the entire burden is being put on our shoulders. But, okay, but anyway. I thank you for the effort to, that we have some mechanism that we can address this. It's unfortunate that each one of us again to pay twenty-five thousand dollars out of our pockets. To pay. To have this done. On one of the only seven roads in Gloucester. Where the residents have to pay for water infrastructure. Thanks to your efforts, I mean, it's a last resort, we'll go ahead and do it reluctantly.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that, you know, some way we get an abatement or something from our, on our taxes or our water bills. To help compensate for this egregious oversight on the city's part. Thank you.
Cox for staying with us for five hours, we appreciate it. Next person with their hand raised is Matt Service, Matt, would you introduce yourself and you have up to three minutes to talk to us on this matter?
Uh, thank you, can you all hear me?
We can, loud and clear.
Great, yeah, my name is Matt Service, I'm the homeowner of three Haskell Court. I, I have to say, thank you to you all for bringing this matter up and thank you to Tom Robinson Cox for, you know. Helping us residents. Out with this, I have to agree with everything he says, we have critical low water pressure here in the neighborhood. I think there's nine residences that are affected. And it really is through no fault of our own and it's a shame that the city has not. Been able to address this problem and instead, you know, we're faced with. Reluctantly, as he put it, accepting a betterment to correct it. But it is a route out of this and therefore I'm in support of it. Thank you and thanks again to Scott Memhardt for the work on this.
Thank you, Matt, for staying with us for five hours, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak in favor or opposition to this? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, are there any communications? Counselors, do you have questions and I'd like to limit this to one minute each, so we can finish. And make sure that we can get this part of the meeting done with. Let's see, we've got questions, so we're gonna go in order of roll call, Counsel Majota.
I don't have any questions.
Counsel Memard.
I think that, I don't have any questions per se, I just wanna thank both Matt and Tom for their succinct summary, this is an issue that. Goes back. At least five or six, if not more years and Jerry Puglisi and other neighbors have worked with me and Mike Hale. And this is finally a light at the end of the tunnel and I express gratitude to the mayor and to Suzanne Egan for. Providing this option for the city to help these folks on a private road to replace a private water service. With payment through the betterment process of anticipated to be over twenty years.
Thank you, Counsel Nolan, any questions?
I don't have any questions, I do wanna echo some of what Scott said. I do also wanna correct that. That there's a lot more than, than seven roads in the city of Gloucester that don't have public water. I have a few that are leaking right now in West Gloucester and developments and areas that are, that are going back to the early nineteen hundreds. I have public roads in West Gloucester that still don't have public water. The DBW and the city does work hard on trying to add as much as they can as time goes on in allotments. Fire hydrants are a huge part of how I feel safe at night and. This is, I don't wanna cause a light at the end of the tunnel, I, I think it's, it's a, a, a bulb that's glowing. It's not my favorite thing to have to discuss, but it is a tool. In our box that we can use and it's certainly gonna help out some people, but you know, we still like to look forward to. A little bit more participation from the city to help all people that don't have. City water, that could use city water under the understanding they, they, they thought they had city water and they actually don't. It's very confusing and when it comes down to your safety and your drinking water, it's always something to consider. Scott and I are both working on this and with the administration of the DBW, thank you.
Counsel O'Hara.
A spigot.
Thank you, I, I just comment.
This is questions. But go ahead, I let Counsel Nolan speak in, in his comments, so I will give you the same opportunity. Not to ask a question, go ahead. You have the floor.
Sure, thank you. I, I guess, you know, my comment is again similar to what Counselor Nolan. And that was brought up by the Jane Dobson earlier that. You know, mimicking what Matt and Tom said, it's very convoluted. How, how we're at this stage of the game throughout the city, not only on Haskell. It, it, it's, it's beyond me, you know, we're transporting a city product through a pipe. And they don't have ownership of, the city doesn't have ownership of that, that conveyance tool, it, it's, it's just, it's, it's beyond me. How, how we're at this stage of the game, this problem has to be resolved, it's been a problem since. I became a city councillor eight years ago. And, and it sat, it sat, you know, people out on Rust Island have no fire protection, no water. It's, 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 it's a bad situation and, you know, we're not gonna cure it tonight.
Thank you, questions, Counsel O'Neal. You are muted.
All set.
Okay, Counsel Worthley, questions?
So, this is shocking to me, Counsel Memhardt, can you give a summary how we got to this point? You know, cumulatively in the city, because this is baffling to me.
I'm not sure that's really my position, is it, Count of Counsel President?
I think it would be good if Suzanne would speak to this or Jill Cahill. Because it's, it's an administration issue.
So the question is, is why the city is in a position to be putting in public. Water supply, well, and there may, well, there may be a number of reasons, right, so there's. When developments happen, a lot of times the developers will say we want all private infrastructure within our development. So that's not hooked, connected to the city water line. And that would be at the, the main road that the development is connected to and it runs through development and some developers are very pretty adamant about that. Sometimes the planning board requires developers to put in a private water supply and then also. Puts in their own infrastructure within a development, there could be some land that was developed with private wells. And then as time goes on, they extend private water lines into the public water supply. And so as development occurs throughout the city, there's all sorts of different measures as to how people. Obtain their ability to get water sewer, as much as we have onsite Title V systems, we also have well systems. And to that development process this happens and so that at a certain point. You know, people want to have, they wanna upgrade and they're, they look to the city to help and in some instances, a lot of instances, they could do it through their own private. Continue on in the private property interest and. Extend or upgrade their water system on their own, but what this statute is doing and this ordinance does is allows the city to assist. Homeowners and residents in upgrading the water, their water infrastructure to provide where public water supply.
Are we providing assistance? Being hired to do the work is one thing, but are we providing any public assistance for this?
Well, so what's before you tonight is the, the ordinance, the adoption of the ordinance to allow. The city to engage in the process of upgrading or supply, I guess extending. The public water supply to private families or private property owners and then assess a betterment. Whether or not there's assistance, how this is implemented, what's the administrative process? That is something that is not before you and I don't have the answers to that, I mean, I assisted with looking at the statute. And the ordinance and how we could go about this process.
Okay, the part that I'm baffled about and I need to understand is, it's a question. I don't think I've even asked ten seconds worth of questions yet, so. If there's no water pressure, isn't there a public interest from a fire protection standpoint? If we said, we're gonna make it the responsibility of the private property owners to do this and they said no, because they have a right to do that too. There's a fire there, it's not gonna be limited to the, the few houses on Haskell Court, I mean, this is. What happens to the public good, this is just. Goes the opposite of everything I believe in and I don't know why we're, I appreciate that the two people from the public said they're in favor reluctantly. I don't know how they can be responsible for fire protection of East Gloucester, essentially. There's the Gulf, there's a gas station right down the street, I mean, it's just. I don't know, this is, for me, this is a citywide issue, not a Haskell's court issue.
Next up for questions is Counsel Gross.
I'm good.
Counsel Grow.
I'm good.
Counsel Gilman. I'm fine, I know it's, I know it's difficult. I'm fine. I know it's, I know it's difficult, and we don't have water up here in my whole neck of the woods. We all have wells, and we've had to um, use pump trucks to get water out from fires. And the new houses and the new developments all have to have sprinkler systems because we don't have any hydrants up here. So, we all have different challenges with water, and um, and it's expensive for all of us to do our wells. So, I totally understand um, how people feel about this. Um, any, um, so those are the questions, and um, I think that that is it. So, um, I'm gonna close.
Council O'Neill, raise your hand.
Oh, Council O'Neill, are you, you have more question? Okay.
I just, I was just gonna ask, where is the nearest hydrant to this Haskell Court?
On Haskell Street.
On Haskell Street, at the top of the hill? Is that the top of the, the top of Haskell Street or the bottom? I mean, that would make a difference, right? If there's no water pressure. Do you know where it is?
Council Memard, do you have any idea?
The, the, the city replaced and upgraded the water line in Haskell Street. There are hydrants on high, on Haskell Street. The uh, the privately owned two-inch corroded water line on Haskell Court, which was privately installed, as was described some sits in nineteen sixty-two or thereabouts, when there were just three or four houses there. Now there're ten, and there, there is no hydrant on the road. There are other problems that we can al- also offer to help with their betterment if they were willing. Um, as Mike Hale has advocated, if he's gonna improve the infrastructure, there's also substandard sewage uh, with typ- typically easements um, running through neighboring yards down to Hammond Street or other directions. And there's been sewer failure uh, on the scum Haskell Court in the last year, uh, resulting by inaction by the Board of Health and private uh, property owners having to replace uh, sewer lines that have been infiltrated with roots and plugged up and uh, causing a major sanitary, sanitary crisis there too, but you know, that's asking them, that'd be another three hundred thousand plus dollars, so the project they're looking at right now is, is a uh, a hundred and twenty for a water line upgrade. It'll be a four-inch or an eight-inch line, eight-inch, and there will be a hydrant at the end. And then it'll be completed with a, a repaving of the entire Haskell Court, which will be very welcome. And they will have twenty years to pay it.
We've um, we've concluded the questions, so I'd like to um, close the public hearing, and I'd like to ask for a committee report. Council Nolan.
Alrighty. On a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara, the ordinance administration committee voted, excuse me, by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, recommend the city council adopt Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty, Section four-two-G dash four-two-K. And I so move.
Second.
Second.
Oh, God, you guys are driving me crazy. Alright, Council Worthley, I saw your lips move before someone else, so I'm gonna give you the second. I'm really working hard to get the right.
I don't have any lips.
Okay. Um, Council Nolan, um, on the, um, on the motion. But is there an error?
Uh, I believe this is to, to adopt. We have another recommendation after this.
Okay.
So, uh, this is just the first part to adopt, and then we'll move into uh, the actual ordinance and utilities and article.
Okay. Um, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. Continue, Council Nolan.
Alright. On a motion by Council Nolan, seconded by Council Majota, the ordinance administration committee voted by roll call, three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council amend the Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter twenty-three, Utilities, Article three, Water by Adam. Um, so there's a little bit of reading here, but it is a new ordinance, and I think that we're best to, to read the entirety. Um, water betterment assessments, twenty-three sixty-five statutory authority. This article is adopted pursuant to MGL, Chapter forty, Section forty-two-G dash forty-two-I uh, slash forty-two-K. Twenty-three sixty-seven purpose. The purpose of the section is to allow the city to levy a special assessment to meet the whole or part of the cost thereafter incurred of laying pipes in the public and private ways for the conveyance of distribution of water to its inhabitants. Twenty-three sixty-eight, applicability. An owner of land which receives benefits from the laying of the water pipes in public and private ways upon which their land abuts, or which by more remote means receives benefit through the supply of water to their land or building shall pay a proportionate part of the cost not already assessed of extending such water supply to their land. Twenty-three sixty-nine, charges. The amount to be charged against each parcel of land receiving such benefits shall include the cost of the pipes and other materials and the labor of laying them and other expenses incidental thereto and shall be asserted, assessed, and certified by the Department of Public Works. Twenty-three seventy, assessment. The assessment for the cost of providing and laying of water pipes thereafter in a public and private way shall be made upon the several parcels of land receiving benefit from laying of such pipes by a fixed uniform rate in accordance with the provisions of Chapter eighty for the construction and connection of water mains and services by a uniform unit method, which shall be based upon the common main construction cost divided among the total number of existing and potential water units to be served after having allocated the town contribution. If any, and after having proportionated the cost of special, specific unit and general benefit facilities, each water unit shall be equal to a single-family residence. Potential water units shall be calculated on the basis of zoning, in effect, at the date of assessment. Existing and potentially, potentially multifamily, commercial, industrial, and semi-public uses shall be converted into water units on the basis of residential equivalence. Twenty-three seventy-one, procedure. Whenever the Department of Public Works decides to lay water pipes in public and private ways, assessments may be made pursuant to General Law, Chapter forty, Section forty-two-G for the construction of such improvement. They shall forthwith cause to be recorded in the Essex South Registry of Deeds a statement of their action with specified the way in which water pipes are to be laid and shall describe such land and does not abut upon any such way which it is to be assessed for such improvements. And which shall designate as the owner of each parcel upon which a lien is to be imposed by the section, the person who is liable to assessment, therefore, on the proceeding January the first, under the provisions of Chapter fifty-nine. All assessments imposed under Sections forty-two-G and forty-two-H upon any land which abuts upon any such way in which super, such water pipes are to be laid or is included in such description, self-conscious to a lien upon such land from the time such statement is recorded. The provisions of the Chapter eighty relative to the ap- appointment, division, reassessment, abatement, and collection of the assessments and to interest shall apply to assessments under this chapter. No assessment shall be levied under Section forty-two-H or forty-two-I inclusive in access of the benefit to the land assessed from laying the water pipes for which the assessment is levied. And if any assessment is found to exceed such benefit, it shall be abated. The Director of the Public Works shall, if the order for assessment is upon land not built upon, extend the time of payment of the assessment and interest thereon into the rate of four percent until it is built upon for a fixed time. And the assessment and interest shall be paid within three months after such land is built upon or the expiration of such fixed period. Twenty-three seventy-two, deferral. Water betterment charges may be deferred pursuant to the procedures and requirements set out in General Law, Chapter forty, Section forty-two-J. Uh, Sections twenty-three seventy-three and twenty-three seventy-four are reserved for further uh, room, and I so move.
Second.
Motion's made by Council Nolan, seconded by Council O'Hara. Is there a discussion? Council Worthley, and then Council Gross.
Should we, before we discuss this, vote again to continue? We're eleven twenty-eight and our we expire at eleven thirty, right? Our meeting ends at eleven thirty.
Thank you. Would you like to make that motion?
Reluctantly, but I understand why this takes time. Yes. I make a motion to extend it midnight.
Second.
And this is. Worthley, seconded by Council Grow. Um, roll call vote, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neill.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes. Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, as have it. Nine in favor, zero opposed. So, um, who is speaking?
Can I go back to the, the discussion on this?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So.
Doing that, Councilor.
At least I can do is look at the clock. Thank you. Um, so, I'm puzzled why this is not something that should be paid for by thirteen thousand homeowners instead of the very few that are being assessed. I understand there's history and all that, but there is a clear public interest in a viable water supply. And I know if we make a change for one, we'd have to do it for all the other ones that exist in the city, but that's the kind of thing, in my opinion, that a stabilization council is there for. That's the kind of thing that loan authorizations are there for. This is just perplexing to me that we're gonna put the burden of fire protection for the whole, not just the neighborhood, the whole of East Gloucester potentially, on these property owners. This is a first world, right? A- and this is, is puzzling to me that we had, we can't provide some assistance from the municipality or through state funding or revolving grants or whatever to support this. I, I don't know if we vote for yes for this, that, I think that precludes all those other possibilities, but I don't know if there's a way to explain how we can help them more, because this is not fair, in my opinion.
Thank you. Any other further discussion? Council Grow.
I would just say, very quickly, that, you know, this, this is a case of, of chickens coming home to roost, I think, and, you know, I think we've all seen examples over the years where decisions decades ago uh, made oversight, not oversighted, uh, people taking shortcuts or whatever has led to, you know, a, a city rife with laws that have to be repaired decades later. And this is clearly one of those situations. I, I mean, I agree with, with, with uh, Councilor um, um, Worthley that, you know, we would think that, that providing water would be a basic right and expectation, um, and I, and I, and I agree with that uh, in principle, but I also know that, you know, we've, we were sort of stuck with correcting the, the sins of our fathers, and, and, and so to speaks, and I think that you know, moving forward, I think it really heightens the, the, the critical nature of making sure that we make our decisions correctly, and that we don't skimp on di- difficult subjects, and that we pay for infrastructure improvements that need to be paid for, so that our kids and our grandkids aren't making these same kind of, having to deal with these game kind of issues thirty, forty, fifty, sixty years from now. So, I will be supporting the ordinance because it needs to happen, but you know, this is, this is just, this is just us unfortunately having to deal with really, really poor decisions made in the past.
Thank you. Um, any further discussion, councilors? Um, Council Gross and then Council O'Hara.
Um, in here, it, it talks about the liens, and I know that um, on the betterment for the road, people who paid in full, the lien was placed on their properties before the bills were sent. And I think that, that's something to do with the date language in here. I think that the people should at least have the opportunity to pay it before the lien gets put, you know, because you either say you're gonna pay it, or you sign for the note. Um, so I, 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 I think we need to kind of correct that in our betterments. Um, not tonight, we're not gonna correct it, but I think that's something that we need to, to take into consideration um, moving forward, because if you pay the full freight and you're not borrowing any money from the city, there's zero reason for a lien to have been put on your property before you were even um, sent a bill. And it's been the practice in Gloucester, I guess, forever is what I'm told, but I think that that's, you know, that's insult to injury to uh, Councilor Grow and Councilor Worthley's uh, point that, that this is. But we don't know what decisions were made and why these people did it privately, you know, um. And I think that, you know, the planning board probably shouldn't accept that uh, developers want to maintain it private, because in fifty years, when everything's going to to uh, the chickens will come home to roost, shall we say, and uh, and everybody like, how did this happen? Like, choices were made at that time to uh, to save money and to do things, and the people who bought those places may help make those choices, so. Um, anyway, I just think we do need to look at the liens in these betterments.
Thank you, Council Gross, Council O'Hara.
Thank you. Uh, just adding on to what Council Worthley and uh, Council Grow, you know, the city has committed sins in, in history. Um, you know, we're putting the burden of, of lack of administration of years ago. I'm sure they probably could pinpoint what, what year, what decade, what administration. Obviously, those people are long gone. Um, but we're a city, and, and and we're not gonna cure this problem tonight, but I, I, I think we need to sit down. I'm, uh, Jane Dobson said, you know, earlier, you know, people are paying uh, taxes. They pay the same rate, but they're not getting the same service, and this is happening on all corners of Gloucester. Whether it's, you know, the, the, the private road issue, the water pipe, it happened a few years ago on Seville Road. You know, just down the street with, you know, Jane, you know, the paving, it, it, it's a complex issue, but it, we're a city. We're in operation of a hundred and fifty million dollars, and we're putting the burden on a few homeowners, you know, tonight on Haskell Court. And um, it's not right. It's just not right. You know, Council Worthley says fire protection. Well, Rust Island, they have a fire. The whole island's probably going up. The whole biggest, the, the closest, closest hydrant is, is quite a ways away from the furthest point on Rust Island. And it's just sad. It's sad. We, we continue to talk about this. It continues to be a problem, but there's no re- no reasonable resolution. And, and I think we owe it to the citizens, to every taxpayer, to bring this to resolution and come up with an equitable uh, equation that, that works for, for, for the, the citizens who we represent. Um, I've, I've said enough, but I'll, I'll support this for the benefit of getting these people water, but I, I think we have a bigger, bigger problem that we need to sit down and really address in the public, in the public meeting. Um, not behind closed doors, not, well, you know, we are the legislate, legislation group. We are elected by the, the citizens. We should be discussing these, not, not a ad hoc committee. Um, it, it's just, it's terrible. Thank you.
Um, Council Memard. On the motion.
On the motion, uh, I, I'd like to begin by just thank, thanking all my fellow councilors for expressing their uh, dismay and outrage that, that our, our residents and constituents on Haskell Court have, have endured. Um, when one of them flushes the toilet, one down the street can't take a shower kind of thing. Um, I'm glad that we've worked together, and I, I'm particularly grateful for, to Suzanne Egan and to Mike Hale and to uh, John Dunn and the mayor's office for creating, uh, adopting a state regulation and a local ordinance that at least gives us a tool to help these folks to solve this problem now with city assistance, with, with the contracting and the financing and, and helping to plan for it. People who live on this road have the option of, of uh, defer. People who live on this road have the option of, of, uh, deferring their payments of the betterment until after they sell the house if they need to. If they're elderly and don't want to face the payment until after they've sold the house, so there are options here, but. We, we provided a tool, I think it's good to have it in the briefcase, uh, as, as Counselor, um. Nolan has said, this is not a totally isolated incident, it feels like it, but it's not uncommon, and as Suzanne Egan said too. Um, so we're, this is a tool that other roads and other ways in community will be served by this. Um, what we're adopting here tonight, and I appreciate everyone's support for it. We worked a long time on it and, uh, it is a painful pill. But at least these folks will have a hydrant at the end of the street, at the end of the day, and they will have water pressure, which will be a joy for all.
Thank you, Counselors. Any further discussion? Um, seeing none, roll call vote. Um, Council Majota.
Yes.
Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Very reluctantly, yes.
Council Gilman, yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow.
Yes.
Yes, as have it, nine in favor, zero opposed. Thank you, Counselors.
Thank you.
Um. Madam Clerk, for the purpose of simplicity, can I just open up the public hearing for items five, six, seven and eight? And continue all of them to the next meeting? Um, because I don't think we're, we're going to be able to cover those tonight. Um, or do I need to do each one individually?
No, you can, well, you have to say what they are and then continue. You can have one motion, uh, one. Action to open them and continue them, yes.
Um, so, um, um, Counselors, I would like to, um. Open up the public hearings for number five, public hearing two thousand twenty-three oh one five, amend GCO, Chapter nine, twenty-one. Street sidewalks and other public places, Section twenty-one dash one prerequisite to acceptance of ways. Number six, public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh one six, amend GCO, Chapter twenty-one. Street sidewalks and other public places, section twenty-one dash eighty-one, permanent construction or repair. Number seven, public hearing two thousand and twenty-three oh one seven, amend GCO, Chapter twenty-one. Street sidewalks and other public places, Section twenty-one eighty-two, temporary repair. Number eight, public hearing two thousand twenty-three oh one eight, amend GCO, Chapter sixteen, planning. Article five, historic district, section, section sixteen dash sixty-two, historic district commission subsection B. Um, and, um. And I guess we're moving it, and, and I so move.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Gilman and seconded by Counselor Grow. What, tell me, who, who, who made the motion? Alright, so we're continuing the public here, we've opened it, um, roll call vote.
Question, do we have a date?
It should be the next meeting, correct? Um.
Yes.
Okay.
It's April twenty-fifth.
Thank you.
But don't we also have like five or six hearings that night too already?
We do, that's why we tried as, as hard as we could to, to, to keep this meeting going tonight, and we had a lot to cover. And there's nothing that we can do about it, we could have a special meeting if you wanted to do that. Um, but the problem is, is when you've made a public hearing, you're kind of committed to, to dates, right? So, um, I'd say right now, we have to, we have to continue these to the next meeting. Um, so roll call, Council, um, Madam Clerk, you have your hand raised.
Okay, so. These public hearings, even though they were advertised for tonight. You can continue them to a special city council meeting if you want. Okay, because they've already been advertised for tonight. The ones that have already been advertised for the twenty-fifth. You know, will have to be stay on the twenty-fifth, and if you continue that, you can continue it to another date. But I'm just saying, if you wanted to have a special meeting, you could. Or you can continue it on the twenty-fifth and see how it goes, and then. Do a special meeting after the twenty-fifth to continue some of these, um. Public hearings to a special meeting. It's up to the council, really.
Okay, let's discuss this. Council Grow, what would you like to do? Your hand was raised.
Yeah, I'm, I'm keeping, keeping that in mind, um, looking at the calendar. May, can we choose a, a special council date now and then? Uh, we, we will move to the twenty-fifth, we'll, we'll do the, these will have to come first because they've been continued. And then we can continue them to, to the special council meeting on the twenty-seventh, so don't just end up pushing. A giant barge of special counsel or special, or public hearings on and on and on. What if we picked a date, say, April twenty-seventh? And said now, today, that will be a special council meeting for any public hearings that, uh, that don't get resolved on the twenty-fifth. We could just schedule that tonight.
Um, is everyone free on April twenty-seventh? Counsel Memard, you have your hand raised.
I was, I was just going to say that I, I agree, uh, both in principle and in the specifics here, particularly where, um. Our Budget and Finance Committee has the budget season upon us very quickly in May, so I'd prefer to deal with this work. And get it out of our way this month if possible.
Is there anyone that cannot attend a special meeting on April twenty-seventh? Council O'Neal, um.
I have an appointment at five-thirty, um, that I've moved, already changed once. So I can be late, I'll probably be here about six-thirty, but I, I can't change that, I can't change this again.
Okay, is there anyone else that has a conflict on the twenty-seventh? Council Worthley.
I, I do have a conflict that I can manage, which means I won't see my kids that night probably, but. What about May second? Is that move too close to the budget season, and it is a Tuesday, it'd be the one after the twenty-fifth? Is that a possibility? I don't want to. Doesn't need to be my, doesn't need to be my decision, right, and if I can't make it, or if I gotta say no to my kids, I'll deal with it.
Does anybody have a problem with May first, Tuesday?
The second.
May second.
Second, May first would be O and A.
Okay, May second. Anybody have a problem with May second, special meeting? Okay, special meeting, let me just be clear, is to continue these four matters right now. Um, correct? That's what we want to do. Um, Madam Clerk, you have your hands.
Alright, so looking at, at the schedule again. May second is a special city council meeting for the present, presentation of the budget.
Okay.
The council is meeting to accept the budget that the administration is submitting.
So could we, could we, um, could we add to that meeting? This, um, part of the agenda, we can, we can accept the, the budget. And then we can continue and, and have, um. Uh, these four public hearings.
Well, what I would suggest is. Backtracking a little bit, you put these four public hearings on the twenty-fifth. And whatever, you know, you can decide that night, whatever public hearings would need to be continued to May second. Okay, you do have a loan order that is, um, advertised for the twenty-fifth. And if need be, um, the treasurer said, you know, he preferred it on the twenty-fifth. But if, if it doesn't go on the twenty-fifth, to be, put it on the special meeting on May second. So I would just continue these to the next meeting, see how it goes. And then after anything that you want to carry over, at least you're announcing it's going to be tonight, and everybody's in agreement that May second. At the special meeting, there'll be some public hearings taken up. I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
And I would, I would suggest that we put the order down as the ones that are already mentioned, right? Those should be priority, and then we'll put the four extra ones at the bottom. Because if, if those are the easiest ones for us to continue, I believe, not as, they're important, but they're in the scheme of things. The ones that are listed on the bottom of our agenda right now, the ones that we should focus on first, so we'll add those. Um, we'll add these four that we just are in the process of, um, moving to, um. Right, we haven't voted that yet, right? Did we vote that? Um, so we need to vote those, and those will be continued to April twenty-fifth. Okay, um, so that's, so that's the motion. Um, and is there a second?
Second.
Grow, I believe, yes, um, roll call vote, Council Majota. Yes, right, did you say yes?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Council Memard.
Yes.
Council Nolan.
Yes.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes.
Council Gilman, yes, Council Gross.
Yes.
Council Grow. Items five, six, seven and eight have been continued to. April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Motion passed, it's nine in favor, zero opposed. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Um, I've made on the timetable to return to Cairo's auditorium for full city council meetings with the hybrid option. To the public and possible council vote on timeline and start date.
No, nothing to report there, so we, we could. Go ahead.
The next city council statement regarding the Gloucester four-hundredth celebration.
Uh, twenty-twenty-three marks four hundred year, oh wait, hold on, good. Twenty-twenty-three marks. Dorchester Company. Landed on our shores, Gloucester sits on the ancestral homeland of the Pawtucket people and their neighbors, the Massachusetts. Nittmalk and Pea. Pinocoke and Winnipeg tribes. Please enjoy the year-long and multiple events throughout twenty-twenty-three, most of which will be free or low cost. Visit Gloucester MA four hundred dot org for a list of upcoming events. Like the share of Gloucester four hundred Facebook page. To receive major event notifications by email, send a request to info at Gloucester MA four hundred dot org.
Thank you, um, we didn't get the screen share, but it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I, I was looking at it, sorry.
I think we're okay, I will apologize to the tri-chairs, but I, I think we did a good job and, and, um, thank you, everyone. Um, next order of business, um, Madam Clerk.
Most of those requests to the mayor.
Um, anyone have any, um, requests? Um, Council Majota.
I will email any request to the mayor.
Council Memard.
I would just like to, uh. Express our welcome to the Good Harbor Beach Piping Clover family that have arrived back home, including one of them that only has one leg. This is her third year. And also to congratulate the administration on, uh, their working relationship, which I'm looking forward to learning the full details about. With Mass Audubon to manage, manage the, uh. The, the city's responsibilities around the piping clovers, working with the, uh, volunteer ambassador group.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Nolan.
Uh, nothing this time, thank you.
Council O'Hara.
And nothing.
Council O'Neal.
Melissa.
Council Worthley.
I had a bunch, I'm just gonna hit some highlights, great job of the fire department this week, um, this weekend with the fire in. Um, Bayview area, um. There's a ward meeting on Saturday, I think, uh, Council of Majora is having, and there's also a dedication of the Vietnam, um. Memorial on Huff Ave, corner of Red Cross and Bodwell Field. Um, uh, it's a big pothole on Gloucester Ave, keeps coming back, I don't know if the mayor can. I, I can, I can email someone, I know it was a long meeting tonight, I don't think there was a lot of wasted time, I think we did the best we could to this, and, um. Good job, everybody. Council Gilman, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Council Gross.
All set.
Council Grow.
Uh, just a quick thing, um, you know, we often lament that we don't get young people involved in politics and don't pay attention, but it was, it was brought to my attention that we have a, a. A young man in Gloucester who watches every single one of our meetings, Jackson Haskell, and I just wanted to give a little shout out to him, because my guess is. He's probably watching this right now, and the more we can get like you, the better, I think we'd all be.
And I would just like to piggyback on what Council Worthley said, um, thank you to the Gloucester Fire Department. Um, to the state, um, forestry team. And, um, to all of the, um, the other fire departments that helped fight the horrible brush fire. Um, that occurred in Bayview. Um, I walked the, um, the, the whole, all the paths today, I saw the controlled burns, I saw the damage to, um. To the woods, and it's just amazing that we, um, we protected all the homes. And, and we actually did a control burn to further make things safe for our residents and our, our open space, so. Um, job well done, and I appreciated seeing, um, the fire chief's, um. Press release, which also includes all the information about burning right now. And if you all haven't forwarded that to your Facebook pages, I would suggest that you do, because there's a lot of timely information right now. So, um, that's it, it's been a long evening, um, thank you for all of your participation. And, um, I think, um.
Motion to adjourn.
Right, Council, you know, you made the motion, who wants the second? Council O'Hara? I, 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 you two can fight, I'll, I'll give it a tie to Jeff and Jamie, so, um, let's, let's call a roll call. Um, Council Majota.
Yes, and good night.
Council Memard.
Yes, and good night.
Council Nolan.
Yes, and good night.
Council O'Hara.
Yes.
Council O'Neal.
Yes.
Council Worthley.
Yes, and good night.
Council Gilman, yes, good night, Council Gross.
Yep, ninety-nine.
Council Grow.
Yes, and good night, Jackson.
Thank you, Joanne, thank you for all your help, good night, everyone.
Thank you, Joanne, good night.